Good morning. I want to call to order the May 10th, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and want to welcome all who've joined with us this morning, both in chambers but via telephone or that are following us on the live broadcast. Would just note that we have a pretty full agenda today and we'll be back in session again tomorrow, but we certainly welcome folks that are here to either observe or participate in the meeting. So with that, again, good morning, and I'll turn to our clerk, Flo Evans, to guide us through the beginning of the meeting and through all of the meeting and ask her to make some comments and call to roll. Establish your form.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 13th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to staff when the chairperson opens public comments for that agenda item or an off-agenda matter. He will call your name and please come to the podium to make your comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or send an email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo, for reading all that into the record and offering ways for folks to weigh in on today's agenda. With that, I would ask my colleague, Vice Chair Desmond, to lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance, if you would.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I know we have some guests in the audience this morning. We're going to recognize some of those in a moment after we move to our consent calendar. So with that, I know we have some off-agenda speakers too, but do we want to go ahead and take up any agenda items that are going to be continued or dropped? Flo?
We can do that when you guys get to your consent.
All right. So we do have some folks here today to address the board on off-agenda items. And with that, I'll call them the order they were handed to me. I have Daniel Aderhold, followed by Ryan Harris. So, Mr. Aderhold.
Do you want that on the screen? Do you want that on the screen?
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, Board Supervisors. I'm here to give you guys an update and also thank you guys for getting us working together with Sacramento Park of Recreation, Liz Bellis and Amber. We now have a documented contract permit where we're cleaning together McQuarrie Parkway and we're doing a fabulous job working together. My hats are off to Sacramento Regional Park Crew. We're working together really good. And we also just got to clean up Discovery Park. We removed over seven tons of trash off and we got that part looking beautiful and we're moving on down to North Gate right now. I'm just giving you guys an update. And to thank Liz Bellis, Park Director, and also Amber for doing a fantastic job working together with McQuarrie Homes Community and making sure the people are there, her workers are there to help us. It's been fantastic. And I want to thank you guys especially. Without you, this wouldn't have happened. And I want to thank you guys. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Great. Thank you, Dan. Thanks for your efforts as well, so making a difference if you pick up that much trash in a small amount of time. So, okay. With that, then our next off-agenda speaker is Mr. Harris.
Might have to zoom in. Might be a little hard to read. If so, I understand. Thank you. Good morning.
Wait, wait.
I'm still here, so I don't know if you guys enjoy me being in front of you, smiling, or if it's just really hard to do what you do, or if you just really don't care about the situation that I'm going through. And if so, like let me know so I can stop coming here, putting my faith in you guys. I'd really appreciate that. That would probably help save all of us time and if that were so, if you guys were able to do that. With that said, I noticed when I grabbed this tie, it still had this sticker on it and I was going to take it off, but it says I voted, because I do vote. So with that said, I also noticed Gavin Newsom was on my TV, so I don't know which camera is looking, but Gavin Newsom, "What's up? Can you help this? Where the Capitol? You're allowing this to take place in the Capitol." You know, "Give me an answer, please. Might help with the vote. Might help with some more votes, who knows?" Then again, you might be able to do it without me. Nonetheless, also, you know, let this happen in the county of the Capitol, other counties might just trickle over and they might allow this to happen there as well, if it doesn't already. I also want to apologize. Last time, it did upset me a little bit that the police came here requesting for weapons that they don't even know what it does. The one person I was up here supposed to present this information to you guys, who should be the most informed of all, did not know. And it scares me that not only that they're requesting for weapons that they don't know, that they're comfortable coming in front of you guys requesting weapons when they don't know. With that said, what's before you on the left side, I brought it before you guys' attention before, is again, some of the discriminatory actions I feel have taken place against me by Ann Edwards. She said that it was answered, so on this version, I gave the dates, meaning it was answered. Again, what do you make of it? The disciplinary took place March 6, 2018, and you'll see the answer I received was in 2019. So if that is the answer, why was I disciplined if I was given the answer after I was explained it? And on the right is a new one that I'm a little bit out of time, but I'll be addressing it at the next meeting. I'm sure you guys can assume that. But with that said, I got a little bit of time, so I'll briefly explain it. It just shows that again, Ms. Ann Edwards disciplined me for something in 2017 that I wasn't even trained on until 2018. So I'd really like to know why I was disciplined. If anything, my supervisor should have been disciplined for not training me until a year later. But, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, do we have any other off-agenda speakers? There's only two I had. Do we have anyone else?
We don't have anyone in the queue.
Okay. All right.
I'm going to close the queue.
Yes, please do. Okay. All right.
Okay, just want to make sure, and if someone slips in there, I'll let you know. Okay.
Go ahead.
For your consent matters, items 2 through 40, I know that the county executive would like to make some comments on item 5. It's the authorization to appoint David DeFonte as the county, Deputy County Executive of Community Services. For item 6, I do need a motion to continue to May 24th. This is to authorize the execution of a right-of-way contract and a grant deed with the State of California for the sale of a portion of county-owned real property located within the American River Parkway Paradise Beach area adjacent to Interstate 80 business in the city of Sacramento.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
I'm prepared to move for continuance, but I'd like to know why we are continuing.
The question that you asked in the briefing yesterday highlighted the fact that we had not done outreach to the residential neighborhood and we want to have time to do that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Good. All right.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Moving second to continue, item 6 to May 24th. Do we have any callers on this item? Anybody?
We do not.
Okay. Very good. So if there's nothing further, understanding there's some additional outreach that needs to be done, please put up the vote board. Yeah, vote.
You guys want to vote now?
Yeah. We're ready to vote. We're ready. Okay.
All right. Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you, Flo.
Okay. And I have one other note. For item 9, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16, 1.140 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the technology cost recovery fee, waiving reading, and you will adopt it on May 24th. So that's, no action is needed, but I do need to let you know that.
Okay.
And that concludes my notes from the clerk.
All right. Very good. So let me go to my colleagues then, noting that we're going to have some comments from the county executive on item 5, on the appointment, but turn to my right first. Any items you wish to? I see Patrick Kenny. Patrick, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Number 40?
Forty? Okay.
It's appointments.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question. I see that we're appointing Ronald Suter, which is great, to the SCERS Board, but I understand there's two openings and that we have at least one that I know of superior just a very well-qualified candidate. So do we know when that process is going to fill the second opening?
I don't. I need to talk to my staff to find out. So I'll get that information to you today.
Thank you, Flo.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. I think chiefs of staff have done some interviews, I think, on our behalf. I don't know if they've interviewed all the candidates, but we need, okay, coordinating certainly with our offices as well. So, any other items? Mr. Kennedy? Okay. All right. Mr. Desmond? Okay. Supervisor Frost, you punch up.
Thank you, Chair Natoli. I just wanted to make a comment on item 10 and I guess 11 also. We're so super excited to receive a very sizable grant and possibly more coming for Rancho Marietta's Fire Safe Council and on behalf of the entire community.
Do you want to have to read the item?
Oh.
Yeah. I think it's 10 and 12, I think.
Thank you.
Well, actually, 11's kind of coordinated with that, but I think, go ahead. Want to read?
I'm happy to read it. Approved retroactive authorization to apply for the California Department of Forestry and Fire Prevention Grant in the amount not to exceed $4,206,814 for the Casumnas Ladder Fuel Project in Rancho Marietta. And item 11 is a retroactive authorization to apply for the Forestry and Fire Forest Health Grant in an amount not to exceed $2,366,421 for the post-fire restoration and woodland conservation in American River Parkway.
May want to read item 12, and I think Supervisor Frost, you were referencing item 12 as well?
I think it was 10, 11, and, oh, 10 and 12. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then retroactive authorization to apply for California Department of Forestry and Fire Forest Health Grant in the amount not to exceed $4,585,374 for the Casumnas Ladder Fuel Project in Rancho Marietta.
Great.
So I just wanted to thank Liz Bellis and our Regional Parks, Mary Jo Fleming with our Office of Emergency Services, Assemblyman Cooley, who was a huge help, Metro Fire, who also went after a couple of grants for us, Natasha Drain with our government services, and our state lobbyists who also have been advocating on behalf of our community. It's been something that the community's been working on for years and we just went after it with everything we had, every way we had, and contacted everyone we could think of, and they all really helped us out in many cases at the last minute, putting together grants that we had to get in in a certain period of time. And so we, as a community, want to thank the county staff and everyone at the state who helped us and we're hoping, you know, it looks like we have the funds we need to protect our oak woodlands up and around and behind Rancho Marietta and at the same time, keep our community safe. And that's the major goal, aside from also, you know, an exit path in the event of a catastrophic event. So we're feeling pretty good and I just wanted to thank everyone for all their hard work who made it possible.
Great. Well, thanks Supervisor Frost for highlighting that and thank you for your efforts. I know your office and you personally have been very involved in the leadership that's obviously gotten to the point of applying for the grants and hopefully we'll have good news that it will come through with the funding. So again, thanks to you and to all the folks you've noted for their efforts. Any other items you had on the agenda you want to call?
No, I think we're going to be congratulating Dave DeFonte later, so.
Yeah, we'll be there in just a moment. So, okay.
He's on in my mind, too. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Supervisor Serna? Okay. I just, I had a question yesterday in my briefing and I certainly want to leave the item on, but item 16, were we able to get a response on the water tank? Maybe read the item if you could, Flo.
Sure. This is a contract for the Wildhawk Water Treatment Plant, recoding project Phase 1 plans and specifications bids to be received on June 9th, and the environmental document is a categorical exemption.
Okay. And?
I don't know. Is Michael Peterson on the phone?
Yeah. Yeah. This is Michael Peterson.
Okay. Morning, Michael.
Hi, Supervisor Serna. Good morning.
Yeah.
I did get the question.
Go ahead.
If you want to restate it, that's fine. Regarding the replacement of the tank coating and the corrosion on the Wildhawk tank, I know your question was regarding, you know, its 15 years, the expected lifespan.
Right.
And that's really on the very short end of the range that we've historically seen on these tank coatings. They've been typically 20 to 25 years. This one is a bit of an anomaly, having to be replaced at 15 years. So what I've had discussions with staff is what we're preparing to do is investigate and come up with any recommendations to improve that, whether it be increasing the cathodic protection. Is there something to do with the constituents of the water as they're treated, you know, surface water versus groundwater? Is that having some effect on it? The tank, you know, is it makes sense to make, use a different material for constructing the tanks? Is concrete an option that makes more sense in the long run? And then just validating what our experience has been against other water purveyors in the region and in the industry. Because we are aware that, in particular, this tank recoding life, 15 years is too short. It shouldn't have gone only 15 years before needing to be recoded.
Okay. Well, thanks, Michael, for the explanation, because I know, and you're certainly aware, the tanks that are to the south there on, off of Calvine, near the rubber tracks, Beta Road, I know that those tanks were of a similar vintage and I think we did some work on them a couple of years ago. They were actually, you know, installed prior to. And so as I saw that, that was the reason for the question. I appreciate your response that if we're on the low end, as you said, if there are some construction techniques going in, obviously, you know, you have to weigh that versus the cost of maintaining that. But I'm certainly supportive of making, you know, the necessary improvements and addressing the issue. But I'm glad that you're taking a look at it and if there's ways that we can build in some longer life, either through our ongoing practices and/or in the initial construction, that would be, you know, helpful to our ratepayers, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Very good. So that's all I had on that item. So, all right. Do we have any other callers on any items?
Oh, yes. So we do have a caller for item 18 and we also have a caller for item 33. So when you're ready for those calls, we'll take item 18 first.
Okay. Well, I think that concludes the board member comments and the items we wanted to address at this juncture. And so knowing we're going to get back to Mr. DeFonte's appointment in a moment, let's go call the items that we have callers on them.
Okay. So for item 18, it's the authorization to apply for and accept when awarded fiscal year 2022 Homeland Security Grant funding in the amount of $3 million from the California Office of Emergency Services for the period of September 1 through May 31 of 2025. And then for item 33, this is regarding the authorization, resolution authorizing the continued remote teleconference meetings pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act. So if you could transfer the call, Dorel, for, or excuse me, Ophelia, for item 18. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Board. This is Mackenzie Wilson.
Good morning, Mackenzie.
I'm actually about to walk in, so I'll see you in a second. But I do call on item 18 with a little bit of concern and I was wondering, just because I haven't been inside, if you all have asked any questions about what exactly this grant and what the use against terrorism in Sacramento County is used for? I don't know if you all have been paying attention, but I have, when Sheriff Jones comes into the Board of Supervisors meeting and begins to give for you his definition of who he thinks the terrorists are in his community. I believe that we are all familiar with the presentation he gave a few summer, the last summer or the summer before, about anti-police brutality protesters and anti-fascists and his wanting to be able to show overwhelming force over and over again against this community. And so again, I do call with a lot of concern considering that I know exactly who he's talking about, when he wants to use this money against terrorism in his community. He's going to use it against anybody who he deems anti-fascist, anybody he believes is anti-police brutality, anyone he believes that is going to stand up in the face of law enforcement against the rise of fascism. I mean, as we continue to go hungry, lose our healthcare, lose access to things like abortion rights, we're seeing the state beef up and give a bunch of money to law enforcement and it's going to all be in an attempt to keep us in control. And so when we stand up and take to the streets, he deems us terrorists. And that for me is very alarming and concerning. And so again, I'm about to walk in these doors, so hopefully I do know what the consent item. But if you could ask some questions about why and what and who and all of that around this money, that would be very appreciated because like I said, I need y'all to have a steak, I'm sorry. I need y'all to have an appetite for the steak of your community. And after the last couple of summers, I'm going to let you know, Scott Jones uses all of that weapons, all of these things. He uses them against us, this community, not some random person coming in to harm anybody. He is using it against your constituents, your community members, people that you speak with. I mean, like I said, my body was beaten and harmed and tortured and harassed by law enforcement and it hasn't for years, but very, very intentionally after the summer of 2020 and beyond. I recognize he's also used illegal things like stingrays against this community, trying to collect our data and trying to get into our emails and our text messages, the ways that he has used this information, the way that he's used surveillance in this community at just a regular protest. I mean, people just gathering in a park for a black name and he's got people on rooftops with rifles and surveillance equipment. And so again, asking him and asking the Sheriff's Department what exactly this money will be used for is going to be very important because again, he is planning to use it against your community. Thank you very much. Have a big day.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Okay. And if you could transfer the caller for item 33, and still, we don't have any other comments so far.
Is it a little fuzzy?
Yeah, it's hard to hear.
Kind of hard to hear.
I think it's the volume.
Yeah.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Gabrielle with District 2, and I wanted to call in because this resolution is under the pretext that there's still an emergency. By definition, an emergency is a serious situation or occurrence that happens unexpectedly and demands immediate attention or a condition of urgent need for action or assistance. The county refuses to release their local emergency proclamation for financial reasons as stated multiple times on record in this chamber. Possible funds to be obtained from FEMA, to lose the liability shield for things being given to the public, to not have to terminate employment for those hired purely for public health measures related to COVID. And none of these reasons are proof of an emergency, just reasons to continue perpetuating it for financial gain or to support infrastructure that was set up for the emergency, but there's no emergency, so we don't need the infrastructure. We no longer have an emergency that fits the parameters of Government Code 8558(c), which reads, "Local emergency means the duty proclaimed existence of conditions of disaster or an extreme peril to the safety of persons and property within the territorial limits of a county, et cetera, caused by conditions such as air pollution, fire, flood, storm, epidemic, et cetera. Within this range, it's COVID, the government's warning of an earthquake, et cetera, which are likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of that political subdivision, require the combined forces of other political subdivisions to combat or with respect to required energy utilities and such." Now, within AB 361, which allowed for the suspension or allowed for the teleconferencing as outlined, as you're currently using it, the amendments to the Ralph M. Brown Act or simply bypassing it under AB 361, looking at the three parameters outlined for the continuance of remote teleconference meetings, requiring the state of emergency declared by the governor to be in effect and that one of the following conditions is met, the local legislative body has held a meeting for the purpose of determining by majority vote and they decided to not end it, but you guys are able to think for yourselves on whether we have an emergency or not. The local legislative body held a meeting and determined by majority vote that as a result of the emergency meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health or safety of attendees. They haven't reversed that. But again, you're able to see, per the data you're being provided by Dr. Kastarian Public Health, that the death rate was no higher than any years before and that the cases, though there are more cases, they are less, they're making people less sick because of the mutations. The only thing that you could possibly extend it on is number one, state or local officials continue to impose or recommend social distancing protocols, but that's not backed by science. So we are asking you to stop, just everybody vote no on this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Okay.
All right. You have another caller for item 18.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
I'll hold my comments until we hear from the speaker.
Okay. All right. Next speaker then. Okay.
Please transfer the caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi. Just want to lift up the previous callers that are asking the board to actually ask questions and scrutinize this application for $3 million to a department that already takes the lion's share of our general fund dollars to supply and staff its thousand-plus deputies or so. And really want to encourage this board to actually show more scrutiny when it comes to funding the sheriff and the grant that it applies. Case, you know, this came up to the board the other week around its military equipment use policy in compliance with the new state law, AB 481, that is going to require law enforcement. in compliance with the new state law, AB 481, that is going to require law enforcement, local law enforcement departments to actually get their governing bodies' approval, particularly this county board's approval for any military equipment grants that are applied to it by the sheriff's department. And I really think that you should just, as a general practice, like actually review all of these policies and have discussion, not insert them into, like, into consent calendar items where you can just ignore them and just pass it off, which is just good for, like, good politics for most of you. But for those of you that are actually principled on these issues and want to see genuine community oversight of your sheriff's department, I would actually encourage you to kick it to your newly created Community Review Commission to actually look through, make examinations, and then offer recommendations to your body, so that you can actually make informed decisions and informed consent before just blithely putting a yes vote to this. Because this is bigger than just politics, and as your community has frequently reminded you over the last few years, this sheriff has no respect for your oversight or your authority, as he, like, as was shown when he walked out the inspector general that you all appointed and sought to stymie investigations into, like, into his practices, as well as the, like, millions of dollars, the tens of millions of dollars that it has cost this county in lawsuits related to his practices of its deputies and how it treats people inside of its jails. So again, please, take this off consent. They don't need this money right now, especially given that they end up having more money than they know what to do with at the end of the year, so much so that you can give millions of dollars to other departments when it needs it, like you did with the CARES Act funds in 2020. So let's actually take our time on this and not just blithely check a box and rubber stamp this for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, so that concludes your calls for consent, and I will close the queues now.
Okay, all right. Then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Cernan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with regards to item 18, the grand application from Homeland Security, I think the two speakers on the item make some valid points, and I'm looking to Mr. Jones at this point to ask the question first, do we have some time? Because according to the board letter, it says, "Application, the application for the grant's not due until September." And if I'm not mistaken, that would seem to give us time, even with our summer recess, to have maybe some more information as a board about what the grant funds would be used for precisely, specifically relevant to the concerns that have been expressed by members of the public this morning. So I'd like to understand, I guess, first, a sense of urgency on this, and then, secondly, if we do have some time, if we could, if the board is interested, I certainly am, in maybe having a dedicated presentation on the matter.
Eric.
Good morning. Certainly, good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. So a quick background on this item is it is federal funding that would come to this Regional Threat Assessment Center. There are only four in the entire state. So I do just want to point out that this Regional Threat Assessment Center that this funds through complete federal funding covers over 34 counties and 254 different law enforcement agencies to look at, develop intelligence, and to prevent catastrophic events, as well as threat, national threats. So it is true that, and there's no match requirement by, for the county. But what I do understand is the grant application deadline is September 30, 2022. But I just wanted to give that overview, that it's not just Sacramento County, it's actually meant to cover the entire region. And again, there are only four in the entire state, four regions, Bay Area, San Diego, Sacramento, and another location.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. But for instance, there's not much in terms of substance in the board letter that addresses some of the concerns that have been expressed relative to, for example, domestic terrorism versus international terrorism. Those are the kinds of details that I think I'd be much more comfortable understanding before and prepared to vote on it. And if we do have the time, I don't see what harm it would do to take that time to get those questions answered.
If I could just follow on, Eric. Again, the detail is not real great here, but it talks about the positions that would be funded through the grant for the regional center. It's about 12 Sacramento sheriff's officer positions and 15 contracted positions, but it also speaks to the participation by other law enforcement agencies. As you said, it's a regional center, of which there are four in the state. So does $3 million just cover the staff costs for Sacramento County's participation, and do other entities, you know, if it's got 34 counties, do other counties seek it? Or are we the umbrella for the receipt of the dollars? We provide the staffing that's paid for by the federal grant, both the folks that are on payroll with Sacramento County, but also consultant positions? I guess that's the type of detail that would probably be helped to understand. I don't know that answers, you know, the concerns or questions that were posed by callers, and it may not go to what Supervisor Cernan was speaking to, but I guess that would be helpful to know, because it is pretty scant on explanation. And if, you know, if it's regional, other counties, they also get funding streams, everybody puts that in a pot. I can't imagine you could run a regional center for $3 million bucks, but I could be wrong about that. So over a three-year period, that's $1 million a year, so.
Yes, Chair, that is for the Sacramento County personnel. The other counties also contribute, and the other jurisdictions contribute through?
Through a similar process?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so that would be, probably be, again, just for this board member, would be useful information to know, then, what's it costs through OES's umbrella, I guess, coverage on this, for the 34 counties to participate? And our portion is $3 million, on average, $1 million a year for what was pointed out here. But I guess I'd be curious, and OES, I assume the answer to the governor, I don't know. I mean, again, this obviously is something that we've participated in for a number of years, but I think it would be helpful to have that as a part of the information background for our consideration. It would seem to me we certainly have a few weeks to put this over. And it's good to see it in advance. We get a number of these that come in retroactively, so it's good to know that we have the opportunity to discuss it. Supervisor Cernan, did you have anything else you wanted?
No, I would just, I know Supervisor Desmond's in the queue, too, but I'd like to move that we drop it from today's agenda and we revisit it, maybe date uncertain, but, you know, in advance of, well, in advance of September 30.
It does have budget implications. Apparently, it is built into the budget, the positions are. So it may be something we want to at least see before our June recommended budgets, so we have final budget, obviously, in September, which would be timely. So either way, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, providing additional information is always a good thing, certainly. I do have some familiarity with these task forces from my prior life in the CHP, and I know they have been very effective, not only in the state of California, but throughout the country. And my question, has this board agreed to this grant funding in the past? Or what's the cycle? It's three, this is three years, but I'm assuming it has in the past.
Yes, it has always been approved in prior years. That's correct.
And does OES, I mean, this is obviously funding that's approved by the state legislature, and I, maybe you can clarify a little bit about some of the limitations. My understanding is OES puts some, certainly some parameters about how this funding can be spent with these task forces in terms of how much they can be used for domestic terrorism and type investigations and limitations. Can you describe any of those kind of conditions and criteria, Eric?
Yes, so this is, again, a combination of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and California CAL-OES, Operation Emergency Services. This is very specific to preventing domestic and other terrorism, developing information and sharing it with other agencies. So it's very specific about, for example, there's no purchase, it's for staff. It's not for purchasing of other equipment, like last week's discussion, or I guess that was two weeks ago. This is very specific to staffing the intelligence, regional intelligence center. And as stated, it's been funded every time prior years.
Just 2003?
Yes, sir.
And one final question, and, you know, my understanding is, there are a lot of statutes that limits law enforcement's ability on conducting surveillance on domestic terrorism suspects or subjects. Certainly, if any law enforcement agency, whether it's the sheriff's department or CHP or whomever, that would jeopardize this funding if they don't, if they don't follow those requirements. Is that right, Eric?
Yes, absolutely. If they don't follow state or federal law, constitutional law, that would jeopardize the funding.
Okay, thank you. I'm in support of the, I'm in support of the item. Of course, more information is, like I said, never a bad thing. So I wouldn't have an objection if we wanted to continue to get a little more information, but I am supportive of it.
Okay, very good. Then Supervisor Cernan, your punchback coming in?
Yeah, thank you. Again, there's a motion on the floor. I didn't hear a second, but I appreciate Supervisor Desmond's questions, but I think it highlights the fact that, you know, we don't have that background, same background that he does. And so for those of us that aren't as familiar, I think, again, taking the time to better understand it would benefit all of us, benefit the public. And acknowledging that we have, as a board, funded this in the past, I would say that, given the experience that our community, in fact, our country, has had recently, relatively recently, I think, has elevated sensitivities to the interaction between law enforcement and the public. And so, again, I'm not necessarily prejudging my ultimate disposition on this, but I don't see any harm in, you know, vetting it a little more carefully, understanding it a little bit better, maybe even giving individual board members the opportunity to put in writing our questions ahead of time, which may help guide the next, the next time we hear it in chambers, so that there's some, you know, expectations in terms of what we're interested in knowing a little bit, a little bit better. So.
I would, second your motion, Supervisor Cernan, I think maybe picking a date, if that's possible. I think just to know with some certainty for return. And again, it's good that we have some lead time. Sometimes we see these, as I said, as we've seen in other cases, many, most times with good reason, there we are authorizing retroactively, so we have some time on this one. I would just also comment that, in addition to obviously what's embedded in law, there, I assume there's policy guidance manual. When you have multiple agencies coming together, and certainly out of my realm of expertise by a long shot, but for Eric and Supervisor Desmond and others who have worked in law enforcement, I assume there's, you know, guidance, because you've got entities that come together that operate under state and federal statutes and laws. But if there's, you know, the center under OES is, you know, providing intelligence and gathering intelligence, working with, you know, Federal Bureau of Investigation, as I understand it, and U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Department of Justice, and others. So if, I think, having an understanding, it's a fair, it's a fair question, more information. If individual board members would like to have time to submit questions, I, again, I have no problem with putting it over. But I guess maybe that's the type of information, Eric, without you necessarily having to research it, assimilating that, so it's a matter of record. People then can judge for themselves whether they think this is, you know, good or not. But we have supported, I've supported it in the past, and so I, again, I don't necessarily have questions beyond what I'm putting forward here today, but I think more information is probably better on this item and others. So.
Thank you.
So I don't know, you want to pick a date, or maybe work at the clerk's office?
I'm fine with a date that's in advance of the, of the budget.
If I can make a suggestion, what you could do is drop the item and just bring it back, and we could, we will make a note on the record that it will come back before either your June or your September, whatever the board chooses. But I would recommend dropping it. That allows the county exec's office to work on getting the information, and we can, we can have choices in terms of picking the date. It could even be sooner than the date that you designate today, so.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Well, that's the motion, to drop it, then.
All right, I'd second it. All right, we've already had public comment on this item, so that's a motion on the consent calendar. So it's a move, second, to drop the item, understanding it will return prior to budget, so.
Okay. Unanimous vote. And just so that my record is clear, returning before June or September? Which budget?
Oh, I guess I turn to Ann. I mean, if they're built into the budget, they're already, were funded through September 1st, as I understand it, so.
So either would be, either would be acceptable. I was contemplating a June 15th return date. It is after the June budget hearing, but it is before the September, and it also allows ample time to do the, complete the grant.
Gather the information, okay.
Application.
All right, that's, I think that's important, too, is that even though it's a date, they're going to need time to assimilate the information. So, okay, all right, very good.
Okay, so I'll note that. And I wanted to follow up with Supervisor Kennedy's question. After the appointment for today, that would leave one vacant seat, and that is scheduled to come back to the board by June 7. And they have one applicant so far on file. They're scheduled to interview on May 26, and the filing period is continuous.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
All right, very good. So I think we've taken comment, I know we have taken comments on the consent calendar, and unless there's any other items that folks want to speak to, then I think a motion would be in order for the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Frost, seconded by Supervisor Desmond, to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Nothing further, please vote.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote for items 2 through 40, with the exception of items 6 and 18. Okay. And for item 41, I will need a motion to drop this item. This is going to be coming back at a later time when some of the folks are available. This is the presentation of resolution in recognition of the Sacramento County History Day competition.
Right, the students weren't available today, so we've got to work around their schedules. They're still in school. Okay, all right. Chair, we move to, you want to drop the item, then bring it back?
Second.
Yeah, we'll drop it, and then when you're ready to schedule.
Okay, try to do it next, next time. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, and item 42, this is the presentation of resolution recognizing May 2022 as Older Awareness Month, older adults' awareness month.
Older adults, yeah. And I know we have some folks in the audience, I'm going to ask them to join me at the podium, offer some comments. We have members of our Adult and Aging Commission, Catherine Cos, Deborah Bonner, and April Carney, as I understand it. We also have Michelle Caellas from our Department of Children, Family, and Adult Services, and so I'll ask them to, come on down.
Thank you so much. My name is Catherine Cos. I'm the current chair of the Adult and Aging Commission. And I just want to, first of all, appreciate Supervisor Natoli for introducing this resolution, and for all of you, for all of the efforts that you've made to support older adults and people with disabilities in this community. We are, as a commission, we're excited to continue to work with county staff and you and our community partners as the county works to join AARP's Age Friendly Network. And we are currently supporting the county in its needs assessment and developing an action plan. And so we will be looking forward to working as a good partner and lifting Sacramento County up to be one of the best places to live and age and stay. We all know that as we make our community a more supportive and engaging place for older adults and people with disabilities, we make it a better place for all of us to live, work, play, and learn. I should say that as a professor. So we appreciate you and your support. We are also working hard to make sure that people already know what's here. There are so many resources, and many people don't know what programs and services are available. So the commission has just launched an online virtual directory, and we've partnered with Sac State Gerontology students to highlight all of the great programs that are already here. And we will be following up with all of you to make sure you know about that and can share it with your constituents. And we also hold a monthly forum where we invite presenters from nonprofits and government agencies. agencies to share what they do. So, again, thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing to work to make this community the best place to age. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is April Carney, and I am a current commissioner. I think that Catherine said it wonderfully and amazingly, and on behalf of the commission, I'm so glad to be here, and I thank you very much for making this May Older Adults Awareness Month. Thank you.
Good morning. Michelle Caellas, Child, Family, and Adult Services, and I also want to thank you Supervisor Natoli for elevating this today. It is just amazing, I think we all know how rapidly our community is aging, and we have so many opportunities ahead of us, and our partnership with the Aging and Adult Commission has strengthened, and they have a lot of energy to really help us make this a better community for older adults. Just a couple of things, in July, that, well, starting January, but we don't get the funding yet, the governor included in his budget an APS expansion plan, so instead of going out assessing older adults 65 and older, we'll be going out assessing adults 60 and older. We are getting prepared for that. We have the governor's master plan on aging that we're considering internally, how we align our efforts, and then this board did support the opportunity for us to join the Age Friendly Communities Network. Again, the Aging and Adult Commission has been a significant partner in that. We're also partnering more with Area 4 Agency on Aging, unfortunately, Will couldn't be here today, but they were great partners in helping us get the Dine at Home Sacramento program going, and they have an array of resources. I'll say one last thing, and she's not going to like it, but we hired our first deputy director ever of senior and adult services, Melissa Jacobs. So, she is ready to help lead our county toward implementing an older adult system of care, which is a vision that we have, and will definitely need partnership, so thank you again.
Well, thank you, Catherine, and April, and Michelle, and.
Welcome, Melissa. We're looking forward to your ongoing work.
Just note that whether the definition is 60 or 65, I'm an older adult, no matter which way you look at it, so, kind of hard to imagine standing here to think about that, but it is really important, as this board has done, certainly annually, to recognize the work of our Adult and Aging Commission, certainly of our Area Agency on Aging 4, and the work of our Department of Children, Family, and Adult Services, who partner along with a lot of nonprofits, and certainly people throughout this community to make this not only a welcoming place, but a place where folks can make their home and actually live their entire life here, and in a way that is done with dignity, and certainly in a way that accommodates changing needs as people mature through life, but recognizing the contributions that older adults make, certainly in their early years, but as they progress in the ways they're able to continue to get back, the, I think, the strength and the inspiration and the motivation that comes with folks, who bring the wisdom of the years, but also, I think, show the vitality as folks progress through life. And so, on behalf of this board, I would be very pleased here today to recognize May. May's a month of many different opportunities and activities, and we proclaim May on different occasions, in different ways, but it is a month of spring, a month of renewal, but a month to recognize, obviously, the work of our commissioners, folks that join April and Catherine on a regular basis, to come together to provide guidance and offer advocacy to this board, but also, I think, reflect our community and the work that is important to better the quality of life. And so, I have framed resolutions approved by this board this morning, one for the commission, one for the department, and I know Will Tiff wasn't able to be here, so we'll get a properly framed copy for Area 4, so with that all. One to Catherine, on behalf of the commission, and April, as chair, you can cut that one in half, and then one for Michelle, and the department, and then we've got a photo here, so.
Okay, great. You go ahead. Oh, I don't see her. Oh, let me take my mask off, sorry.
Great, thank you all for your work, and.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I just say a few words? And as an Adult and Aging Commission alumnus, from about 20 years ago or so, when Maxine Milner Krugman enlisted me to volunteer, I just also want to just add my voice to the chorus of thanks for the work you do, and certainly your work is a testament to Sacramento County's commitment to our aging population, and for far too long, our older adults who were at risk of neglect and abuse were so overlooked, and the work we're doing is to ensure that doesn't happen. So, thank you very much for all of your work, Michelle, and your work, Catherine and April.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond, anyone else? If not, then go forth and enjoy the month, be nice to a senior citizen, to an older adult, and thank you all for your work, so, very good.
Chairperson Natoli, my apology, but we do need to go back to the consent for item 5, to recognize Dave DeFonte's appointment.
We do, so, very good. Now, we'll get to really doubly highlight that, so obviously, we called that earlier, so my apologies for that, so, and I'll go back to you to make some comments, and I think other board members wanted to weigh in as well, so.
Yes, thank you very much. I am really pleased to bring, you've already voted, but I appreciate the support for appointing Mr. Dave DeFonte to the Deputy County Executive for Community Services. We did an extensive nationwide search, and are pleased that we chose someone from our own ranks. He hasn't been back long, but he did an outstanding job, and he's got 20 years of local public sector experience, and he has exceptional expertise in his field, as well as really good collaborative relationships with all the stakeholders that are really necessary to do this work. So, I am very happy that he applied for and accepted the position, and looking forward to him starting in early June.
Very good, thanks, Ann. Supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to congratulate Dave. I'm delighted to have you on board. We've already had some issues that we've worked with together, and you've handled them in a very professional and positive way, which is something that always means a lot to everyone. It's like, how can we make this work? You're obviously that kind of guy, and I like that, so I'm thrilled to have you on board, and congratulations on the position.
Thanks, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to offer my congratulations to Dave, I know the trajectory has been steep since your return, but that's testament to many of the accolades that have already been mentioned, in terms of your willingness and ability to collaborate and problem solve. I think it's apparent to all of us that that particular skill set is not something we always see in our public servants, but it's definitely something that you seem to have an abundance of. So, I did have the chance to work with you when you were here previously, I think only Supervisor Natoli and I on this board now, we're the only ones to have had that opportunity to work with you in your prior capacity, but to see you excel the way you have, it doesn't really surprise me, and so just wanted to offer my, not only congratulations, but my support going forward in your new capacity. Thanks.
Thanks, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. I will just echo everything that was said, but I do want to just point out that the few times that we have worked together since you've been back, I have appreciated your openness, your listening. You leave and come back with a solution, and that's kind of how the process should work, and so I sincerely appreciate that and expect that by June, you should be the CEO. Just saying.
I can work on those retirement papers, you know. I am an older adult.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Ditto, Dave. Congratulations, and now, instead of calling Mike Penrose with my five alarm fires in District 3, I'll be calling you, so I anticipate we'll develop a very close working relationship. And refresh my memory, don't you live in the unincorporated area?
I do.
Okay, good, that's always.
In your district, actually.
Oh, that's such a key component of anyone who is assigned to really solve problems in the unincorporated county and provide a higher level of customer service, so congratulations, and I just look forward to working with you even more.
Remember, those phones have a two-way capacity, so you can call into your supervisor, just as he can call you, so. But, Dave, I would, again, echo what's been said here, certainly by the county executive and my colleagues, and again, we're very pleased that you kind of returned to your home base after garnering an experience, and certainly working on your professional advancement in other areas in the region, but we're glad you're here, and again, that's, I think, a true testament, certainly, to your work, but, you know, the work that lies ahead, I think that's obviously very, very important, and that's a critical part of, obviously, Ann's selection in bringing you forward here this morning for, obviously been confirmed already, but want to just offer congratulations, and again, I know you're very intent upon, you know, making a difference, working collaboratively, obviously, with folks in the county framework, but certainly our partners and constituents throughout the county and the region, so congratulations to you, Dave.
Thank you very much. I can't tell you how honored and pleased I am by this. It's been, actually, about 10 years since I've been at this podium, so that has flashbacks to conversations many years back, but so very happy to be back. Thank you so much to this board for your trust in me, extremely gracious comments, that was very nice. Huge thanks to Ann for her trust in me. A special thanks to Mike Penrose, too, you know, he's somebody that I looked up to for many years when I was here before, as a leader, as a problem solver, and frankly, just an awesome human being, and I know you've all worked with him, just such a great guy, so I definitely hope to make him proud. Very happy to be working with the CEO team and department heads that, you know, will be within my purview, just an awesome group of people. I've, you know, known some of them for many years, and I'm just getting to know others, but just so very happy to be in this space and being able to work with them more directly in the future. And then with community development, very happy I'll still be getting to work with community development, you know, planning and community development in general was sort of my first county love, and definitely where a lot of my passion lies, so very pleased that I get to continue to work very closely with that department. So, again, thank you very much, I'm just so incredibly honored by this, and I look forward to working with you even more closely in the future. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, we don't need to vote on, we already did, so, it was a 5-0, so, okay, very good. Thanks, Ann. All right, with that, then, we'll move into our timed items for the morning, we have a couple of items, and so.
Yes. Yeah, so, item 43 is a pretrial programs report.
Okay, and I don't know, Ann, are you going to introduce, I know we have Marlin here and Amanda both, you know, it looks like Eric's going to do it, so, okay, all right.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. Once again, Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of the Public Safety and Justice Agency, and you know, the Public Safety and Justice Agency has the probation department, public defender, conflict criminal defender, coroner's office, and is a direct liaison to the sheriff's office, as well as the district attorney, inspector general, and the courts. So, a major goal of the Public Safety and Justice Agency is to reduce recidivism and to reduce the adult daily population within our jails. And this brings us, one component very clearly is, are the pretrial programs that we have in this county. And we have two great programs, there's the probation department, which uses a public safety assessment tool, and really focuses on risk factors, and then also, we have a public defender's office through various grants, which uses a pretrial program that uses a holistic approach with a lot of public health factors to it. Both are needed. I've had discussions with the court, who are in complete agreement that both programs should exist, they support both immensely, and we view these as very complementary of one another. And so, with that, you're going to hear from Chief Probation Officer, Marlon Yarber, as well as our interim public defender, Amanda Benson, to talk more about their specific programs. So, with that, I will now introduce our chief probation officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Good morning, Marlin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Jones, appreciate being here. Got a PowerPoint, make sure I have control here. So, it's great to be back here, it's been a little while, I miss, I think, the shield that was up here, you know, gave me this sneeze guard sense of security, perhaps, but no, in all seriousness, you know, an important issue, pretrial services, and certainly, you know, glad to be joined today by my counterpart from the public defender's office. I've got several members of my team here, I think, who are instrumental in getting information and data prepared for me, as well as being joined by Commissioner Brody, whose leadership within the court has been instrumental with getting pretrial up, running, and the evolution, I think, is still to come forward, so excited to have all of that support and teamwork. So, going back in time a bit, you'll recall, I think this was a discussion that was born out of last year's budget, if I remember correctly, and I think it was Supervisor Kennedy that had asked for the follow-up, and so it's taken some time. I know all of you have been busy, as have been watching, certainly, the agendas and the topics come and go, and so I think we had planned this earlier, and Supervisor Kennedy, unfortunately, I think, was out one week, and so we made sure we brought it back when he was here, so that he could hear it, so, again, glad to be here. So, you'll recall, you know, there's lots of focus around our jail, jail population, the pretrial population specifically, and our efforts to, you know, help with addressing that, go back some in time. You'll recall, I think everyone's pretty much aware of the Humphreys decision that essentially rules that you can't keep someone in custody, and based their release solely on their ability to pay. That has essentially changed the landscape for all of us, it's really set on its ear the way we go about pretrial services, and not just in our county, but statewide. And so, with that, you know, the overarching goal of the pretrial program is really to ensure, you know, that we're effectuating releases from jail in a safe manner. You know, there's two primary outcomes that I think I shared with you last time, it's really to ensure that, you know, whoever we're releasing shows back up to court at that next court date, and while they're out, that they not do anything that brings them back to the attention of law enforcement, you know, don't commit any new crimes, don't hurt anyone while you're out. The authority for the probation department to engage in this work is really captured in the county charters, I'm sure you're probably aware, and, you know, we see pretrial services as really a great fit for us, you know, we've got lots of experience as it relates to sort of risk management, understanding, you know, that people are sometimes in a low point in their lives, and, you know, need essentially a helping hand up, and, you know, we're able to do some of that work. We also understand that, you know, risk assessments are key to, you know, this sort of change in the implementation, and obviously, working with the court. As an arm of the court, you know, it's our job really to give them the best information possible to help with those decisions. And so, with sort of that jail population in mind, I'll share also, or just a reminder, you know, there's lots of different ways that people get released from jail, they can be cited out, you know, or cited essentially in lieu of actually even showing up to jail, something that our officers do. There are quick releases that are essentially decisions at the discretion of the sheriff's office, there's zero bail, as I'm sure you're aware, there's a, you know, new bail schedule for many misdemeanors and low-level felonies, there's own recognizance releases, essentially the court's making a decision to release someone. Bail still is in effect, as I mentioned, and so, you know, folks still have the opportunity to bail out, and then at the end of that continuum is where you get to own recognizance with some conditions at arraignment, and that is essentially our pretrial program. That's where essentially the probation department's recommendation, assessment, recommendation, and monitoring comes to play. So, the program began in 2019, there was some initial startup from this board, so you made an investment in the probation department, and I think, if I remember right, about that same time, or shortly thereafter, there was some work that our prior county fiscal officer had engaged in, I think we utilized the Mark Carey Group to do some assessments, and, you know, the short story there is that Mr. Carey said, you need to do more pretrial work, you need to get more people out on pretrial, so it was like, okay, I think we're poised to do that. And so, your investment in our efforts really helped leverage that grant application to the judicial council, and that has helped, really helped us build out our program. So, currently, there's about 2.9 million in county funding, and about 2 million in state funding that supports our efforts. And as with, you know, any major criminal justice reform work, you know, we don't do it alone, and if we do it alone, you know, it's never really as good as it could be if we did it with our partners, and so, again, very pleased to have, you know, the support of the court, certainly our partners with the public defender's office, district attorney's office, but in this case, also Department of Health, DHA. Department of Health, DHA, the community, and many others. So it's really helped to, again, as I mentioned, sort of evolve the program. There are many efforts, I should say, kind of centered around multidisciplinary teaming and groups that help navigate really those decision points at every stage. And so the roles of the pretrial program, though they are complementary, as Deputy County Exec Jones states, you know, we do work at the issues from sort of different angles, if you will. You know, my team is really focused on the identification of the pretrial population, assessment of that population, making recommendations to the court, and then monitoring people once they are released. And though I certainly don't speak for Amanda, and she'll have a chance to talk about her office, you know, they're looking at the myriad of supports needed by many of those who are released, perhaps, you know, at all points that I sort of mentioned, and then doing really a tremendous job with regards to connecting them to the supports that we all know our clientele need.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Before you leave the slide, if you can go back one, please. So, Marlon, under the probation role box here, it says, basically, probation has a responsibility for performing a public safety assessment for all bookings held more than four hours. Is that timeframe, is that a statutory timeframe, or is that one that probation, working with the courts, have determined is the appropriate timeframe to work with?
I think that's the time that we need in order to conduct the assessment, but I can check with my team. Accurate.
Okay, and does that applies to any bookings that are based on being a misdemeanor or a potential incarcerated for felony activity?
So this is everyone, Supervisor, with the exception of penal code 187, those are in for murder, but everyone essentially, if they're in for four hours, is getting assessed via the PSA.
So even DUI, I mean, all of it, just based on that timeframe?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Excuse me. So on to a bit more about the assessment, and I assure you, this slide was not included just to confuse you. Obviously, it presents a challenging visual. The important piece here, though, is really, you know, the risk factors that are listed down the left-hand side. And so the choice and utilization of the public safety assessment or the PSA tool wasn't intentional one. It was born out of work, essentially funded by the Laura and John Arnold Foundation. As many of you know, you know, some philanthropists with, you know, lots of resources with a real interest in criminal justice reform. They essentially funded the research that supported the development of this tool, and the researchers considered hundreds of risk factors in doing their efforts essentially to wind down to these nine. And these nine are essentially those risk factors that are most predictive of whether or not someone could essentially be released back into the community. So as I mentioned, the tool itself was intentionally chosen, and it was chosen in part because, one, it's very simple. It's been supported by both judicial council and certainly our court here in Sacramento. But also, an important aspect of the tool is that it attempts to eliminate bias. So it doesn't ask anything about ethnicity, does not include anything around gender, employment status, substance use or misuse, mental health, none of that is required. In addition, in addition to that, I should say, it also does not require an interview. So there's no face-to-face with the probation officer who, you know, might be subject to their own biases. It takes that out of the equation essentially. And so we felt like this tool really would be one that could work both for us, as well as the court and all of the court partners.
Mr. Chair, if I could... So, Marlon, is this then applied as a kind of computational algorithm?
Correct, correct. So it is automated and does exactly that, Supervisor, in the world of risk assessments. You know, the researchers who develop tools like this, you know, add weights to different risk factors in order to come up with a computation that says essentially, you know, this is the risk level that the person is at, and then, you know, working with the court and the court partners, we can then decide, you know, should we detain or release this person given where the risk level is.
So what comes out of that is some kind of numeric value that corresponds to risk?
Correct. So you'll get a score from one to six, and that essentially will determine how you're monitored or supervised really in the community. So ones, twos, and threes, if you will, essentially would get the phone call reminders around court. They might have that initial interview with us, and you know, and depending when that interview is, can sometimes count as their first reporting date to us and really sort of give them that first push, if you will, to go back out in the community, reconnect with all the things that we know are positive around, you know, family, job, kids, et cetera, or treatment, even if that's a, you know, something that's in play for them. And then as you go up, so fours and fives essentially would require a little bit more supervision, they might have to report maybe in the office setting. And then the sixes are really the most well-monitored, I will say. And so that would include something like GPS monitoring, visits by some of the officers that you see here today in their home or in the community.
Got it, thank you.
And so, you know, I mentioned the PSA, and, you know, to your point, Supervisor, around, you know, who all is getting assessed. We're doing this every day of the week, seven days a week, and really, that's only because of the investment that you all have made in our department. Our folks work into the evening hours, so I think our latest schedule ends at maybe 11 or 12 o'clock at night. That includes weekends, and so we're doing everything we can to support obviously the jail reduction challenges. So a little bit about some of the data, as you see here, excuse me, as you see here, data from inception and the most recent data, I think as of just last week, I think we have over 3,800 people who've actually been released via pretrial. There's an 87%... Excuse me. Go back to this slide, sorry. There's an 87% success rate, if you will, no new arrests. 13% of those folks have had arrests, and I think, if I recall correctly, there's just 3% that have been brought back for a subsequent violent arrest. So I know Supervisor Desmond, you had asked a question, I think, around FTAs, and if we're able to identify the rate in which people may be appear or fail to appear for subsequent court dates. And I've asked that question internally. It's a little bit of a challenge, it'll take a little bit more work for us to be able to give you a definitive answer, just because in the court process, there are so many appearance dates essentially that, you know, you could show up for one, not show up for another, and so we'd like to do a little bit of analysis in order to be able to answer that. You also, I think, asked about, if I recall correctly, those who'd been convicted or incarcerated also, who had been afforded pretrial release, and for the cases that have resolved, which is about 3,300 to date, there have been only 30 people who've been incarcerated once they've been released via pretrial. So that includes both remand to jail, a county jail-prison sentence, and also sentenced to California Department of Corrections rehabilitation.
Go ahead, Richard. Go ahead. Thank you, Marlon. I was actually going to follow up on some of these. I appreciate you responding to those ahead of time. I was going to wait to maybe to the end of the presentation, because I really want to... I mean, this is such a great program and the partnership between probation, and I was going to wait till after Amanda talks a little bit to delve into, okay, you know, what do we see on the backend here for folks who end up participating in the public defender program? So appreciate you kind of team that up, and I'll have some follow-up questions at the end.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Excuse me. So obviously, sort of back to this slide, the key takeaway is, you know, there's 3,800 people who, you know, but for the pretrial services program, would have otherwise remained in custody. And so as I alluded to, they're essentially allowed to be released back in the community, reconnect with all the things that we know are positive. The average case duration right now is about 100 days, and we think that's largely due to the pandemic. We think cases can hopefully resolve in about 90 days as the court comes back online here shortly. And so we hope to continue to grow that number. You know, my efforts are really around pushing my folks to the point where they're, as I said to Commissioner Brody just this morning, you know, pushing them to the point where they're just about uncomfortable. And, you know, if you're good with the release, or you have at least thoughts, like, let's get to that point. Like, we can grow this, we have capacity, particularly at those lower levels of supervision, around sort of that automated phone call system. We have unlimited capacity in those areas, and so we'd like to continue to grow the population. I've also asked my folks to take a look at, you know, the number of jail bed days avoided. And to date, there's about 387,000 jail bed days avoided. And so just doing the rough math, I think, as some of you do the rough math as well, with $186 per day jail bed cost, that's roughly $60 million in avoided jail costs. And that's, again, backing out the costs that are associated with our pretrial efforts. So I think, you know, the impact is enormous, and again, I want to push my folks to continue to do more.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Quick question.
Yeah.
Chief, is the probation department or this collaborative group intentionally keeping what will eventually be long-term data? So for instance, with the inception of all the new pretrial activity, most notably the fact that it's keeping folks out of jail, are we going to look back over 10 years, maybe even 20 years, and make note of, well, you know, because of the interventions that are a function of the collaboration, to keep people from reoffending, most importantly, what that has done in terms of, you know, changing people's lives, I mean, in the long term, especially for those folks that have had, you know, maybe significant or longer histories of criminal activity and incarceration?
So the short answer is yes, you know, provided our automated systems can live up to that, that promise that I'm making. The short answer is yes. We want, we have a very robust data system, obviously, you know, just giving you really kind of the highlights of what we have here today. But the hope is that we can use that information to continue to, you know, fund and support all the things that we know people need.
Great, thank you.
Chief, I have a question. So kind of back to the statistics that were in the pie chart that's up there. So of the 3% that reoffended with violent offenses, do you, as you look at your assessment chart and the way you compute that, again, done kind of automatically with the inputs, does that help you in any way to refine the process for screening? Again, you know, people, human nature is just, you know, not everything's predictable, and thank goodness, I mean, it's all individuals in a lot of respects, but with regards to trying to use a tool that then, you know, properly assesses someone so they can be released, but also calculates what risks may be involved as it relates to behaviors that would, you know, find them back in the criminal justice system, and obviously victims on the other side of that. So I guess I'm curious with the 3%, without going into any great detail, you know, what types of offenses were they, again, crimes against people? And if so, I know there's been obviously ones that make the headlines when there's something terribly tragic that happens, but I'm just kind of curious about that information and how that informs going forward with regards to the successful outcomes, but also then there's still this segment of folks who end up back and may have done some things that are pretty bad, so.
Sure, great question, Mr. Chair. And, you know, certainly the 3% would include those crimes against persons, as you suggest. And what you point out is what I, you know, always talk about in the way of the sweet spot, you know, it's what's our comfort zone, what's our sweet spot, and we continue to kind of pursue that, you know. How much risk, how much failure are we all really willing to tolerate is really the question when I sort of say sweet spot. And so, you know, is 3% too much? Is 3%, you know, too conservative? Again, I sort of take the approach like, let's continue to push ourselves to the point where we're, you know, just shy of uncomfortable. And 3% makes me think we can continue to do more, although, you know, it's not without, you know, recognizing in the balance there are, you know, the violent crimes, what we know, you know, many of our folks are capable of committing essentially in the community. And so we have to embrace a little bit of that failure and understand that, you know, for the greater good essentially, you know, we continue to do this work.
And again, that's roughly 100 folks, just, you know, if you look at across the number of folks that have been released on the pretrial monitoring, I guess beyond, you know, the behaviors, though, is there some opportunity to look at maybe the circumstances? Again, there may have been purely, you know, the subjects doing and, you know, whatever they did, but, I mean, in trying to address some of the factors, whether it's poverty or unemployment or mental illness, or, you know, again, there's propensity towards criminality. I mean, I don't know. I mean, so, but in looking back, helping us to look forward, what sort of, you know, in your collaborating with the courts and with public defender's office, obviously with their law enforcement officials to agree that you do that in that context, how do you... Does that inform you, I guess, you know, and looking at, so again, looking at who you're going to qualify for the program, but then also if something went bad or sour, then what maybe could have been done to be supportive and maybe nothing more in a lot of cases? I don't know. I guess I'm curious is your take on it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It does inform us, you know, my fear is always that it makes us, you know, more conservative, that it forces us to, you know, kind of limit that pursuit of the sweet spot or that, you know, uncomfortableness. But no, certainly, you know, we talk about it amongst ourselves in terms of the court partners, including probation, and we want to continue to do more of that. And so, you know, I can't say definitively that we've debriefed all 100 cases that have resulted in that new violent offense, but certainly, when you look at the examples or a sample of those, it does inform essentially, you know, are we able to do more to connect people to supports? Should this person have had a higher level of monitoring, or should we have, you know, recommended the release altogether? So it's absolutely considered.
Okay, good. Thanks, Chief. Yeah, Supervisor Desmond, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great, actually, great questions. You know, and I'd also, Amanda, maybe you can touch on this, too, for those 100 or so, that 3%, not only different monitoring things that could have been done or as part of your assessment, but what other, you know, when you kind of do case studies, I guess, okay, what other services maybe could we have employed to avoid, have avoided this person engaging in additional criminal activity, for instance? And, I mean, I think you're right, we want to make sure we continue with this success because the tendency would be to become more conservative, and I get that, because even though 3% is a very small portion of those, you know, 3,000 some odd cases, it's a big deal for the person who's the victim of that crime, you know? So, yeah, I think I'd love to hear your thoughts on it as well, Amanda, for the folks, you know, that threat 3%, how do we get at them? What are some changes you're always making, adjustments you're making to bring that, make that lower? So.
Appreciate both of those comments.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. It's kind of a sidebar from exactly what we've been talking about here, but something that I hope that we'll continue to look at is not just the pretrial monitoring and getting people out, you know, who don't need to be in, but also how to avoid getting people in in the first place. And, I mean, because with so many of our prisoners being released within three days, clearly they're, the feeling is they're not posing a threat, if we wouldn't be releasing them. And I'm not talking about violent crimes necessarily, but for example, if someone is arrested because it's strictly what their activities and their actions didn't constitute a violent crime, but it was strictly a manifestation of the fact that they have mental health issues, strictly a manifestation of the fact that they're living on the street, you know, I hope that we can find an appropriate way of avoiding booking them, because once they're in the system, they're in the system. And I look at, and the CEO hears me bring this up regularly, there's a diversion program in San Antonio, which we heard a lot about, a visit we paid, we didn't get to see it, but, so, you know, that we continue to look at not just once they're in, getting them out who don't need to be there, but trying to see how we can get, you know, to the point where we're diverting some people from even being booked in the first place.
Deputy County Executive?
Thank you, if I may, that is a supervisor, thank you for that. That is one of the goals of the Public Safety Justice Agency, because as you recall, or as you're aware, a lot of what probation deals with are folks that are in the system and arrest has been made. Same thing with the jail population. And so this is where we're going to have to work with countywide law enforcement, all of the various sheriff's offices, but also all of the various police departments, on what can we do to use diversion and deflection tools on the front end so that they're not even entering the criminal justice system to begin with? That's one of the primary goals that we have. We're mapping that out, and we'll eventually come back to the board with some... We're mapping that out and we'll eventually come back to the board with some potential promising practices.
Great, thank you very much.
So I absolutely support that and we're working on it as we speak. You know, I don't have a slide for it, but I would be remiss not to talk about some of the other supports and efforts that we're doing. So you'll recall there was, I think, about $70,000 in funds that were supposed to support contract with a community-based organization to do some of what we're talking about here in the way of community supports. I can't recall if I was here at the time, but we literally had the contract ready, had slid it across the table to the provider and the provider said, "I can't do it." And so, you know, probation being the problem solvers that we are, we was like, "Okay, well, we'll pivot and figure out how best to then connect our clientele to the support." So that led to us essentially, you know, purchasing bus passes ourselves, utilizing Uber and Lyft, developing our own clothes closet, reaching out to DHA. I think we're very close to having an eligibility specialist embedded with us, doing more to really ensure folks are connected to opportunities for employment, connected to opportunities for mental health and treatment, and so not letting, you know, what were essentially a barrier or a failure at one point really impact our ability to be successful at the back end. And so those efforts continue, so much so that we're back under negotiations with a new community-based organization and hope to have a contract here in place perhaps by July 1. So again, very excited for that work, as I think, as I mentioned earlier, I think it takes really kind of all of these efforts to ensure that the pretrial population is best supported. And with that, I will turn to Amanda and let her talk about the public defender's office program.
Great, thank you, Chief. Good morning, Amanda.
Marlon, good morning, board members and Chair Natoli. Amanda Benson, interim public defender. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share information about our programs. We're really excited about our program. We believe we're helping people every day, making a difference in people's lives, so thank you again for allowing us this opportunity. Let's see here. Okay, so just to begin, our program started in 2019 with a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and it started with two social workers and two legal research assistants. Since then, with the support of this board and the support of our justice partners, including the judicial council, we've been able to expand the program with some county funding and state funding. So at this point, we have nine to 10 full-time LRAs, legal research assistants. We have six social workers who also are able to supervise a number of social worker interns. So we have this, a really great team of people who all work together to advocate for safe pretrial release of our clients and to provide ongoing supportive services and linkages to services to try to work toward long-term outcome improvements. So just to give you a picture of each day what happens in our program, so we work closely with the sheriff's department and we get a list of who has been arrested the night before. And with this list, our team of, we have two senior attorneys who are wonderful, they work very closely with the LRAs, and they start researching, they just get to work looking at all the different people who have been arrested and triaging to try to find people who look, who, they have some information about their background through our database, and they can see who maybe would be good for mental health services or substance use treatment or housing issues. There's a lot that we can tell from some of the information that we have in our database. And so after we triage and determine people who would be good to be screened, we send over our LRAs each morning to the jail and they go in there and they do a series of screeners, assessments, and these are for needs. There's four screeners we do. We do a jail mental health, a brief mental health screener for mental health needs. We do a cages substance use screener, and these are all evidence-based tools. And we do the ACEs trauma assessment as well as a universal housing. And so from that, we are able to determine whether our clients need any of the services, mental health services, housing, medical employment. These assessments take about 40 minutes per client, and so we get a lot of information during that time. And not only do we do the assessments, we also gather a lot of information about their family, about what's going on in their family, where do they live, who do they help? We have clients who are sole providers for children and for grandparents, and so a lot of that information is really, really helpful to the court. And I just, I want to also just thank Commissioner Brody, who's here as well, and I also want to thank my team who are also here, Tiffany Sennett and Scott Franklin. So we get this information and every day before our arraignment court, which is our night court, we did it in the afternoon, our team is able to provide really helpful information to the court, to Commissioner Brody specifically, when, we sometimes have a substitute, but we really, we really like Commissioner Brody, have to give him a shout out. And there's a conversation about, you know, this, we have a lot more information that we can give. Previous to this program, our attorneys would go to arraignments, but they wouldn't have a lot of information, and so a lot of cases would just be continued over for two days so that somebody could go visit that client and get the information. And so now, the goal of this program is really to get in there as quickly as we can after the arrest so that we can start working on the linkages and gathering the information.
Amanda, I just want, if I could just ask you, because, so you get the list, is concurrent with probation or probation, have they already seen it? Because they do theirs within four hours or try to do within that amount of time. So how is it coordinated? Is the list already been looked at by probation or are they doing their, there's more computational, but still, they're looking at the assessment? How does that come together? I guess, obviously district attorney is involved to some degree, I would think, too, working with, so I'm just trying to understand how the pieces come together as folks go, you know, for arraignment or before the, you know, commissioner. How's that work from your perspective? I mean, I could ask Marla the same thing, but, yeah.
I believe probation has just an automatic system that gives them the list. We don't have access to that. We do rely on the sheriff. They've been very helpful, a really good partner in this program. They have developed a way to send us the list. It does come automatically, but the sheriff has to send that to us. I do believe it is the same list that we're working off of. Probation, because there's this automated, they can just perform the PSA automatically, it doesn't require the interviews.
Okay, but why would you get the same automated list? I understand yours, theirs is a computation. Why wouldn't PD, at the same time sheriff is giving the list to probation, why wouldn't you get the same, same, you get the same list, but I guess I'm just wondering if it's concurrent or?
I, we get it around 4:00 in the morning, I believe, is that, that's, so it's, I'm not sure. We, we don't have as much access to the system because we're not law enforcement, and so I'm not sure if they come at the same time. I do know that the sheriff's department has been, has, is giving that to us as a good partner. So I don't know, I can try to find more information.
Again, I just was curious, as I was following your description and certainly having heard you, what Marla said, I just wanted to get a sense about, you know, time-wise, obviously, you know, that, you know, when you go into court, that's in the, you know, morning hours, not, you get that very early in the morning, so, and I understood that probation was doing assessments up to midnight, and so you get the list at 4:00 AM, you've got PDs go over to the jail that early?
No, we start around 9:00. We have to do a lot of, we, our interns come in around 8:00, and so we have to do some research before we send them over to do the assessments. But it does come in at 4:00 AM, that's not, it just gets emailed like a box that we have. That's not when we start working on it, but as soon as we get in, we do. So the interns, after they do these 40-minute assessments of a limited number of people, we would like to expand that, and that's what we would like to do if we could expand the program and expand our service capacity, is to provide assessments for more individuals in the jail. So after the assessments are done, the LRAs return and talk to our senior attorneys about the cases and give the information, and they may even start working on, I mean, oftentimes they do, they start contacting family members. We've had, one individual was arrested and had a service dog and was just very concerned about the dog and almost, you know, when you're concerned about a dog or a child, family member, it's really hard to focus on your case. And so we try to address their most pressing needs, and we were able to actually locate the dog for that person and get that person out of custody that day and reunite them. So that's what the LRAs, it's a lot of work done before even they go to court. So once in court, then Commissioner Brody makes a decision on releases, and sometimes, you know, he has different tools at his disposal, like sometimes he does want probation's pretrial monitoring, and sometimes it's okay to go with the service, the linkages, and that, that would be enough to make the commissioner feel that that's a safe pretrial decision. So, let's see.
Supervisor Serna?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes.
Yeah, before you leave this slide, first of all, thank you for the presentation today. You note that part of the assessment responsibilities performed by the PD's office includes noting, you know, the need for various medical services. Is that based solely on the nurses' assessment at the time of booking? Or is that, how does, how does that happen? Because I assume that there's all kinds of HIPAA protections that apply to the, to the individual. Is it based on what someone that has been recently booked is willing to divulge in terms of their health needs or, if you can explain a little bit more about that?
Right, so we ask a lot of questions and if they have a medical need, like perhaps they have medication that they're supposed to be taking.
Right.
We would get that information, pardon me, and we would be able to notify the jail medical services, "Please provide this medication," I'm not sure if you, maybe they caught it, maybe they didn't, but we do a lot of, you know, if, if there's, you know, like the medication issue, there's also psychiatric issues, those are more of a mental health services, but we are in contact with correctional health, we're in contact with jail psych services if we do get information from our client that they need some type of medical need or they have some type of psychiatric issue that they need to address.
Is there a set list of questions that the interviewer from your office will apply?
Yes.
Okay.
These are, these are standardized screeners that have, that are evidence-based and have been tested and shown to be very, you know, very reliable and very scientific and evidence-based, so.
And I assume that part of the, part of that assessment asks some pretty blunt questions about someone's history of substance use disorder and whether or not they're going through withdrawal or, you know?
Yes.
Okay, so that could be commingled, if you will, in terms of making sure that someone that is, you know, addicted to, let's say, meth, is getting whatever the, whatever can be used to make them more comfortable or at least get them to a place of relative stability?
Yes.
Okay.
That is part of it.
All right.
Thank you for that question.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
Hi, Amanda. I just, partially what Supervisor Serna was asking about with the assessments, so they're not random, the assessments might be a recommendation of, you know, from those who screened in, them in, in input, basically, correct? But it's not everyone, it's only a few because of the amount of funding that you have?
Correct. I believe we're able to conduct between 30 and 40 assessments each day.
So some might slip through the cracks and just not be there at that time or not receive that service, basically?
That's true, but we, we, that is true, yes.
Okay.
We try to see, we try to really triage and see the people who we believe based on what we find out about the information in the database, but we, we might see somebody that maybe wasn't the top priority and miss somebody who was, so, but, you know, we do our best to see as many people as we can see.
Yeah. So when they are inputting people and the nurse is evaluating them, are they looking for their, do they have access to their medical records? So, or are they just working blind with that person? Like there could be someone who's, who's been on heroin and meth and fentanyl for a long time, who's maybe exhibiting psychosis, but you don't know what the psychosis might be from if you didn't know their history, their drug history. It could be serious mental illness, it could be drugs. So do we, do you get that far into it in the, in the system?
Yes, I mean, we, these are legal research assistants, they're students, so they're, if there's a situation where, which are, what you're talking about, we have a team of social workers, so that's the next, that would be the next layer of our pretrial program is after we gather the information from this initial assessment, is, so many of our clients need social worker support, and that, social workers are also part of our team, and then they would come in and start addressing those needs through doing another assessment to try to dig deeper into what is the problem? Is it more of a mental health issue? Is it more of a substance use? Is it a co-occurring issue? And then be able to start working on addressing those needs through either correctional health or jail psych, or if obviously we're trying to get people out of jail who are appropriate to be released and safe to be released, to connect them to the services that they have. We have a number of clients who already have a case where, who are already, they've been connected to a provider and the continuum of care, but maybe they lost that connection. And part of what we do is also reconnect and then coordinate discharge for that person so that they can get reconnected and then there's a warm handoff, and so that's part of it as well.
Yeah, it seems like some of the people who are suffering from, you know, a long-term addictive behavior are maybe not having success in a drug rehab program because they are more, they are, you know, they might be hallucinating or hearing voices or, you know, having challenges that make it hard for them to be in just a normal situation. They really do qualify for a more serious mental illness type rehab versus drug rehab. It seems complicated to me. Do you agree and do you have those types of situations where, you know, you kind of have to evaluate them individually and have, you know, talk to their parents or their family to determine what's going on with them?
Absolutely, and that's how, we rely very much on our social workers and our LRAs for that as well. Oftentimes, we need to talk to family members, and oftentimes it is a very serious mental illness situation, and which is why we've, we've really braided our pretrial program with our, our mental health diversion program. Because part of what we do in our pretrial is, obviously we want to link people to services and address underlying issues, but we have, we have a number of different diversion programs in our court system. The largest one for mental health is, we have mental health treatment court and we have mental health diversion. We also have, you know, military diversion and misdemeanor diversion, and, and so that initial, those assessments also help inform the attorney who gets the case on where, how can we really start getting them into these diversion programs as quickly as possible? What do we need to get them into those programs? Do we need more documentation, more medical records, more psych records? Let's contact the family, let's get like a better, more context on this. What has, what's been done so far? What can we do differently? And so, yes, that's a big part of it. There's, there, our clients have a whole host of complex issues that we're trying to address. And, you know, many have multiple levels of issues, like housing unsheltered, you know, substance use, it's, there's, and so.
Complicated.
Yeah, it's complicated.
My last question is regarding the family. I know someone who recently had a son who actually had a felony and the system really helped him because they, they were some, able to somehow work it out. He requested to go into treatment, fentanyl, I guess, withdrawal treatment or He requested to go into treatment, fentanyl, I guess, withdrawal treatment or whatever you call it. And so my question is, if a family member has someone who's arrested and goes to jail, is it, can they reach out to the, you know, public defender's office or to probation or wherever they perceive that this person is, is, and request, you know, can our loved one be evaluated in case they were one of them who didn't, you know, because that's one of the biggest, the hardest thing is when you love someone and they go to jail and you don't know if they're okay in there. And you know they're going through some difficult withdrawal and, you know, it breaks your heart, okay, and you're trying to figure out how to help them. So can a family reach into the system and request help?
Absolutely. We talk to families all the time. Families provide really, really helpful information. And so, yes, absolutely.
Who would they, who would they get ahold of? Who would be the point of contact?
They could contact Scott Franklin, they could contact Tiffany Sinnett. Those are, Tiffany Sinnett's our supervisor of our Mental Health Diversion program. As far as our drug and alcohol, that would be more of our collaborative courts and that would be Jenny Stoneburner. So we have, and all of these, all of the names I mentioned work really closely together because of the co-occurring issues that a lot of our clients have. It just isn't just one program. You know, we have to all collaborate to find solutions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so just to provide some data, this is data from last year, the entire year 2021. You can see that 83% need some type of social worker support and about half need mental health support. And 43% need substance use, 46 need housing. So, you know, and a lot of people need all of these different things or a number of them. So that's, we provide quarterly data reports to the Bureau of Justice Assistance. And a lot of the data we provide is, they require us to keep track of these kinds of statistics. Okay, and just again, we work with a number of different county agencies and community-based organizations to address these issues, you know, correctional health, behavioral health, sub-T, human assistance, our CBOs and private providers. In last year, we were able to connect 462 individuals to mental health treatment, 243 to substance use treatment, and 252 to housing services. And starting in March, we, with the support of this board in giving us the funding to do this, as we contracted with a community-based organization to provide mentorship, intensive case management, job training help, they do a whole host of things. They'll take our clients to the DMV to get documents that they might need to apply for a job. They will go and sit with somebody at AA to make sure that they feel safe, starting with an AA group. They will drive them to court. They will provide, you know, a backpack with supplies, they will, I mean, they just a number of different things. I actually have kind of a list here that was provided to me. This is a new program, again, it just started in March, but we're very excited about it, already seeing a really great engagement with our clients. Let's see, some other things that they do are, you know, clothing vouchers, free loner phones, hotel stays, transitional living house, lift rides to court, providing a bicycle. So it's just, you know, very individualized case management. And there we go, that's the end of the data. Any questions on?
Chair Anatoly stepped out for a moment, so, Supervisor Serna?
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Pretty impressive, both of you, in your respective roles. In terms of the supportive services that that last slide there, is there any working relationship with Sacramento Regional Transit, for instance, for?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Bus passes, that kind of thing?
Yes, we received funding from the Judicial Council for bus passes in December. And we are working with them to, they're very, very helpful, providing us, we got some money this year, we were trying to use it to just stock up on bus passes, but some of them expired. They've been very helpful at helping us find a solution to that. And yes, so we work, we've been working closely with them.
And then in terms of housing, is there a working relationship with Sacramento Housing Authority?
That, I don't know. I know that our CBO, Exis Project, who is helping us with the housing aspect, I know they're, they work on that. They also have a contract with Department of Human Assistance to provide housing. And we also, well, through our telecare, through our Mental Health Diversion program, which is, again, is braided with our pretrial because it's all pretrial. The goal with Mental Health Diversion is to divert them from an actual conviction and incarceration. So we consider them to be very related programs. And we have some housing in that contract with telecare. And so I'm not sure if they're working with that, I'm not sure exactly how they find their housing, but I can get that information.
And then in terms of other kind of intersections with different agencies and resources, what about family resource centers? Is there any, is there any complement of the services that are offered at any of our FRCs that, especially with regards to anyone that may be booked who is a parent? Because it seems to me that that would be one of the things to consider in terms of, you know, helping someone that is also charged with the responsibility of parenthood.
I agree. And I believe our social workers are really on top of all the different agencies and resources that are available. And I believe that is one of the resources that they use to connect clients to services that are appropriate for them.
And is there some intentional outreach to the various CBOs? And we have no shortage of CBOs, as you're probably well aware, in Sacramento. But based on the geography of where someone that is released and is awaiting trial lives? So, you know, we have an FRC at the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, for instance, in South Oak Park. And if someone is awaiting trial, has been recently released and happens to live in the South Sacramento area or the Oak Park area, is there some intentional consideration for linking them to various CBOs that happen to be nearby?
I am not, I don't know the answer to that question. I can, I can find, I do know that we're really trying to work on being very mindful of people's communities, people's zip codes, qualified opportunity zones, trying to really take that into consideration in serving our clients and trying to utilize resources and businesses and CBOs within our clients' own communities. I don't know for certain if we've been able to develop MOU. We haven't developed any MOUs with those organizations. However, I do know that our social workers are always looking for all those different resources.
I know that we have a pretty rich GIS infrastructure here in Sacramento County. We've got some great cartographers, mapmakers. It might be, if it hasn't been done, it might be worthwhile to make a map of all those resources in the various parts of the county, either by zip code or, you know, there's probably different ways to do it. But it might be helpful to have a reference map of some sort so that it's easily referenced when someone's released awaiting trial. And, you know, either someone from PD's office or one of the social workers that you work with or our probation folks can quickly assess the geography of how best to serve someone in addition to the substance of what they need. Just a thought.
I agree. And I do know our social workers do evaluate all that, but a map, some type of a tool would be very, very helpful.
Yeah, comprehensive map with all that might be helpful.
Agreed.
Thanks.
And I don't think I answered Supervisor Desmond's questions. So I did get some information regarding the FTA rate. And again, our data is based on these quarterly snapshots. That's how we provide data to the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Based on those quarterly reports, we're seeing that only about 2% of our program participants fail to appear. And we're also seeing that only about 2% exit the program due to criminal court involvement. So we're very happy about those results, it's very, very promising. We don't, at this point, have enough information or length of time to make conclusions about actual recidivism. Recidivism has a more technical definition in the criminal justice world. You, a lot of recidivism definitions require a three-year period.
Okay.
And, you know, how do we just define it? Is it, is it a rearrest that is recidivism or is it a conviction? So I think that the goal for our county is to really develop, how do we define recidivism? What are the metrics that we want to use that we can all agree on? And so that's, I think, what we're trying to work on. We all, we have a really promising program. How do we get the data to support it? And for our department, I have, you know, for this budget cycle, submitted requests for some funding to develop a case management system where we really can delve into the data and use that data to help inform moving forward. We want this program to be a success. We want to improve outcomes for our clients and the community. And I think we're definitely on the right track. We just need more tools to keep moving forward.
Great. Supervisor, can I continue?
Yeah.
Well, I think we're all sold here, Amanda. I mean, you don't have to keep piling on because I think this is, the work you're doing is great. And, I mean, I wasn't going to put you on the spot and ask if we can expect a budget growth request, but certainly, I'd be supportive of it, as I'm sure several others up here would be as well. So I want to, so just to follow up on your response about the FTA. In terms of that 100 or so, that 3% out of the 3,500 that probation has identified who re-offended with a crime against a person, right? I think that's what it was, chief? Violent crime, is that what it was? Out of that 100, how many of those 100 were participants in your public defender assessment program? Do you know?
We don't have that information.
Okay.
I think that's something that we could go back and determine. It would take, it would just take some time to kind of pull through the data.
Sure.
And I think we could get there.
Okay.
We just haven't done that yet.
Because I think the same discussion that we were having with the chief about some of the refinements they might, probation might make in terms of the monitoring, what refinements can Public Defender's Office make in terms of providing these support resources to ensure, you know, that doesn't happen or really reduce that number even more. And then I imagine out of that 3,500 or so that probation recommends for, you know, release, monitored, not monitored, depending on the circumstances, I imagine you wouldn't ever need to assess that entire universe, but certainly, there's a lot more room for growth.
Absolutely.
In what you're doing.
Absolutely.
And you're doing great work. And I think that's what I would certainly like to see. And then finally, I just want to, well, first of all, before I forget, I wanted, I did want to, a few people have referenced Commissioner Brody. I mean, I agree with you. I hadn't seen Commissioner Brody in person since I appeared in front of him in traffic court at Carroll Miller years, several years ago. Several times.
Did you get diversion?
No, no, I was on, I was on the uniform, so I just wanted to make that call. I wasn't a repeat traffic offender or anything, but, so it's good to see you, Commissioner Brody. But I want to echo Supervisor Kennedy's sentiments about diversion, pre-jail diversion. I mean, yeah, that program in San Antonio that he referenced, I mean, the Shore Center is one small example of that, but there is so much potential on just the pre-jail diversion to begin with. And that's, you know, we have an obligation at the county to create a lot more of those opportunities for some folks who, there's no reason for them to go to jail, but we can send them somewhere else where they can get stabilized and they can get connected to the help they need, so.
Agreed, completely.
So, thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Before you leave, I just, just to the one point that was made here, I think that cross-reference to my questions of the chief and then certainly, Amanda, about the percentage of where those folks that, if they re-offended and they had passed muster with your work and passed muster with the work that the probation, and they still, you know, again, it may be a very small part of the overall universe, but I think, again, because with the work that you do, with what probation does, obviously, the list that's, you know, released by the sheriff, and then going before the commissioner is, that if there's, you know, that would be, again, I think, an important part of the overall case study because it would tell you that, you know, where even with the best tools being applied and the best judgments being applied, that folks still, and again, because people aren't predictable, no matter what tools you use, you know, there's not total predictability. But I guess, I just point that out because I, you said you might take a little work to do that. I don't, again, I'm not looking to task you, that's not my role anyway, but with that. But it seemed to me that might be a part of the spectrum that you take a look at because even with best efforts, you know.
There's always room for improvement. I agree.
Yeah.
And we'll keep studying it and, yeah.
Anyway, again, thank you and thank you to the chief. And I don't know if our commissioner wanted to offer any comments today? I mean, you're in the audience, but if you'd like to, it wasn't scheduled, but if you'd like to. You're part of the collaboration here that obviously resulted in the good work, so.
I just want to thank the probation, Marlon, Amanda, and their staff and teams. Going on their own, they could do a lot of good with this program, but by collaborating, along with the DA's office as well, who's also been on board with the pretrial release program, we can definitely see improving outcomes with regards to getting these folks through the court system on my end while improving their personal outcomes, drug treatment, housing, et cetera, on their end. But it's going to take, you know, a lot more work. Additional CBOs getting involved and assisting all of us to improve these outcomes as well. So I do want to just acknowledge the teams that they put together to try to accomplish this. I work daily with Kate Carlson and Scott Franklin at the Public Defender's Office through our court process and our arraignment process to determine, you know, who could we help by pretrial release and who, quite frankly, is unsuitable for pretrial release. So there's still a large, you know, population of folks who are not suitable for pretrial release. And, you know, they still have to make their way through the court systems as well. So, again, I just want to applaud all of the efforts that have, these folks have undertaken to get this program off the ground and to its current level of what I see as continued success.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Just a question, because I trust you're in contact, or the courts are, with other areas throughout the state? Kind of where do, from your point of view, where do you think we fall in the spectrum? Are we, you know, cutting edge? Are we, you know, somewhere in the, you know, and the reason I ask that, I just think it's important because, again, the work that, you know, has been acknowledged here by all the folks that are presented, so I'm kind of curious what your take on that would be.
I do believe we are one of the counties leading the way in pretrial through, across the state. I know that we've just been contacted by San Benito County saying, "We want to get a pretrial program up and started." You know, can we, you know, can you give us your best ideas? What works? What doesn't? How can we get started? Because we can see the success that you guys have had. So other counties will contact Sacramento with regards to our programs, how we've approached both with the Judicial Council's guidance as well as our own county's guidance and support. You know, it's all-encompassing. If we were just relying on the Judicial Council, I'm not sure we would make it. We need you guys to be on board and to see the success that these folks are doing in the work that we've started. And I do believe it's just a start. I think pretrial is in its infancy. We have, we've had some bumps in the road as far as how do we navigate it? There was the Prop 10, which did not pass, and with the Humphreys decision, and I believe And I believe pre-trial fits right in with the Humphreys decision and the spectrum of outcomes for those who are booked into the county jail, as far as OR release, pre-trial release, or detention based upon the facts and circumstances. I think pre-trial fits right in, and I think these folks are doing a great job in shepherding folks through the pre-trial process.
And I guess, just maybe it goes without saying, but certainly, public safety is a primary consideration, obviously. I mean, you know, but as we look to do things differently, but certainly in a way that's judicious and, but maintains the element of public safety, and again, obviously, the role of the courts is very, very key to all of that. So, again, thank you, Commissioner, for your, for being here, and I didn't mean to call upon you unexpectedly, but I thought, since you've been here, in reference, could be an opportunity to speak out as well.
It's quite all right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very good. Thanks. Okay. Marlin, do you have anything else? Okay, or Amanda? If not, then we thank the both of you, and thanks, Eric, for introducing this. I trust we have some callers and public speakers?
We do have one caller.
Okay, and I have one public speaker in the chamber, so let me go ahead and take our public speaker here, if that's okay, Madam Clerk? Mackenzie Wilson. Mackenzie? And then we'll take a caller.
Good afternoon, Board.
Not quite. Still, good morning.
Yeah, no, it's like 11:45. We're getting there. I hope everybody's had their lunch, or they're going to have a good lunch. I think just first, I want to quickly mention, back to like the regional task force that was spoken about on item 18. When I spoke about it, I was well aware and should have been more specific, because like me and this community were harmed by Sac County, El Dorado County, Yolo County, and everybody around. So, when they all grouped together to violate my First Amendment rights and hit me with batons, beanbag rounds, tear gas, and over bullets, I know exactly who I was talking about. And I just want to know who's checking that, because Rich, you had mentioned like these things, like, and if it's happening, then they violate this and they no longer get the grant. The problem is, is we don't have any oversight, we don't have any Inspector General. What are they supposed to do? Snitch on themselves? This is a problem, and I'm really glad that you all pulled the item. Now, I want to hop into, I mean, even the city's being sued for their illegal surveillance, you know? So, I'm glad that we're having this presentation on the two very different programs. I appreciate it, the distinction made. One uses risk assessments and one uses a holistic and public health approach. It should be said that data has proved that risk assessment tools are racist. Basing the results on existing criminal justice data, it in turn reflects the years of historic biased policing and racial disparities. I've spoken with folks inside, whose criminal record from years ago have kept them for qualifying for probation's pre-trial program. I would also like to point out, the 84% of the previous probation-led pre-trial money went to staff, not services. And this community is owed hundreds of thousands of dollars from probation and that funding. Almost three years later, and there has been still no money and let alone no real data. I haven't even begun to speak about the arbitrary, not even unlawful violations, that will land people back in jail being on probation's pre-trial program. A not-charged ankle monitor battery, missing an appointment, all things that have nothing to do with public safety. Which brings me to the, I believe the word was uphold constitutional presumption of innocence. The only one that does actually provide that is the Public Defender's Pretrial Program, because they're working with public defenders, not law enforcement. Their right to remain silent goes out the window the moment they have to check in with probation. I think with the rest of my time, I would like to bring light, or bring to light some things that I recognized. Department power dynamics probably kept from today's presentation. I'll start with saying that the pre-trial program is important to the work this county is doing around reducing the jail population. With 82% of our jail pre-trial and people waiting in there for five or six years without a trial, I'm very alarmed that it wasn't pointed out that the Public Defender's Pretrial Program only has a recidivism rate of about 2%. That the PD's, and it was asked, when I wrote it, you know, but it was asked, and we didn't dig further into it, that the PD's program only costs six cents for every dollar of probation's. That the PD's office has housed people, you know, we've talked about them connecting to services. I mean, it addresses racism within our jail system that 70%, oh, okay, when 70% of our jails, people of color, and providing early intervention, all things that should be something we have without having to commit a crime to access. Finally, I'll just quickly end with my recommendations. Fully fund the Public Defender's Pretrial Problem, or Program, more so than probation. Invest millions into housing, community-based mental health services, reentry programs, jail support, and youth services. I'm glad we talked about 50% of the jail population being in and out in three days, 50% of the people in there being booked on misdemeanors or unhoused, how 62% of the jail is suffering from mental health crisis. And if you all leveraged AB 109, AB 11869, and ARPA money to invest in these things, instead of following the historical trends of giving it to law enforcement, efforts like these will reduce crime, reduce harm, reduce interactions with carceral systems, and build vibrant and healthy communities. Last thing is, I wish that we had asked more questions of the, of the probation's pre-trial defendant, because I watched Amanda be up here for days answering questions, and y'all didn't even ask them how many people are getting like Level 5, 6, how long, what color, why, and all of these things. Because like I said, I did mention that that tool is pretty racist. And I want to, one more time, y'all need more funding, because like, it isn't just access, because they're not law enforcement partners, it's that they literally don't have money for the technology needed to exchange all these things between departments. And like, it's really crazy that like, y'all are saving lives on pennies, making change out here, while probation's department gets millions and millions of dollars. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the next caller.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Okay.
And then, if you could transfer the caller? Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Liz Blum with the Carcerate Sacramento. I also want to mention, I'm calling in today as a survivor of violence. And the Public Defender's Pretrial Program is rooted in racial equity and evidence-based approaches to public safety. The Public Defender's Office gets access to the same booking data that probation does and does evidence-based needs assessments that have been recognized as a national model for pre-trial reform. The Public Defender's Program has a 2% recidivism rate. Probation's data includes the Public Defender's Pretrial Program, even though they operate separately. And while I recognize there's no county-wide definition for recidivism, and while the two departments may collect data differently, the Public Defender's recidivism data remains valid and reflective of their impact. The Public Defender's Program also helps their clients get to court, which wasn't stressed as much, get to their court dates, and they accomplish the same goal with different methods, methods that treat individuals with care and compassion rather than surveillance and monitoring with constant threat of reincarceration. And Marlin, hi. I wanted to ask you, it would be great to, it would be appreciated if you could share how many people are in jail right now due to a probation violation? And keeping in mind that probation violation doesn't mean that someone broke the law or hurt anyone, and it could be something as simple as missing a check-in with their probation officer. Also, looking closer at the data presented on probation, I just wanted to, isn't 3% of 30,000 more than 300 people? I'm pretty sure that would be maybe nine thousand, a few thousand? I just wanted to like fact-check that. And how many people on probation's pre-trial program could have been released by the court on their own recognizance, but signed on to being on probation's pre-trial program to get out of jail quicker? And another question, perhaps the biggest one, how many people don't have a chance to speak to their lawyer or their public defender before signing on to enter probation's pre-trial program? It's really, really concerning. Also, how many, how many rides and phones has the probation department provided? I would assume nothing close to the Public Defender's Program, despite them getting way less funding. And probation's PSA risk assessment, while intended to provide an objective, data-driven alternative to, you know, is really deeply flawed and reflects ingrained biases that are virtually impossible to correct, according to a statement from the Center for Court Innovation. A number of studies have shown that these tools perpetuate systemic racism, and while there's not enough time in these short three minutes to go into detail on this, I encourage you all to do your own research on it. So, the bottom line is that the public defender is humanizing people with needs assessments versus probation dehumanizing people with risk assessments. The Public Defender's Program needs to be funded more than probation's. Their impact could grow exponentially, and I wish my loved one had access to their program when they were incarcerated.
Thank you, Liz. Any others callers?
Yes, please send the next caller. You have three minutes.
Sure, thanks. Good morning, Board. This is Nikki with the Carcerate Sacramento. You know, appreciate the presentations. Do wonder about the sort of power dynamic that was laid out in the questioning, where, you know, the public defender got so many questions about, you know, well, what are you doing? Are you doing this? Are you doing that? Whereas, little scrutiny was given to the law enforcement probation, Marlin's presentation. And so, I do just wonder about our like kind of ingrained bias, our default towards preference to law enforcement, recognizing that the power dynamic, like purpose and relationship that each department has with their clients is vastly different. Recognizing that that power dynamic is seeping onto this dais, and how we understand, fund, interact with each of these programs. So, I think we've already discussed the, why we believe the nature of a, you know, health-driven, racial equity-driven, you know, attempt to specifically get people not just out of jail, but out of the court system entirely and into the services they need is preferable to a carceral surveillance-based approach. And I just want to reiterate the way that the relationship of a client with each of these parties is so vastly different, and their responsibilities as departments is so vastly different. And so, really thinking about, like, I mentioned, I appreciate Commissioner Brody bringing up the Humphrey case, because it does call for the least restrictive pre-trial arrangements for people. And right now, we have just hundreds and hundreds of people waiting many, many months to years for their, for their court case to come up. So, I think, you know, that's a real crisis that we need to look at, that the Judicial Council needs to look at. Why are people waiting for years and years? These pre-trial programs, appreciate them, they're fine and great. They are not, well, I appreciate the public defenders and have expressed how, you know, what we believe about their risk assessment since the beginning, since the incarnation of the program, that it's flawed and racist. But they, you know, but it's not touching the population problem, the pre-trial population problem. And we need vast reform, and we need very seriously, to take people's liberty very seriously and get people through the court. And I need to, we need to see urgency in that. Families need to see urgency in that. And when, when we're just fine with this diversion here and collaborative court here, and we're not really focused on a very specific intent to get the least restrictive arrangements for people who are awaiting trial, who are not convicted of any crime, we're failing as a system. So, I just encourage you all to think more broadly, to fund the public defender, recognizing the great work. We can talk about recognizing the great work all day, but until you fund it to the scale that it really needs to be at, recognizing how you're just funding law enforcement officers on the other side, it's not even really services. I'd like to, you know, I appreciate Liz's questions. What are they? What are you actually doing, you know? A lot of surveillance. So, I'll end there, and...
Thank you, Nikki.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And please transfer the next caller. I think the calls are starting to trickle in. You have a couple more callers.
Okay.
So, sorry, how was that?
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes. Hi, County Board of Supervisors. As much as I'm glad about that we're talking about these two similar programs from the probation and Public Defender's Office, I really have to comment on the power dynamics that are on display right now, where several, like, where the Board's attention is, for whatever reason, directed at one of the smallest departments in the county's infrastructure and under its new PSJA agency, like peppering this, like this fairly new director with the questions on the pre-trial program that like, you know, when it would be better directed at staff who have been running this, while leaving the chief of one of the most well-funded agencies in the county's infrastructure largely unscathed with any of your questions. Like, why are we not, like, why is Marlin Chief Yarber not being questioned, like, in the same manner as what you were questioning Amanda on this? It doesn't make any, like, it's kind of, it's like, it's kind of revealing, and just like where your priorities lie. And it also speaks volumes when you're not even raising, where it appears that probation is using public defender's data to basically like pad its own poor, pulgy results. I mean, these are two similar pre-trial programs, very similar. In fact, they're like, I would dare say they look duplicative. And yet, we're like, you know, it's almost as if they're passing it off as their own, where, you know, the Public Defender's Program has a 2% recidivism rate versus the probation program, which has a 13% recidivism rate. It was already pointed out that we're, the county is spending a doll, like, a dollar on probation's pre-trial program for every six cents on the probation side, or on the public defender's side. So, like, all of this makes the question, why are we, why are we spending millions of dollars on two duplicative programs between probation and public defenders, when we could just invest all of those funds into the one program, Public Defender's Program, that actually is producing better outcomes and better results? I, it almost is like, you know, when you look at the county charter, which I bet most of you haven't really read deeply into, it makes no mention of democracy or even a republic, guaranteeing a republican form of government. But what it absolutely does, hundreds of times throughout the document, mentions the efficient administration of business throughout the county structure. And what I can't reconcile with is why is the county obsessed with spending most of its dollars on law enforcement institutions like probation, when it could be spending it on more efficient programs that are being run outside of it, that actually put people into programs and services? When Marlin was up there talking about like probation connecting it to services, you didn't even bother to ask him, what exact services is probation? Not public defenders, but probation specifically provides? Because as it seems right now, is like, given that 82% of our, of our current jail population is on pre-trial, that they're not actually doing that bit of a job. They're not redirecting those funds, like, they're not putting people into actual services and really just kind of setting people up to fail. So, I would ask you all to actually ask some deeper questions of the probation's chief, and not just your underfunded Public Defender's Office that is already working with far less staff than what probation's is, which, by the way, of the grant funding that it's been getting, has like, of this pilot program, 82, like, over 80% of it went to just hiring more staff.
Keon, I need to ask you to conclude, if you could, please.
Yeah. I'll conclude by just pointing it out. Ask deeper questions of the larger funded department and not just pepper and grill your underfunded department. Thanks.
Good. Good, thank you, Keon.
Okay. Let me see if we have any more. Yes, can you transfer the caller, please? Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. This is Lillian Glanvin from On Track Program Resources. I just want to thank, I want to thank Chief Yarber and Amanda Benson for their presentation. I want to thank and give mad appreciation to Decarcerate Sacramento. Thank you for your tireless advocacy for human beings who are being, undergoing this experience of incarceration, pre, pre, post, and during. And just, I learned a lot about the two programs and look forward to learning more. As some of you may remember, On Track hosted an event in the fall called the Sacramento Black Community Mental Health and Criminal Justice Real Talk in November. And Chief Yarber and Tiffany Senate, Tiffany Senate, I don't see you, but I understand you're in the chamber, and who were wonderful panelists, just extraordinary participants on the second day of the event. And again, with its focus on black disproportionality in the system. And when it comes to takeaways from that event, and there were several, one of the requests, one of the areas of interest was alluded to in the presentation, and that is partnership with community-based organizations. And it's good to see that there are some efforts in that direction and look forward to hearing more about that and seeing what opportunities there are to collaborate on those lines. One of the things I would be also interested in, if there are more of these kinds of presentations, is the voices of those who are participating and their experience of what is most effective. I should also mention, although we haven't quite publicly announced it yet, On Track has received a grant to follow up that event and with the collaboration. And thank you, Chief Yarber and Tiffany Senate for agreeing to be a part of that. And Supervisor Kennedy, I guess we have some encouraging signs from your office as well. And that, you know, to really dig into this deeply and to include the voice of individuals, in this case, it's to include the voice of black community members who are having this experience, but I would, in the broader scope of this presentation, to make sure that all those who are, who have experienced incarceration and especially those who have been a part of either of these programs, that they be included as well to inform what works well and what should receive additional support and funding and for other members of the community. I would love for there to be more members of the community at this presentation here and hope there'll be other opportunities to, and if it wasn't for Decarcerate Sacramento, I wouldn't know about it. So again, again, woo, Decarcerate Sacramento, love you and what you do. And with that, I'll end. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller.
Hey, next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, yes, my name is Sarah and I am a resident of SAC County. And I have serious concerns about this item, item 43. With 82% of the jail population being legally innocent, it's really important for us to have a pretrial program that addresses the root causes of incarceration. And I think that combined with, you know, the fact that the jail, the sheriffs were sued for, you know, rights violations and maze and all of that, like, I just think it's so important that we consider and use a program that is humane and, you know, provide safe and cost-effective solutions to pretrial justice reform. It's really sad to me to imagine that people who are legally innocent and like, close to 90%, that we're talking 82%, are sitting in there in the jail. And I actually personally know people who have, you know, husbands, their fathers of, you know, families that have been in there for multiple years, and it just seems morally wrong. And I think that the public defender's pretrial program, which operates completely independently from probation, which, you know, some people don't realize that, but it does, that it has an ongoing 2% recidivism rate. And, you know, I think that that sounds pretty great. And so I think that we really need to support the public defender's pretrial support program in order to be humane and to connect those folks with supportive services and not just punish them when they're not able to meet terms of their pretrial release. These are innocent people, legally presumed innocent. And what's happening and what, you know, is being pushed in terms of probation, that's like kind of a presumption of non-innocence, which completely goes against the Constitution. And it doesn't actually take a public health approach to public safety. So I really, really, I'd like you to, you know, think about the families. Like I said, there are, I know a father who's been in there for three years and his children are, you know, needing him and he is just stuck in there as though he is guilty and he's not even had a trial yet. That just seems really wrong. So let's be more humane, let's do, let's go with the, you know, the public defender's pretrial support program rather than the probation department, which is like a, you know, a totally different thing. Thank you so much for listening and I appreciate it. Please, please keep these families in mind. These are people, the 82% are actually like people with lives and families that need them.
Thank you, caller.
And, you know, these are statistics. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you, caller. Appreciate your comments.
Sure, bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed psychologist in independent practice. I am president of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association. I'm an appointed member of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board and I'm a resident of District Two. And I am calling in regards to the pretrial programs report, specifically as a community mental health advocate. I implore you to focus on population reduction in the Sacramento County jails by investing in a public health approach to pretrial services and specifically, the holistic defense programs out of the public defender's office should be fully funded. 82% of the Sacramento County jails' populations pretrial, which means they haven't been convicted of anything, that's four out of five individuals. 62% of those individuals are diagnosed with a mental illness. 52% of the jail population are experiencing homelessness. We have more jail beds than we have public housing beds. By funding probation more significantly is only going to lead to the same issues that have gotten us into this situation that we're currently in. By taking a public health approach, not only is it more humane, but it's actually going to address the structural and systemic issues that keep people in the carceral system. Now, the SAC County Public Defender's Office, their holistic defense approaches are currently funded by grants outside of the county's general fund with uncertainty on the sustainability of their funding. That's despite them receiving a merit award from the state of California in 2020 as one of the most innovative projects in the state and having an ongoing recidivism rate of only 2%. To me and to a lot of other medical and mental health professionals, it's the most humane, safe, and cost-effective solution to pretrial justice reform. Probation's pretrial programs rooted in law enforcement. Again, as a mental health professional, my training and experience have taught me that relapse is part of recovery. If someone experiences a simple mistake like a failed battery in an ankle monitor and structural barriers like missing an appointment due to childcare or health issues, while participating in the holistic defense program, they're provided with support and services. If they experience those things under the surveillance of probation, they go back to jail. Thus, probation's a driver of mass reincarceration. The Public Defender's Pretrial Support Project supports this county's goals of reducing the jail population, promoting public safety, and addressing racial inequity within the criminal justice system. The population in SAC County jails are 38% black and 70% people of color. So by providing early intervention, the Public Defender's Pretrial Support Program seeks to identify and implement solutions to eliminate institutional, structural, and systemic racial inequity in all community services provided by the county. Now, I hope that sounds familiar because that's part of this board's resolution, November 16th, 2020, declaring racism a public health crisis. Additionally, fully funding this program is aligned with recommendations coming before your tomorrow's meeting from the Public Health Advisory Board. With 82% of the SAC County jail population legally innocent, effective pretrial reform that addresses root causes of incarceration must be a huge priority. And if you're serious about reducing the jail population, as is mandated by the May's consent decree, it needs to fully fund the public defender's pretrial program. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Appreciate your call. Okay.
Hey, next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Dean Dolben. I live in South Sacramento. I'm calling in regards to item 43. I am very sensitive to the need to reduce our jail population, promote public safety, and address all racial inequity issues within our criminal justice system. I appreciate the sensitivity of all the issues that intertwine in accomplishing that goal. And the better job that we do to have a reduction in our jail population, I think, would be better for everyone here in the community. However, part of the reason we have people in jail or potentially in jail is because of actions or the accused actions of some individuals, which must be addressed. I appreciate both people who sit on either, or all people who sit on either side of that negotiating table to get the best possible results, to help everyone, the people who are accused, as well as the people who are seeking to find a certain type of justice in there. I appreciate the sensitivity of everything. I want to make sure everyone is protected and no one has their rights lost. But I think sometimes we need to think of a pre-pretrial support system to make sure some people don't get into that maze of the judicial system and the law enforcement system. So please consider pre-pretrial support systems that are available to all in the county, if that means having certain people go to schools and high schools and community colleges and SAC State to say, these are consequences and some of the people you may see if you are accused of any type of activity that needs the attention of the law enforcement or judicial services of Sacramento County. So thank you very much for listening to me. I hope you come to a fair, just, good conclusion in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Okay, I think that was your last caller. I'm just going to double-check the queue in case someone is working their way down. Yep, that is your last caller.
Okay. Thank you to all our callers and to all our commenters as well. And we'll go back to, come back to the board here and Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I know that this is a non-action item today. It's to simply receive their presentation. But if we could have both of our presenters come back to the podium, I have some questions. So I think we all kind of heard the theme and the sentiments expressed by a number of speakers. And it seems to me that there is a concern out there by some that somehow the pretrial programs that are administered in your respective, three respective agencies are somehow in competition with each other and were not designed to complement one another. And I'd like to hear your thoughts about, you know, what that perception means to you each and whether or not you agree with it. I, you know, having heard today what each of you have shared and certainly understanding even before today's presentation, what each department is trying to do, which I think we can all agree, whether you're decarcerate or the board of supervisors or law enforcement, I think we all want to see jail populations come down. To me, that's kind of the fundamental objective here. So, you know, I guess what I'm asking is, can you help kind of dispel any kind of myths or misconceptions out there about how you work in conjunction with one another?
Sure, I'll start, Supervisor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to that issue. You know, I can't say for certain that the programs were conceived sort of in this complimentary fashion or, you know, that they would, at least at the outset, you know, work together. However, you know, we are approaching, as I said earlier in my comments, we're approaching the same issue perhaps from different angles. The probation department's role is really one of a mechanism with the court. We're tasked with, you know, speaking to the court on behalf of the client, identifying risk level, identifying monitoring level, and then, you know, with the limited resources we have, also connecting people to supports. And, you know, again, but for that, that connectivity with the court, you know, my message is really that those 3,800 people would have likely otherwise remained in custody, would have remained in jail. And so, you know, when I look at the return rate or the violation rates or the FTA rates, you know, I stay focused really on, you know, did we connect people to that opportunity? And from there, you know, if we can connect them to the services, then great.
I appreciate the response, Chief. It puzzles me, though, that we have, you know, an organization like Decarcerate, many of whom were individual speakers today, who I think, again, I think share that fundamental goal of reducing jail population. So I'm hearing pretty clearly from you that if our probation department did not assume the responsibilities that you do, regardless of whether the intent was from the outset designed to work in conjunction with the PD's office, that that objective that I mentioned earlier, reducing jail population, probably would not be achieved as well to date as it has because of probation's involvement. Is that the case?
I think that's absolutely correct. As mentioned, you know, we're authorized to implement a pretrial program. The court is really leaning on us and asking us to provide all of the court partners with that information around the release decision. So I believe exactly what you stated.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's true that the court views probation services as very integral and oftentimes the court will not want to release somebody unless probation provides their service. As a public defender, as advocates for our clients, we don't always agree that our client should be on supervised monitoring pretrial. And we always advocate for the least restrictive form of release, an OR with services. And so while we advocate for less restrictive pretrial than what maybe the court wants, oftentimes the court, it's true, they won't release somebody without having probation involved. And so it does, from our perspective, we want the court to have tools available to be able to release our clients. And so I don't, I don't see us in competition... I don't I don't see us in competition. I do see us as providing a different service. And we may disagree on whether probation's monitoring is appropriate. But certainly, as long as the court continues to want probation to provide this service, we we need it to get our clients out. And we would like, long term, our judicial officers to be, you know, better informed about risk levels and things like that so that that we can get more people out without as high a level of supervision.
So starting, thank you for that. So starting from the premise that you would not, it appears to me, you would not be able to deliver the kinds of services that you do, pretrial services that you do, unless folks are actually out of jail to do it, especially working with CBOs. A simple question, would your would your set of responsibilities, your part of trying to keep the jail population down, would it be as successful if probation was not involved doing what they're doing?
We don't always serve the same people. Oftentimes, we do. If our clients go into mental diversion, typically probation steps out and no longer monitors. But a good percentage of our clients are released because of probation's pretrial program. And that's when we are able to engage with them on other services. We also engage with our clients while they're still in custody.
No, I understand that. But that, I think, answers my question, which it appears to me that in certain instances, maybe not all, that the ability to, you know, provide that high level of service delivery based on your programming really relies pretty heavily on someone being released in the first place, which means they have to necessarily, you know, make the courts comfortable. And if the courts get comfortable by way of having probation directly involved, seems like that's how the whole system kind of maximizes its efficacy. Am I missing something?
No, I think that's true. I wouldn't say all of our clients on pretrial are supervised.
And I premise it that way.
But, I mean, there are, that is true.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. Any other questions in?
Oh, I did also just want to provide one more piece of information that my team provided me with, and that is just an email for the public to contact. I know that Supervisor Frost had asked about how to contact if somebody needs to reach our team. And that's publicdefender-pretrial@saccounty.net.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you to our presenters. Thank you to our callers and commenters. And I think we got a good opportunity today to get some additional insight into the efforts that are being made to address not only the population within the jail but services and and supports for folks who either are waiting trial and or have some way touched the criminal justice system. So with that, I trust we'll have further conversation as budget moves forwards, and some of the comments were directed to that. But again, I want to thank all the folks in the county household, both departments, but others. We've social workers and eligibility workers, others who work to provide those services in a way that's meaningful and hopefully supportive of people's needs, whether they're in or out of the criminal justice system. So and with that, then this is receiving file today. And we will, again, I trust hear more back during the budget context in a few weeks. So thanks. All right. With that, then we're going to, we have one more item before we break for lunch. And that's item 44. And again, thanks to those that were with us this morning on this and other items. So.
Okay, item 44 is your report on COVID-19 response.
Okay, very good. I see Siobhan and Dr. Kassiri both coming to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Now, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Board. Siobhan Katari, Health Services Director. And I'm here with Dr. Kassiri, our Public Health Officer. I'm going to just give a few opening comments and then turn it over to Dr. Kassiri for more detailed information. As you've been reading the news, you probably know that our case rates are, in fact, climbing a little bit due to some subvariance of the Omicron virus, which have been noticed both in Europe and then the East Coast, and now they're traveling over to the West Coast of the United States. And so we are still encouraging the public to continue to mask when you're in settings where there may be high risk, encouraging folks to continue to get vaccinations. We know that vaccinations are still an effective tool towards mitigating severe illness and death. And we're encouraging folks to continue to think about getting boosted as well. So for individuals who are either over 50 or have some immunocompromised systems, we're continuing to encourage boosting. And so with that, I want to pass it to Dr. Kassiri.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Dr. Olivia Kassiri, Public Health Officer. We do not have a PowerPoint presentation this time, but we did provide you with a summary of updates. And so I'm just going to review a few highlights and then see if you have questions. So Director Katari did mention about the uptick. And the lowest that we got to was mid-April, where we got to a case rate of 2.7 per 100,000. And then it started slowly climbing up to, the last report that we have is 10.3 per 100,000. Fortunately, most of the illnesses are mild to moderate, not requiring hospitalizations. We have seen a little bit of an uptick in our hospitalizations, but the hospitals are still in a good position to be able to handle the cases that are coming in. And we have not seen an increase in deaths thus far. With vaccinations, 71.2% of our total population has received at least one dose and 66.1 are fully vaccinated. Supervisor Serna, I know you requested information on the booster doses. We will have that in the next report. I didn't, I wasn't able to get it into this one, but we will have it for the next report. We continue to work with the community-based agencies and other community stakeholders with being able to hold vaccination clinics and also supporting community testing sites. And the report that we have for you does give a summary of support that is being given by SAC collab to individuals in the community that do need that extra support, either with food or other types of assistance. At the end of the report, we give a brief summary on some of the state updates in alignment with the CDC announcement that ended masking in public transportation. CDPH also ended that requirement for public transportation. So right now, it is a strong recommendation. Of note, masking is still required in certain settings such as shelters and jail settings and also in healthcare settings. We also provide some information on therapeutics that have been authorized by the FDA. And the last page gives a summary of the main ones that are being used in the healthcare community right now. And then we also have given you a list of the clinics that are being held. And so we continue to thank you for your support in being able to get the message out about the clinics. We're still seeing a steady flow, even though the clinics are small, but we're still seeing a steady flow of individuals coming for the vaccinations. And with that, I see.
I would also like to add one more thing I forgot, which was, we currently have no cases in the jail or youth detention facility or our CCC of COVID. So very hopeful that we will be able to not see an increase there as well.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, we'll take any questions.
Great. Thanks, Siobhan. Thanks, Dr. Kassiri. Do we have any questions of either the verbal and or written information? I don't see any supervisor in the queue, so we'll go ahead and see if we have any callers. I don't have anybody in chambers.
We do not have any calls.
All right. Again, then, if there's no questions, I welcome us. Thank you, Siobhan. And thank you, Dr. Kassiri. And that then takes us down to the lunch hour, into the middle of it here. We will come back at 2 o'clock for the afternoon session. And if there's nothing further, then we'll stand on recess till.
Don, if we're not hearing the 2 o'clock item, are we going to sit here for a half hour and wait for 2:30 to come around?
Oh, we're not hearing, the Youth Commission got put over? I didn't know that.
Didn't, I understood it didn't get put over?
No.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
All right. No problem. Good check-in, though. So, okay, so we are here at 2 o'clock, starting with the Youth Commission then, and recess.
Did I forget you all a half hour?
You almost. Good afternoon. Want to call back in order the May 10, 2022, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And again, welcome all the folks who've joined us for this afternoon, part of the session today. And before we get started, we need to call a roll to establish a quorum. So I'm going to turn to Florence Evans to call a roll. Flo.
Okay, good afternoon. Supervisors Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Great. Well, we concluded all the morning items. We didn't hold anything over, so we're going to go right to our 2 o'clock item. With three minutes after 2, we're doing pretty good today. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Flo, you got to call the first item.
Yes. So item 45, this is the annual presentation from the Sacramento County Youth Commission.
Okay. Well, we have some very distinguished members in the audience, some of our potentially future supervisors, maybe, but we know they're our Youth Commissioners today. So we're glad to have them. And I'll let them do some self-introductions. And I know you have a PowerPoint as well. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am Eleanor Love. I'm the Chair of the Sacramento County Youth Commission. It's really great to be in front of you in person today for our annual presentation.
Great.
So first, just a little bit about our Youth Commission. We are a 15-member advisory board of local youth from all across Sacramento County. Three commissioners are appointed from each district to serve three-year terms with a maximum of two terms. We strive to represent and advocate for the youth of our county and bring the issues of the youth to the attention of our elected officials. We keep you apprised on our activities and the concerns of youth. And of course, we present to you every year. In the past year, we've gained a lot of new commissioners. We welcomed five new commissioners in the past year. District 1, we gained Brayden. District 4, Bianca and Myth. District 5, Ravi and Sanju. And this is just a little picture of us at work at one of our Zoom meetings. We've continued to meet over the past year on Zoom. And hopefully, Gillian mentioned, we might get to start meeting in person again. So that's very exciting. We have four core subcommittees where we work on our four main projects. These are the same subcommittees as we presented to you last year. They are Voter Outreach, which I chair, Environmental Care, which is co-chaired by Emma Deng and Katie Ha, Mental Health, which Argent Clair chairs, and Distracted Driving, which is co-chaired by Kate Saunders and Haley Macon.
Hi, my name is Bianca Brown, and I'm a Commissioner from District 4. And I'm a member of the Voter Outreach Subcommittee, which was formed because young people are historically underrepresented in elections, and there's a strong sense of civic and voter apathy among youth. And our Subcommittee works to encourage civic participation among young people, and our outreach targets are mainly high schoolers like us. We aim to dispel this sense of apathy within our high schools and within young groups of people. One of our main avenues is voter preregistration. And preregistration is a process which allows 16- and 17-year-olds to register to vote early, allowing them to be completely prepared to vote when they actually do turn 18. Preregistration is allowed in California and 13 other states. And in California, all preregistered voters are automatically mailed a ballot when they become an adult. Of course, we also work to encourage voter registration among all groups. The importance of registration has become increasingly real to me and other commissioners, since many of our friends and fellow high schoolers are now eligible to vote in the primary midterm elections, which are already underway. Outreach includes our partnership with school districts, including SAC City Unified School District, Elk Grove Unified School District, and the San Juan Unified School District. We've been collaborating with these districts for years now and hope to continue in the future. We also work with school site administrators and conduct outreach online through Twitter, Instagram, and other social media platforms. And we also partner with the County Register of Voters, Courtney Bailey, who has been a wonderful resource to us. In the past year, we have contacted the California Voter Foundation regarding potential partnership and brainstorming. And every fall and spring, when High School Voter Education Weeks occur, we conduct our biannual campaign to those three local school districts. As part of the campaign, we compile resources and materials for the districts to use, including PSAs, flyers, templates of resolutions, samples of letters or robocalls for families to be sent home, and more. And we encourage these districts to pass resolutions recognizing High School Voter Education Weeks, which are designated by the California Education Code, to fall during the last two complete weeks of April and September. And this April, Elk Grove Unified actually invited us to help present the resolution. So we actually got to go there in person. That photo on the right is a photo of us there with a couple of the Elk Grove Unified officials. And that was a really great experience. We hadn't been able to do that in person in a while. And for Sacramento City Unified School District, I wrote an e-connection, which is basically their electronic newsletter that gets sent out to about 30,000 families and students. And this was published during April during High School Voter Education Weeks. It talked about preregistration, registration, and being a poll worker for a lot of those students who are turning 16, 17, and 18.
Eleanor, did you get some folks to sign up to be poll workers for the upcoming election? Or do you know?
I did, actually. And I'll get to that part in a second, too. But yeah, I think some people did sign up, which is awesome.
Great.
The informational toolkit that we put together was sent out by SAC City to high school principals to share with their families and students. And then I'm required to do a senior project for my graduation requirements, basically, for CK McClatchy. And for my senior project, I decided to host and teach a civic education class. And I actually built the curriculum for the class. And I worked with the County Register of Voters, Courtney Bailey, to help me create that curriculum. And also, she attended as a guest speaker. And so that was the part, in my class, I had opportunities to be a Youth Commissioner and a poll worker for students to sign up. And some students who came got that information and signed up or applied.
Hello, my name is India Eason. I am Subcommittee 4 on Environmental Wellness.
Great, great, India.
Our Subcommittee aims to educate youth about our current environmental news and share various ways that we can help the environment. In the past year, we have worked to educate students in the Sacramento region about environmental news by our Instagram called Sacramento Youth Commission. For example, we shared posts about the California wildfires in the summer and fall and explained simple ways to reduce one's carbon footprint and posted about Earth Day as well. We've partnered with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and promoted their local environmental events, such as their Earth Day One, tree planting volunteer event at the Madison Park, and worked to promote our local events like river cleaning up and park beautifications. And then, in our next slide, our ongoing goals are to educate the youth about environmental news, teaching them about how they can help our planet and further better the environment, partnering with local Sacramento organizations to provide youth with hands-on experience in the environment. We also want to show students that they can use their voices to make a difference and teach others in their lives about environmental issues and how we can change them. teach others in their lives about environmental issues and how we can change them. Our future plans and ideas, we aim to create a quarterly newsletter to send out to various school districts to teach students about sub-ability and recent environmental news. We want to continue to educate youth using our Instagram and social media platforms. We also want to attend and curate our own Sacramento volunteer environments, such as by tree planting, leaf cleanup, and gardening dates. Another plan that we have is we also would like to work with elementary schools to help grow their gardens and teach younger generations the importance of taking care of our environment.
Wow, you're changing the world, one tree at a time.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, any questions? Any other questions? Okay.
No.
Thank you so much for listening.
You bet. Thank you. Didn't introduce the other person who didn't speak, though. Who was up there with you? Come up and tell us who you are before the next presenter, please.
Hello, my name is Kate Saunders. I represent District Three.
All right.
I am a member of the Environmental Subcommittee, so I was just up here in case you had any questions.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, Kate. Okay, next.
Hey, everyone. I'm Ravi Tamanna. I'm a member of District Five, and I'm also a member of the Mental Health Subcommittee. So up here, we just have a quick checklist for mental health that we thought was important and that you guys might like to see. So just leave it up there for a couple of seconds, if you want to take a look.
Maybe you can walk us through that, you know, for those that can't see. Tell us what we have there, Ravi.
Right, yeah, so this is just a quick checklist to make sure that your mental health is good. So we just have some small questions here, like, have I eaten regular meals? Have I connected with someone I love? Have I showered? Have I exercised or stretched my body today? Am I getting enough sleep? Have I been thinking kind thoughts to myself? Have I spent time outside in fresh air? And have I been comparing my life with others? And so these go over several areas that are very important in order to have good mental health. So hopefully, all of you are doing all that.
Well, hopefully, you all took a shower today, anyway, huh?
Yeah. Okay. So the purpose of the Mental Health Subcommittee is to raise awareness for and enact change in the mental health community in Sacramento. Currently, it's May, so it is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we're currently hosting a social media campaign on Instagram that includes infographic posts and informational videos, spreading awareness about the importance of mental health, providing tips for students when it comes to anxiety and pressure, and explaining how young people can support one another. And then, moving on to some of our future goals and plans, we hope to leverage our Youth Commission's connections with local school districts to conduct further outreach to students. We want to work with the Sacramento County Office of Education and Sacramento County Department of Health Services on their goal of making schools centers of wellness. We want to campaign in schools to raise awareness among teachers on recognizing mental health issues in students. And finally, if possible, we'd like to work with organizations to combat mental health issues in the rapidly growing homeless population in Sacramento.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ravi.
Hello.
Hello, it's Kate again.
Once again, I am Kate Saunders. I am the co-chair to the Distacted Driving Subcommittee. How do I? Teenagers are the largest demographic affected by distracted driving. In 2019, 39% of teen drivers admitted to using their phones while driving. Texting while driving increases the likelihood of a car accident occurring by 23 times. Our purpose is to educate the youth about the dangers of distracted driving. We, the need to inform them of the dangers of distracted driving is more urgent than ever. And this is the billboard that we created this past year, which was kindly supplied to us and by the county's Public Information Office. Thank you to the, I believe, to the supervisors for guiding us with that. Along with our billboard, which is located on Highway 99, we have worked with schools in San Juan Unified School District to send out newsletters about distracted driving to the youth. Our future goals are to expand the newsletter to other local schools and set up educational booths in schools, libraries, and local events, along with hopefully expanding our billboards to other highways. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Now, this is the good news for you, but the bad news for us, right?
Right. So just before I move on to this part, I'd like to say, I joined this Youth Commission in February 2017, when I was in seventh grade, and that was over five years ago. Through this commission, I've discovered some of my greatest passions, which are voting and civic engagement, and I've been able to affect my community in a positive way through our Voter Outreach Subcommittee. And it's just been a really valuable experience. I've been able to meet so many amazing people and do really meaningful work, and I'd just like to say thank you. It's been an honor representing District One, Phil Serna. You're a great elected leader, and I'd just like to say thanks so much. This fall, I'll be attending the University of Southern California to study public policy. We have a couple other seniors who are not here tonight. Emma Dang is going to UC Irvine to study neurobiology. India is on my left. She will be going to Sacramento State to go into nursing. Kate is going to be going to Sierra College to go into education. Katie Ha, also not here, she will be going to Scripps College to study biology and literature. Arjun Claire will be attending Stanford University to study biology or economics. Myth will be attending Folsom Lake Community College to study psychology and business. Ravi will be attending UC Irvine to study computer engineering, and Sanju will be attending UC San Diego for international studies and international business. And obviously, we're losing a lot of seniors this year, so we are starting to do some outreach in terms of, you know, recruiting new commissioners on our Instagram and Twitter pages, and also just individually reaching out to people we think might be good to fill our shoes. So thank you so much. It's been really great to be a Commissioner.
Well, thank you, Eleanor, and thanks to all the Commissioners here today. Obviously, you're going to leave some big shoes to fill, and I want to certainly express, and probably hear from other board members, yes, we will, relative to, certainly to your efforts and certainly the presentations here today. And again, you're probably, you know, going from seventh grade right through senior year, not too many Commissioners, I think there are a few that have done that, but you're probably one of the, you know, one of the few. Others have come in at different stages in their educational spectrum. I want to also thank certainly Jillian and the Clerk's Office. I know that for many years, you've provided some support, working with the Executive's Office, too, and certainly Ann and others, to make sure the Youth Commission has, you know, the support that they need to, you know, pursue the various interests and endeavors you've outlined here. So again, it's a real tribute to all of you for your hard work. You worked this in, obviously, you're going off to colleges near and far, and to work in, you know, Commission efforts and through COVID, obviously, it's been a bit of a challenge. But as you said earlier, Eleanor, we're all very delighted to be able to, once again, come together and to, you know, do it in a setting that we're obviously much more used to, but also provides the opportunity to have feedback, you know, person to person. So with that, I'm going to turn to my colleagues. I got three of them in the queue and probably a fourth one to follow. So starting with Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Serna, and Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Eleanor. Thank all of you Commissioners for being here. This is, I mean, this is really inspiring, and it gives me hope, gives a lot of us hope for, you know, the future of Sacramento County when we see this level of commitment and civic engagement, and just young folks who care. I mean, I look back at when I was your age, and I never thought to be involved in something like this, and I wish I had. You all have such bright futures, I think, as a result of it, as a result of that kind of your approach to life. So thank you very much, and thank you all for your service. Kate, thank you for representing District Three. I did not have the privilege to appoint you, but thank you nonetheless for your service. And a question, Eleanor, so were the, you know, those five topics that you've been working on, voter outreach, the environmental protection, mental illness, distracted driving, and I'm sorry, what was the fifth one? What did I miss?
It was just those four.
That was it.
It was those four. I mean, those are, I mean, so, those are all so crucial. Did you, did the Commission come up with those on your own?
Yes, we did. So typically, every year, when we, when the seniors leave and the new officers come in, we kind of vote or come up with ideas, you know, which Subcommittee is to keep, which Subcommittee is, you know, which new projects do we want to start? In June, which is, gosh, it's just a month from now, that process will be happening again, but last year, we decided that those four projects were really all still important to us. Each Commissioner, you know, if they have a project in mind, they'll bring it up. In fact, Kate started the Distacted Driving Subcommittee because distracted driving impacted her personally. I started Voter Outreach in 2018 because that was something I really cared about. So all of those Subcommittee's are projects that the Commissioners are very passionate about.
Well, that's great, and you are spot on with every one of those, especially the mental illness. And Ravi, I appreciate your presentation about that, because that is obviously something that's having a huge impact on all of us in society and certainly among our young folks in Sacramento County. So thank you just once again. I'll make way for my colleagues here to also heap praise upon you as well, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ambassador. Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first and foremost, Eleanor, let me just say that I am very distressed to see that you're leaving us. You've been, as you mentioned, a dedicated Commissioner for a number of years, not just your high school years. So I think that amount of interest expressed over that amount of time speaks volumes about your commitment to this county and to the youth of this county. And I'm excited for your next, the next chapter in your life down at USC. And I'm very, very proud, from an individual board member perspective, that you were kind enough to serve for District One. And I just want to also say that you're incredibly articulate when you're here in person and you're kind of functioning as the MC, so to speak. You make, you make us adults look pretty shameful sometimes, and we can't even measure up to the kind of ability to effectively communicate the way you do, and not just this year, but in years past. So congratulations on all that you've achieved as a, as a Commission, and I can only hope that the next batch of young people that commit themselves to serve will do at least a fraction of what you have been able to achieve. And again, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all of you for your leadership over time and for engaging in the civic process. It's so important. And I was a little disappointed when I heard you were seniors, because I was going to ask if you speak, if you come out and speak to people, if we put a group together, but you're leaving and you're going away for college. And I want to wish all of you, you all did a wonderful job in your presentations, and I want to wish all of you the very best in your future endeavors.
Thank you so much.
One last comment? And I haven't been able to stress this in a few years, because I usually do when we have our scholarship ceremony here in chambers associated with our Department of Health Services and DHA. But I always remind those scholarship recipients, and they're young people like you, they're graduating seniors like you, please don't forget about where you grew up and where you went to school. And, you know, you mentioned so many of your peers going off to study medicine and policy and law and, you know, other fields, but it really would be something very special for you to at least give some consideration to coming back to the community that you came from to serve in whatever field you choose to pursue. And so please don't forget about us.
We won't. We promise.
Thanks.
All right, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, just quickly, so much has been said already, but, you know, this is always one of my favorite things of the year, is to see how much smarter the young people in this community are than we are. And the work that you do, I hope you will take it with you, and I really hope that you did, you know, learn something from this and gain from it. And India, thank you so much for serving. I appreciate it. You represented the district well. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I might suggest we could get a picture with our Youth Commissioners, our folks that are here today, and certainly invite Jillian to join us as well, and if the county Executive, get a picture. Oh, yeah, let's get my plan, bye. Put it out in the flight, get a picture.
One, two, and. Going to move out of the way so the parents can get good center shots.
Good job.
Thank you so much. I will, you know. I was studying politics, so, you know, I've been an intern at USC Center for Democracy, too, so I can do research and all the different things, so.
Love the work of your campaign.
This ours? We have a lot of copies.
Well, thank you once again for being here today and for all your work. And before we go to the next item, I just wanted to acknowledge, we also have another young person in our audience today. I have a young man who's been shadowing me today. He's from the Galt area, multi-generational family there, actually served with his grandfather on the, all High School Board of Trustees. Wait just a moment here. Anyway, his name is Jonathan DeNeer. John, you want to just stand up there? And Jonathan's currently attending college and pursuing some courses in economics and has some plans, obviously, beyond this, but I've known his father and mother for many years, and as I said, had the good fortune of serving with his grandfather many, many years ago on the Galt High School Board of Trustees. But thanks, Jonathan, for being with us, and he's been following all morning long. He's going to stay with us this afternoon, so I just want to acknowledge Jonathan.
Chair, if I could?
Yes.
Jonathan, be very careful for what you wish, because when I was 17 years old, I shadowed Mr. Natoli.
And look what trouble it got him into, huh? Very good. Thanks, Patrick. All right, well, with that then, again, thanks for all of our visitors and presenters, and we'll go to our next item. Flo.
Item 46 is to approve the 2022 Neighborhood Traffic Management Projects.
Okay, very good. I see Sonia. I see Sonia. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. My name is Sonia Hernandez from the Department of Transportation. Today, I'm here to request the board to consider approval of the 2022 Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. I have a presentation, if that can be queued up.
We'll get that queued up in just a second here, Sonia.
Okay.
There you go.
Go to the next floor. A little bit of background on our projects here. On September 28th, 2021, the board approved funding for approximately 24 projects to address speeding concerns on residential streets. The traffic plans were designed for all 24 projects, and public outreach was completed to seek neighborhood consensus. Based on the program guidelines, a minimum of 50% response rate is required. Including the 50% response rate, all projects that have a support rate of less than 65% are not qualified for further consideration. Projects with a support rate between 65% and 74% require a board hearing for traffic plan approval. And projects with a support rate of 75% or greater may be constructed without further board action unless a written request for a board hearing has been filed with the Department of Transportation. The current project status for the 2022 NTMP projects consists of a total of 24 projects, as I mentioned. 23 projects have had a greater than 75% support rate, and one project has 66% support rate. Today, we're here to have the board consider the approval of the one project that received, which was Illinois Avenue. The response rate was 58% with a support rate of 66%. The traffic plan for Illinois Avenue is a segment between Greenback Lane and Pershing Avenue, as you can see on the map. The outreach results, if you consider the front-on properties, there's 53 properties. The response rate for the front-on properties are 59% with a support rate of 71%. The overall neighborhood outreach results included 108 properties with a response rate of 58% and a support of 66%. Other characteristics of this segment of Illinois include there are two elementary schools within or near this segment. One school is actually within the segment of Illinois of this project. It's Andrew Carnegie Middle School. The other middle school is located at the Pershing Avenue and Illinois intersection. It was Orangeville Open K-8 Elementary School. There are also bike lanes along Illinois Avenue, along the residential properties and along the street with parking. And this segment is approximately about 1.6 miles in length. It is recommended that the board approve Illinois Avenue Traffic Management Plan and direct staff to proceed with the implementation. If approved, this plan, along with the 23 other projects, are anticipated to be constructed by the fall of 2022. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Great, Sonia, any questions, board members? Supervisor Frost? Oh, that's your question. Okay. I don't see any questions. I know we did receive some correspondence. Do we have folks in the audience that wish to address this, or anybody on the phone?
I do not have anyone on the phone, and I haven't received any speaker slips. Greg had texted me before he left that we didn't have any speaker slips.
Okay, somebody asked, I only see a few people in chambers, I recognize most of them, but if anybody's here to address item 46 relative to the Neighborhood Residential Speed Control Proposals, this is the opportunity to address the board. All right, I don't see any, then I'll bring it back to our board. We do have the matter before, so does anyone want to speak to? We have a staff recommendation, as noted. Okay, so we have a motion for approval, and we have a second. And if there's nothing further, getting one more check on anybody on the phones?
Yeah, no.
Nope, okay.
Then it's still open.
Okay, so this would include, this is the Illinois Avenue final traffic plan. All right, nothing further, please.
Okay, unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time before your next item, but we can take your nominations.
You did a good job.
So nominations is item 48, and I will try and take one minute per item.
Okay. No, we don't need to drag it out, we just only have a brief recess.
Continue. Two.
You want to spell that out?
Okay, so you're continuing to May 24th, the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to June 14th, the Building Board of Appeals, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Commission, the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, North Highlands and Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Public Health Advisory Board, Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, we have Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to June 7th.
Okay. Assessment Appeals Board.
Chief of Staff recommend continuing to June 14th, address for interviews.
Okay. Community Review Commission.
For District 5, I would nominate Odette Crawford.
Okay. And we'll close that. And then Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to May 24th.
Got it. First five, Sacramento Commission.
Chiefs of Staff are recommending to continue to June 7th, the interviews are pending.
Okay. And then we have the Lock Management Corporation, also known as Lock Management Association.
Okay, Chief of Staff recommend reappointment of Lisa Kirk. And just a shout out to the Clerk's Office for assisting with their meetings on a going basis as that evolves, so thank you for looking at your staff.
Sacramento, Yolo, Mosquito, and Vector Control District.
Chiefs of Staff recommend nominating Charles Duty, D-U-T-Y.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay.
So you do have a break there from 2:40 to 3:00.
Okay, all right. We'll then be, stay in recess until 3 o'clock, and we'll return to the chambers for item 47. Good afternoon, once again. Want to call the board supervisors back into session after brief recess, so we'll have the clerk call to roll the reestablished quorum, please.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This, item 47 is the Cannabis Tax Fiscal Analysis and Board Workshop.
Okay, and I believe Amanda's going to introduce this.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer. I'm here this afternoon to introduce David McPherson, who will be presenting the information on this item. David is a compliance director with HDL Companies, managing HDL's cannabis management program, and is one of the state's most recognized experts in cannabis regulatory policies, compliance implementation, and tax policies. Mark Lovelace from HDL is also joining us by phone and available to answer questions. Mark is a senior policy advisor and has also worked extensively with public agencies and statewide associations on cannabis issues. The county has engaged HDL to prepare a commercial cannabis fiscal analysis and to provide information to the board regarding a potential cannabis tax ballot measure, and David will be presenting the results of the fiscal analysis as well as considerations regarding cannabis tax policy. It's important to clarify that what is being presented today and the direction we are seeking from the board relates only to whether or not we would come back to the board with an ordinance that would put a cannabis business tax measure on the November ballot. Development of a commercial cannabis program that would allow cannabis businesses to operate in the unincorporated county would require separate board action, which we are, which we are proposing would not happen until after the results of any vote on a cannabis tax measure are known. I will note that it is common for cities and counties with cannabis programs to implement fees designed to recover the costs of those programs, leaving cannabis tax revenues available for general government purposes. In order to place a tax measure on the November ballot, an ordinance would need to be approved by 2/3 of board members, which effectively requires a 4/5 vote, and provided to the registrar of voters no later than August 1st. Should the board direct staff to return with an ordinance, we would be prepared to do so at either the June 14th or July 12th board meetings. And unless there are any questions for me, with that, I will turn it over to David to begin the presentation.
Just a moment, Amanda, we have Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Ms. Chair. So, thank you, Amanda, you've launched right into it, but I think for the public's benefit, I'd just like you to maybe reference how we got to the question of this in the first place.
Certainly. So, if you'll recall, at a, at a board meeting last year, I believe you, Supervisor Serna, as well as Supervisor Desmond, expressed an interest in staff looking into this issue. So we have done that, as I've said, with HDL's help, and really relied on their expertise regarding cannabis and how programs have been implemented in other counties and cities in the state.
Great, thank you. Also, and we may hear from the consultant here in a minute about this, but if, is it common, or has it been the case in every instance when a local jurisdiction, either municipality or a county, has considered a tax component to the permission and regulation of cannabis in their jurisdiction? Is it always the case that it has to, the taxation portion of it has to go on the ballot because it's considered a special tax?
So, so it is considered a tax, and I think what we are proposing would be a general purpose tax, and county council can feel free to weigh in, but essentially, yes, because it is a tax, it would need to go on the ballot.
And is, again, is this the way City of Sacramento did it? They put it on the ballot?
I believe they did.
Okay. I don't know if county council's office has a response or has some insight.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. The government code requires that if a local government wants to implement a tax, it needs to be approved by the electorate. I believe the City of Sacramento was a little bit different than what we're proposing or possibly proposing, but yes, it did go on the ballot for approval.
Okay, those are all my questions for now. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Supervisor. Any other member of the board want to ask anything of Amanda? Okay, not yet. Okay, thanks, Amanda. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. David McPherson from HDL will go through our slides and hopefully be able to answer some of your questions. Feel free to ask me as we go through it as well, more happy to answer me as we go along.
Okay, thanks, David.
Never happens.
That's what I've been told.
Hasn't happened in the first minute yet, but just get ready. Go ahead, David.
So we provided staff analysis, fiscal analysis of not only the area, but kind of the trend, what's happening with the cannabis industry throughout California, and some of the standard things, as we've seen in mature in the last, last seven years, seven to eight years since we've been legal in California. So part of the things we're looking at, we'll be looking at as from the analysis, examining the existing cannabis industry in the region, specifically here and some of the dynamics about it, which are unique, because as you've shared, comments about the City of Sacramento is that they were kind of first movers, so that has a whole different meaning as far as the maturity of their industry. We've considered the types of cannabis businesses that may choose to locate in the unincorporated area, and why, and some of the opportunities there, and, but also some of the trends that are occurring as well. And then discuss commercial cannabis tax rates and how they may affect business attractions and success, as been evaluated by other agencies. And then provide context to inform the board's decision should you wish to move forward with a tax measure. So cannabis industry is unique here on some opportunities because it has easy access to both the Bay Area and the Central Valley, especially as we now see the Central Valley starting to come into maturity, as they were late movers, and looking at this, is there's opportunities, because the product needs to go where the population goes. Wholesale business could easily work with other businesses along the I-5 corridor, the Sierra Foothills, and the Bay Area to bring and go to there, as you saw Sacramento's businesses are doing, and where there's opportunities there. Ideal locations for manufacturing distributors in particular, where it might be cheaper for commercial property, there's more of that industrial area for, in the unincorporated area, that's probably not as high price as you would in, in the cities as well, and then opportunities there. We provided here the Sacramento breakdowns of what they have currently licensed. Again, first movers, they had a lot of, a lot of businesses, but we are seeing a very high failure rate overall from the businesses, and especially as other businesses in other cities and counties start maturing, that you will see some kind of that transition here. But the county as a whole is very limited of other areas, but surrounding areas, there is a lot more attention given to it. So here's kind of breakdown of 520 businesses, and the breakdown of the cities that have something. These are licensed businesses that are registered with the state and are producing them. The unique thing about this is that there might be businesses that own multiple licenses, we would call vertically integrated, and they're just looking for landing places for cities and counties that have permit them, so that they can be spread out and own multiple businesses, which we've, we've seen what they call multi-state operators may have, based on where there's a natural fall for the types of businesses. But you can see in the surrounding areas of the numbers that we have here, so there's quite a bit.
Ms. Chair?
Yes. Ms. Serna?
Thank you. Yeah, with regard to the chart, are any of those counties that are listed, I know what it reflects, it reflects the active cannabis licenses in the county, but it doesn't distinguish between whether or not in the cities, in the county, or in the, as well as in the unincorporated parts of the county. So are there, are there any of those counties that are listed there that actually have, have regulated and are currently taxing cannabis in the unincorporated areas?
Yes, so Contra Costa County has between 12 to 20 different types of business, roughly four to five per category they have. Solano County does not, Yolo does. As you can see, it's primary focus on cultivation. They're obviously a big agriculture county that allowed and permitted that. Placer, excuse me, and then the other ones are more retail oriented or non-cultivation in nature. The primary, it's Yolo and Contra Costa that have done something. San Joaquin is starting to move in there since they permitted, they've attempted it twice, you know, trying to put that tax out and create an industry, so they've kind of been, taken a six-year attempt at this, and it's had challenges. And then it comes to just in the unincorporated areas.
And oftentimes, Sacramento County, for different purposes, uses Alameda as a surrogate for comparison in a lot of different ways. But you don't have Alameda listed up there. Do you know off the top of your head whether Alameda has, has permitted in the unincorporated area and taxes it?
They do, and they're, they're similar to Contra Costa, it's like about five, six permits per, per category, and I think they've limited to like 10, but they haven't filled all of them for those.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
I thought I heard you say there's a high failure rate. Did I hear it wrong?
Yes, there's, yes, yes. There's, the state licenses, we started off with almost 19,000 licenses, and there's ebb and flows through that, but overall, there's about a 65% failure rate of wholesale businesses, not the retail businesses. Maybe one in 10 may fail just running out of funds by the time they get their improvements to get through. to get through a process because of the competitiveness of the retail. But we are seeing more of that, and part of the problem with that is we don't, we only have like 850 licensed retailers in the state. And back in 2015, before we even were legal, we had almost 2,800 co-op and collectives. So, we've reduced the amount of retail opportunities for the wholesalers to put product into retail stores. Therefore, it's just an oversaturation until we get more retailers in the state to offset some of that demand. And so, we are seeing a big failure rate associated with that.
Oh, got it. And do you think it was the taxes on the retail side that was part of that?
Well, they didn't even get up and running yet, so the taxes couldn't have been a factor. I think the fact that, that if, you know, prior to 2015, for example, a pound, a pound of flour went for $2,000 a pound, it can get as low as $650 today. So, when everyone's asked to sell the product at a lower price, some people can't afford to sell at a lower price, but they need that, you know, that profit margin in order to be sustainable, and they're just not be able to maintain that. And we're seeing that happening on the wholesale market.
Okay, and on San Joaquin, was it basically they just couldn't get, for six years, they couldn't get the tax measure to pass? Is that it?
Twice, that was the case for the tax measure, and then just a long stretched out process to trying to, you know, public outreach on the regulatory side before they actually got up and running. And so, the cities within them started looking at it and exploring that and got a little more advanced than the county did at that time, but now they're kind of moving in that direction. But I think part of it was tied to the tax measure because they tried to do a special tax twice and it failed twice. They were just slightly off by one and a half, you know, less than 2%. They got into 64% to 66%, but just couldn't get close to that 67% when they did special taxes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, looking at some of the other areas surrounding you on the tax rates, and they vary from, you know, as time has evolved, some of these cities and counties that moved a little later start recognizing the impacts to the taxes on the industry and the businesses. And so, they started dropping their rates to be sustainable and what the current trends were occurring to. Some of the agencies did not do that. For example, Dixon, even though they have a 15%, they don't apply the 15% because initially their goal was to try to make it a high rate so that businesses would not come into town. And now, even though that's their rate, they actually have a certain flat amount guaranteed in an agreement, but they have that on the books just so that if they don't meet that trigger, they can put that into effect. But you can see where the rates that we overall have looked at from the 1% for the nursery because it's basically a plant that's sold, that's not matured, the value of it is not much there, to a higher rate for the different categories, and we'll talk about that. The retail really is where the golden ticket is and where the premium is, and even if you've seen some of the results of the City of Sacramento, majority of their revenue is coming from their retail facilities from one way or the deliveries or from the retail So, with that said, here's some just examples.
Supervisor Desmond, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, David. That last slide, I don't know if you'll be getting into more of this, your HDL recommended tax rate for each of these sectors of the industry. Are you going to go into more detail on that and other slides or, because I'm just, I'm curious why you came up with those recommendations? I mean, is that simply because, like you said, that's, retail's the golden ticket, so we should tax more? I mean, can you flesh that out a little bit, why you came up with those recommendations based on your, you know, experience with the industry?
Sure. So, what we've identified, as I mentioned, are the wholesale businesses are the one that are struggling because they're competing with a high volume. It's not regionalized because you can move all the way from, you know, the Triangle, Mendocino, and Humboldt and Trinity and bring a product all the way down here. So, wholesalers have that challenge and of course they have different ability to compete for that because of the over amount of abundance of product. Santa Barbara County, for example, has operators that basically stopped producing because there's such a glut, they can't, they can't produce it at what it's being cost on the market. So, having the rates that are being sustainable for them, we look at it similar to an old ABC theory, which is a 30% vertical look at the impact all the way down to the consumer. So, when you move it from the cultivator to the manufacturer, to the distributor, and then to the retail, each one of them has a pain point based on the number of licenses statewide, but also the ability of margins to be profitable. And it's that profitability of what it is becomes critical of why these rates are where they're at, because that's kind of right on the edges of where they're at. And it's a range, you can go higher and lower in there. But these are the rates that as time has evolved, we've had some of the other counties having to reduce their rates or almost suspend their rates because the industry just can't pay the taxes on them are being impacted by that just because they're barely being able to survive. And so, on the wholesale, these are why the rates are that, is to see how that affects the vertical part of that. And of course, the retailer not having as many can double their price or, you know, whatever they're going to sell to the consumer because they're the end point where the money's being made.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. So, you think that 6% on the retail side, which is higher than just about any of these other jurisdictions, with the exception of Dixon, 15%? Wow. And Marysville is not so high that it would have a chilling effect on investments in that retail space based on, you know, the other market forces that you've explored?
And, yes, and so, look at it this way, is that 30% threshold before Prop 64 wasn't as much of an issue of an 8%, 9%, 10%. But when Prop 64 came into effect, automatically the state taxed 25% because the excise tax is 15%, but that's on the consumer at the end, but then you have the tax on the cultivator of, you know, $10 per ounce for the flower, and that multiplier in there, it starts adding up that the state is already taxing them at 25%. So, if we use that model of 30%, you really have like that 5% pinch point where the locals can actually tax them at. So, we find the 6%, you know, 4% to 6% range from a retailer is still sustainable for that, but anything above that, it starts getting a little price sensitive. And that's why the illicit market is thriving is because of that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost.
Thank you. This is a question I probably should have asked at the outset before your presentation, but does either state law separate from Prop 64 or Prop 64 itself dictate that jurisdiction that chooses to tax and regulate cannabis has to have all six activities within that jurisdiction? Or, for instance, could Sacramento County be, just show our interest in retail and just retail outlets get their product from other jurisdictions?
Absolutely. You can, whatever category you wish to have, if you only want to have retail, you can only permit retail, you don't have to have anything else.
Very good, thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I'm sorry for my ignorance, but I'm a little confused and I don't know how to wrap my head around the taxes for cultivation. It says $2 per square foot to $7 per square foot versus 4% or 5% or 15%. Is it 15% of the overall measurement of the crop or the weight of the crop? And how do those, how do they compare to each other? Like, is 2 to 7 less than 4% or more?
Sure. So, because our recommendation typically is square foot for many reasons we'll talk about, but 2.5% is equivalent to $10 a square foot. So, if you did $2 or 2% or $7 a square foot, it's the same equivalence.
You said percent. Are you talking about dollars? $2?
Percent of gross receipts, so it'd be a percent.
Okay, got it. Oh, this is percent of gross receipts.
Percentage of gross receipts, yeah.
Versus $2.
Of a square foot.
Of a square foot.
Would be a square foot, yeah. So, that's only for cultivation, and we'll touch upon that as well, I think, in more detail.
It's a little confusing.
It's okay.
David, if I just could, while we're here, a couple of questions. I don't want to get ahead of you in your presentation, but back to the retail portion of it, as you've kind of detailed, and again, thank you for your report, I found it to be, you know, very thorough in analysis regarding fiscal aspects and taxes, but also in giving us an idea of what exists in the region. If I recall correctly, there's about 130 retailers in the area. I don't know if it flows exactly with the chart up there, but within the counties and the cities that you had outlined. And one of the conclusions was is that really there's no unmet demand and that even with the growth, there potentially might be some room as it relates to sales, but that if we're going to, you know, propose something of this sort, that in large part, you would be bleeding off of other retail sales. I mean, obviously, City of Sacramento being the largest city out there is nominal, but I guess, is that a fair summation of what you kind of concluded here, that even with all the calculations and you give us the ballpark that could be, but that wasn't going to necessarily be new sales because there's really not a lack of ability to, certainly on the legal market, but I think you also discussed obviously what's out there in the illicit market, at least thought to be, and how that factors into the overall availability of the product and so forth. So, I'm just curious, and maybe we're going to get to that later on, so I don't want to interrupt your presentation, but I mean, that was one of the things I drew right from the report, that, you know, if you're looking for convenience, yeah, you might get a little closer to somebody's house, but if you look at regionally with 130, you know, retail operations and your home delivery is allowed in some of the jurisdictions and probably occurs even when it's not permitted outright. So, I guess I'm curious, is where those numbers come from? It's not going to be new revenues in large part, maybe with some growth, but it's going to be, we'd be capturing revenues that are being generated, I guess largely in City of Sacramento, but could be from other jurisdictions that were Placer County, Yolo County. Is that fair or not?
Yeah, and as we'll touch on a couple, there's a slide that's going to talk about in the legal market, but you are talking about market share from within your own jurisdiction as well, right? And then surrounding areas where, just like Sacramento, is basically benefiting from market share around them because the cities around them aren't doing it. You would also derive, if you permitted a retail in the unincorporated area, you would get your market share potentially, but also market share for surrounding agencies that are still continuing not to permit it. I use an example, we have one client that's out in the Central Valley of a small town, you know, let's say 8,000 to 15,000 square feet, I mean, 8,000 to 15,000 population in general, is, they have two retailers that are making more money than major cities, and it just mathematically doesn't make sense. Why? It's they're capturing the illicit market in that hole, that 99 corridor, right, that wasn't there before because they didn't have, the consumer didn't have a legal market to go to of opportunity, and now they're not continuing buying in the illicit market because there's at least an opportunity closer to them than having to continue buying in the illicit market. So, there is value added out of reducing it because as we mentioned earlier, we had 851 retailers statewide where we had almost two over 2,800 before, which means that most of those people moved to the illicit market, they were buying, and now they're given more opportunities to come back out of the illicit market. And we're going from 70% illicit market and moving down where when the state came out in their EIA report estimated it would be a 30% illegal market, we went in the opposite because we took out 60, 70% of the retailers that happened prior before legalizing. So, that's the cause and effect of opportunity, but also reducing the opportunity for the illicit market to continue thriving.
Sure, and you discuss that quite a bit in the report, but I guess, way back to that, bridging off that point, there are sufficient, at least by way of calculating population per dispensary or retailer, however you make that categorization, in the region with 130 licenses of one sort or the other that relate to sales, the convenience, maybe people have to travel, I think you use that people will travel up to about 20 minutes, I guess, is the kind of the outlying time. But here, there may be illicit market, but it's not as much driven by the example you used down in the valley, by not having something available, because there is availability pretty much surrounding the county and in county and within fairly short driving distance in most cases for folks when you kind of book in, again, I often be, you know, fairly deep in the delta, and then obviously, City of Sacramento being fairly expansive and ringed by both suburban cities, but also, you know, suburban unincorporated areas. And so, again, I'm not trying to make any counterpoints here, I just wanted to understand that there is good access, as I understand it from the statistics, if you use averages, to the legal market here in the Sacramento region defined by the counties you've used up and cities you've used up there. Is that fair or not?
Yeah, I think in general, if someone can, you know, it's like going to a Costco or a regional mall, right? If you can get there within 20, 30 minutes, it's a reasonable time for convenience to people and one could look at it that way.
Yeah, and just one other question as relates to delivery services that, I thought there was some provisions of law that you couldn't prohibit delivery services in an area, even if you didn't permit the retail cultivation, manufacturers, so forth, the delivery services. I thought there were some adjustments, because there were some jurisdictions that wanted to prohibit deliveries into their cities or to their county. Am I mistaken in that? Or maybe, Lisa?
So, yeah, that's the Santa Cruz County versus Atoll with multiple seven, seven other cities that challenged that. The state's decision on that was that you can, they changed their position on that in the court saying their interpretation is if you ban it, then you have to enforce it, they're not going to help you. So, if you allow it and someone doesn't comply, then they will assist you in enforcing it.
Okay, so, use Sacramento County where we stand today, since we prohibit all the categories in the unincorporated area, and if someone delivers into the unincorporated area, it's up to the local jurisdiction, if you so choose, to enforce it, otherwise it's not enforced. Is that?
That's correct, and there's actually a bill before right now on the, in the legislation about if it's medicinal that you may require to permit it and you cannot ban it.
Oh, okay.
And that's in a committee right now, but it's in a suspense.
So, they would have an additional carve-out for that particular category?
Correct.
Okay, before you go on, I could get some back in the queue, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that, because if I did, it seems to me Sacramento County is even more uniquely positioned at this point in time, given the fact we only have one city in the county, well, we have two, but for all intents and purposes, one, City of Sacramento, that has chosen to permit, regulate, and tax. But with regards to the cities of Ranch Cordova, Galt, Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, Folsom, that because they don't currently permit it, and if Sacramento County were to choose to permit, regulate, and tax, it would be somewhat like playing defense with the City of Sacramento and playing offense with the rest of the other cities. In other words, what we would have to gain in terms of market share could be fairly extraordinary, especially if those other five cities chose never to permit, regulate, and tax, correct?
Sure, yeah, and if I may, on page, when we get to slide 11, I can respond to that with some more detailed data to share with you.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
So, as I mentioned.
Sorry, David.
No, that's okay. I appreciate that this is exactly the kind of, I want to get into this, I think this is, these are really good points and explanation about the dynamics around delivery because we all know it's being delivered everywhere in Sacramento County. I think it's important that you just pointed out the distinction between the state regulatory bodies, when they will and when they won't take regulatory action against permit holders within a jurisdiction that's prohibited. So, you've covered it, so thank you.
You're welcome. So, again, with the only surrounding county that we can find in comparison, you can see where Yolo County, who has revenue coming in from them, is that the city of Sacramento, or the cannabis tax provides significant revenue for the City of Sacramento, the dollar amount, it's mostly on the retail. For Yolo, it's on cultivation, but Yolo County has 11 times the number of, or Sacramento, the city has more, 11 times more than Yolo County does, and so, the revenue is significantly because Yolo is primary on cultivation, that doesn't have as much of the revenue overall in comparison. So, we look at the surrounding counties or cities in the area as where we come up with that 130, you can see the breakdown here of a reflects what cities in the surrounding county areas that are kind of on your borders that could be doing deliveries or some type of activity around you. This is that 30-minute, nearby 30-minute radius that we were just talking about of how these retailers could be coming into Sacramento, the unincorporated area.
David, on your chart, again, a couple of the cities are... David, on your chart, again, a couple of the cities are not in the right county on your chart, so you, Dixon and Reavista-
Yeah, they're in Salona, yeah. First. Thanks for that. We'll fix that in the chart. Appreciate that.
Did you mean, so did you mean the county or the city on that chart?
We were just trying to reflect what county each of the cities are, but we were referring to the city on here.
Okay.
But we may have stated the wrong county whether they're in-
Started with an S, anyway. You got it.
Yeah. So, with, oops. So what we're trying to look at here, just kind of the total, I think one of the comments made about the plus minus of the total population, which included the unincorporated area and the surrounding area, service area, is the EIR report, when Prop 64 came out, the state regulations, they looked at about one retailer for every 20,000. So when you look at the numbers here, to reflect that, plus or minus of what the county has, and then what the surrounding counties with that population has, you have a net about, of about a four, about plus four additional. But I think the most important thing is here is that your population basis, basically your market share is being taken by everybody else. So, you know, if you had that shift, we've seen this in other cities where the first movers, you know, open multiple, multiple locations, but as the late movers that kind of let the dust settle with Prop 64 regulations, try to understand it more, see as time has matured with this industry and where their community stands, being more educated about it, and have been late movers, are taking back a lot of that. So we're seeing where the first movers are losing those revenues. And then those that are, you know, the cities that are actually took their time to kind of see where everything was going, started getting their share of revenues back. So it's kind of balancing it out of that shift, of that market share, and those agencies taking back their market share, which would be reflective of what you see here on the total in that surrounding area of this data. So this is looking at the most communities that have the retail or served in the area that are, that are both the unincorporated area and, I mean, not in the unincorporated area, but kind of the density. You can see the different shades of the cities, the density of each one of those, and then around the unincorporated areas of the county, but also where the most of it is, the licenses are in Sacramento, as shared in that one slide. And it's harder in the rural areas, it'd be more difficult to get to. So let's, you know, statistically of where a retailer may consider going or budding up to, to make sure they can maximize their revenues. What we have been finding is some in the unincorporated areas where businesses are in more rural areas, that they might go more vertically integrated, what we call a micro business, or they might do cultivation and distribution or other activities, so they're not just relying only on the retail, the consumer, where the population itself may not support them. And then we, on this slide, we kind of shared where the 130 licenses are on the left. And then on the right side, you'll see both the red and the green, which is also in the fiscal report, is both the legal and the illegal businesses. So there is a study out by, that the industry did when they were trying to get the state's attention, trying to demonstrate how many illicit delivery services are out there in California. And so they were able to grab all the illegal businesses that, from various sources that were, where they were marketing themselves and be able to map it to reflect that. And so, not as accurate as far as the data on it, but it obviously reflects of why there's a lot of volume going in, both from the legal and the illicit market. So this would kind of give you better indicator where that 70% impact is.
David, if you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you. Interesting, this is very interesting, when I look at all the illegal operations and throughout the unincorporated county. What was the date of this slide here, the data that formed this slide, David? Do you know?
This data, the way the motto's written, it's actually, you can click on it in real time. It's just the validity of how many of those still, because they do like a GPS of where, you know, coding of where those businesses saying they're at or where they deliver to. So there's not an accurate verification of that. Again, that was something that was done by industry and the agent, and their organizations. What we do know is what's on the left, that they are covering that. And Sacramento has indicated in their study report that they've got 58 deliveries that are moving within, you know, generating $100, $120 million, and they're covering all the areas. And both the retailers in their deliveries in their, in their study reflected that 60% of the revenues are generated from people that don't live in Sacramento proper. So you guys are part of that as the surrounding communities are benefiting to-
And you have a high level of confidence? Do you have a high level, even though this was, it sounds like this was produced by the industry, HDL, you have a high level of confidence that this is accurate?
We have a high level that we believe that there is that because of that 2,000, that almost 2,800 retailers that didn't get licenses, they didn't go away, they had their clientele and they were thriving. In fact, we have data showing from sales tax that, you know, they don't want to be like Al Capone, get caught for tax evasion, that they're actually paying their sales tax even though they're not permitted in the state.
Yeah.
And so they're continuing to do that. How accurate it to that degree is, we feel that it's moving in that degree, in that 60 to 70% illicit market.
And one more question before you leave this. Do you think, it was interesting point you had made, you talked about when some retailers opened up, you saw the illicit, a drop in the illicit market in some of these areas served by those retailers. Have you seen slides that show just kind of a change over time with maybe less? Which one, which one is the illicit market? Green or red on this? Green?
The green.
The green. Would you think you would see a decrease in the number of those illegal operators in these jurisdictions or these areas as more retail licenses are stood up? Has that been your experience?
Interestingly, we do for two reasons. First of all, the legal industry will snitch on those that are illegal because it's taking their revenue from a right.
As they should.
They tend not to do it when they're still competing for that or maybe participating in that. But when they, when they do, then they make sure that the local agencies are aware of what's happening.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So this is that slide I was referring to, is by now looking at the population and the analysis of the detail. So what we've done is taken the population and gave you three scenarios, low best and high estimates based on those tax rates that we share with you, 4% to 6%. But if you look at the population unserved, and then you, and that's including multiple areas and the service area that is in the report. And then you go down and assume that 50%, there's a leakage, and that's conservatively strong, it could be less, but the leakage from that due to the illicit market or other industry, or other locations, and what that, what that percentage is. And then those percentages that are used, it's a safe conservative that the different range in there is 10%, 13% to 20%. And we are seeing in certain, certain regions at 18% to 20%, both CBD products, which are low THC content, because people are getting off prescription drugs and other things, are moving higher, high to the 18% to 20% of consumers. But if you even did the conservative look at it, which was back when we only had the medicinal world. And then you go down kind of just the percentage number of consumer users, the average per use, we multiply it times, you know, purchases of two a month, looking at the potential monthly gross revenues, and then the annual potentially from there, and then leakage back from, from the illicit market, and then adjust that accordingly. And then you just apply the rates there. You can see from a low in here that we've estimated in here of the different types of revenues, you can, you can range from $5 million to $12 million based on those assumptions. And that is just basically looking at population base, regardless of the number. So back to, you know, are you being served by others? The existing retailers are going to absorb that wherever it may go and wherever they can, they can brand themselves in order to capture some of that. And if they're doing it already now, you're just not receiving that. And this is just based on the unincorporated population in the servicing area, which is, you know, the areas around it as well.
Mr. Chair.
David, a couple of questions again.
So I just want to make sure I understood that that slide is telling us that basically if the board were simply to put on the ballot and then follow up with regulatory, a regulatory instrument like an ordinance, that we could, if we just did retail, we would stand a net of almost $5 million to $14.5 million just based on retail activity?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Just based on, on the population and what your market share would be for that. It has nothing to do, the cause and effect of how many retailers you have. That's just saying, even with the leakage and assumption, even the deliveries coming from out of town, taking a percentage of that which we accounted for, you would still at the end of the day, and that's conservatively, that's conservative.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I want to follow up on that. You just said something that I was surprised to hear. You said it wouldn't matter the number of retailers you have. I was assuming this was, this is kind of based on the assumption that it would be a retailer for every 20,000 people. So you're saying these, I mean, what assumptions are you making in terms of the number of retailers that would, that would get you this projected tax revenue?
Well, the, usually a retailer probably services between 2,500 to 3,500 consumers per location. So obviously, the less you have, that means they cannot, they cannot sustain services to them, which means that people will go to other. So it's just like gas stations or others, you got to have enough of them that the consumer's not going to stand in line for an hour.
Right.
So that all has to be balanced out. But typically, conservatively, if you had one retailer for every 20,000, that's the service amount that, that would not only be sustainable for, I mean, profitable for a retailer, but also servicing, which any one business can handle in any one given-
That's helpful. No, thank you. And I know that, that is kind of beyond the scope of the discussion today, obviously the number of retailers, but I think that's important in terms of understanding some of the assumptions that this is based on. Thank you.
So then we look at the other areas, which we mentioned, there's, there's opportunities, but how much is a different story. What we typically find for late movers in the other activities in the wholesale, where the market is already saturated, is that you've got businesses that may have a manufacturer facility, but they want to grow or expand, or maybe they're repositioning themselves because there's a better opportunities logistically, get a better opportunity, they might have been forced to get a building or facility that doesn't really work for them, and they might wanting to relocate or expand their existing business because their brand is doing well. Those are the ones we're seeing that are moving into areas where I think it's more opportunity for them. And you could find that, you know, with all the backlog or even the potential impact of facilities here in the city where they want to go in the unincorporated area. So that typically is the case in here. What this scenario really does is very conservative, and interesting enough, if the, and even in the Sacramento report, they take their numbers and what their revenue is, if you actually divide it by that, it comes out fairly in a range that we were looking at here at $2.5 to $5 million, almost maps what they're actually making for their businesses that they presented in their report. And this is conservative. As we mentioned, we've seen businesses that do extremely well, they're well-banned branded, but typically they've already been first movers and have been expansion, and they have their products probably in 100, 150 stores. A late mover is going to have to be linked to that, otherwise they're, they're standing in line to compete with all the other ones that are already positioned for that. But if the scenario came that you did have this, this would be kind of hypothetical, conservatively, what we would see as a business that's not, you know, a big mover that's already out there.
Okay, Mr. Desmond?
Just a quick question. And just, so I'm clear and the public's clear, when you're talking manufacturers, you're talking businesses that take the mature flower and process it into products that are then sold by a retailer, correct? That's what the manufacturing goes. Thank you.
Extracting, there's a variation. There's, there's manufacturers that might do all but extraction, make it into oil and resound the oil to other, to, to other manufacturers that then put it into a pot, you know, chocolate or a cookie or whatever activity. Or they might do all the activities in one location. There's a variety, but blending them all together and categorizing them, this is what we're seeing on an average and a conservative starting point for a business.
Great. Thank you.
And the distributor, we find that most of the distributors are self-distributing to themselves because they don't want that markup, I have to pay that 15%, 20% margins for marking it up. And it's actually value at time, you know, if they have a, they don't, not their own distributor, then they, what they're doing is while they have to wait three days to move a product to a client, and that client says, you know what, I need 50 pounds today, I can't wait three days. And so they're wanting to be a distributor, so to end up moving their own product and/or trying to have other small businesses that are looking for a distributor and they'll share in the cost, and they'll open and get a distributor license. Same, same scenario we did with the tax rates here and the assumptions associated with that. And there's the same kind of range that could be high and low, it's a matter of, you know, what the business and their business model is. Cultivation is, I think, to address the earlier question on this, is it really has to do with the cycles, assuming that it would be, you know, some of the unincorporated areas are allowing outdoor grows or mixed, mixed light grows, which are greenhouses. And so the variation of what that would be is there's different amount of cycles because of the sun or how their activity is used in harvesting cycles. And so this, this slide reflects all the different scenarios, but also the price per pound. You can see where the value of a pound is higher in an indoor brick building than you're going to have in a mixed house green light or an outdoor, because just the value of what that product is, the industry has determined that. And then we've just done methodology, which is more detailed in the report of how these, how that actually comes out as pretty basic science about what you can do and produce if you know what you're doing as a master grower in order to get, maximize the value of an efficiency of a cultivation site. And what the revenues would be reflective of there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Serna.
So, it looks to me like that, that particular cannabis-related activity is producing on the lower side of the taxation picture for, for a jurisdiction. Is that, when taken as a whole, the positive fiscal consequence of permitting cultivation versus perhaps the costs that go into, the additional cost for a jurisdiction in terms of, especially for outdoor cultivation, making sure it's a safe operation, making sure that legal activity around outdoor cultivation is kept to a minimum, would you, in your professional opinion, is cultivation kind of the, the least significant fiscal contributor to a jurisdiction relative to kind of the totality of cannabis-related activity?
Well, it probably is at this stage in the game. In the report, we cited that there are over 7,000 cultivators in the state, and based on the, and they produce 16.5 million pounds. The consumer demand in California is only 2.5 million pounds, right? So that's why you see the price, the glut of product on the market is it's down to the bottom of selling it, right? They don't care how good your product is, because my product's just as good as you. The retailer distributor is saying, here's what I'm offering you, and take or leave it, otherwise it's sitting in a box or you stop growing it. So that's the bigger challenge. In today's environment, there are 41 licensed big operators that can produce all the product for California. And we've got 7,000 cultivators. So that's, that is the bigger issue. It's just a glut of product. And so, you know, having cultivation or even considering it, the probability is you're not going to get growers. And if they do, they, that's where that 65% failure rate or higher is associated with.
So they don't ship it out, ship it out of California?
It's illegal in the license, in the legal world, to ship outside of the borders of the state at this time. Still, it's still a controlled substance at the federal level. So this model, and it's more detailed analysis tells of each category for the, for the indoor mixed light and outdoor, but you can see the revenue is not as intensive as it was before for the early movers, adopters, and even those are starting to feel the impact. Even Santa Barbara County has almost 1,000 licenses, which by the way, is only 102 different unique businesses that are starting to feel that reduction in their revenues because that's their primary source of revenue from the industry. So with that, that's, the summary of our findings is retail provides the best opportunity for revenues, which kind of I think goes hands to hand with our conversation. So, you know, if you permitted it in the county, should you consider that, you know, with the potential fiscal benefit, that's where the revenues is going to be. And, and retail also provides sales tax associated with that. The report on that spreadsheet that we gave you on the total calculations- The report on that spreadsheet that we gave you on the total calculations also reflected that you would generate the revenue from the sales tax affiliate with that. The county's well positioned for the wholesalers, I think, with only Sacramento allowing that, you know, if there is an interest, if you go into a policy discussion on the regulatory side, you'll get more of understanding of what the industry's consideration or might wanting to, willing to, to come in and incorporate it. But the wholesaler industry as a whole, you know, is a challenging area, given the situation with oversaturation. But you are centrally located, as we mentioned. The retailer is in the rules we mentioned about, may have to have.
David, just one second, sorry, I think supervisor certainly had a question.
Sorry to keep interrupting, but this is fascinating for someone who has absolutely no prior knowledge about the, about the nuances of the industry here. But given the, kind of the uniqueness of what Yolo County has chosen to do, which, based on your presentation, I understand to be much more heavily focused on cultivation, correct?
Yes.
Is there an even more unique opportunity for Sacramento County if we were just to go, if we were just to kind of keep our blinders on and focus in on retail activity, based on the fact that we have a neighboring county that is so focused on the other component part of the total equation, the cultivation side?
So the retail is all about market share of consumers versus the wholesale side. You could be in San Diego County move product up here, you can be in Mendocino or Humboldt County move, so it's movable, it's not like fixed.
So the geographic sensitivity isn't there?
It's not as much. However, you know, as far as pricing and, you know, complementing strategically, the efficiency of that, I would think that retailers would probably have a relationship or build that based on where their best opportunity, and it's about, you know, building relationships where they get their products from, most likely would happen to occur.
Thank you.
So the, the rule we mentioned about just may have to have more opportunities, have other options, and then the testing labs, Sacramento has a few testing labs, there are only forty-one in the state, so they're already sustainable, is not really a viable from a revenue standpoint of consideration in their report. The last thing I wanted to mention in here is we did mention about addressing social equity issues that always comes up, especially where, I mean, even though we're just talking about the tax side, it's more on the regulatory side or who gets permits. But the question always comes up about can you provide some kind of reduction or say, you know, not charging social equity applicants or businesses a tax? And it comes back to the, the fair equitable tax things and the reasonable test as far as how you do that. What we find of cities that have done that, that what they've done is they collect the tax, but they provide rebate incentives. It could be for social equity equal abaters, it could be for a reduction of hiring social equity employees, it could do other functions associated affiliated with the value added that gives back the deduction of the rebates, like a half percent for this activity, half percent for this, quarter percent for this, that at the end of the day, you are providing them some kind of rebate for them hitting those triggers, but it's the equitable amount that you can't just treat them and they say, well, we're going to, you know, it's like saying, we're going to, I got to tax Ford dealers, but we're going to tax Chevy dealers, right? You can't do that. You have to treat the tax the same on that. But that's how there's opportunities to address that in a program, should you move forward with having one.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, I'm glad, glad you addressed that equity piece. Obviously, extremely important discussion, but kind of the bottom line is it's really more of the discussion on the policy and the regulatory framework, not the discussion for this. Okay, thank you.
Yep, but there is a, there is an angle on there where you can, you can do something for it. Was there another question?
No, no.
Nope, okay. So then, just the recommended rates again, we showed in the cultivation, the square footage. Cultivation, why, is why we put in the report, it does the simple things. It's simplified, you don't have to worry about diversion of grocery receipts, you have less enforcement for audit, because it's, it's, it's easy to determine of them getting creative and trying to hide stuff. You don't need to have to do as much, a high level of auditing or oversight to them. And the thing probably Amanda loves a bit, it's easy to budget for, because you just calculate square footage uses by that, you know what your budget is versus trying to figure out if grocery receipts go up and down. Industry people sometime will argue, well, you know, what if we have, we have some, you know, a disaster or something on that? And I'm going to address that when we actually talk about the tax ordinance and some of the mechanisms in that. So these are the rates that we kind of went over and just highlighted one, we kind of compared them to, to our high and the, the high and the low initial and the maximum rates for us, recommend, but then you also see where Sacramento is on theirs, on their, the top of each one of their categories. And they reflect different rates as well. This is the breakdown of those assumptions that we provided you in the reports. If you rolled it all up, you can see where the wholesale businesses don't contribute as much, but there is something there, should you even get that many in there. And then we gave you the, the low, the medium, and the high rates of what that assumption would look like overall. Again, the bulk of it is in the retail side of it. With that, I can answer any additional questions that we haven't already covered before we go into the tax measure, the tax ordinance itself.
Okay, supervisor Desmond and supervisor Turner.
A quick question, and I asked this yesterday, I appreciate Natasha had responded to me, but just to be clear, so the, these tax rates, the jurisdictions that have allowed, allowed commercial cannabis operations, they build in the cost of their administration, local enforcement, all their, their, their program costs are built into the, the license cost or the, the permit costs, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just like, think of you had other programs in the county where the, the beneficiary is the one that you're charging for, just like building and building and paying permits, right? There's a cost, a burden cost to provide that service to them. So typically, you will do a fit gap analysis, determine the program cost based on the number of license you have, and look at each department and what their role would be, determine what that annual fee would be.
Great.
And it'll vary based on the number of.
And I appreciate explaining that, because I think a lot of, a lot of folks would look at these numbers and think, well, that's all going to get eaten up by, you know, your administration, administrative costs for, for this program in the county. All right.
What we're talking today is a two eighteen issue, which is a tax. What you're talking about is a Prop twenty-six, which is cost recovery for the burden of providing a service to the beneficiary of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for adding legal legitimacy for kind of what I was thinking. I appreciate that, David.
Okay, supervisor Turner?
I think my, my question might be a good segue into whatever continued presentation you might provide us, or advice you might provide us today in terms of the actual ballot language. I assume that, based on the well of the board, to kind of, it almost feels like we can choose from a, a menu of the different activities associated with cannabis production, manufacture, distribution, and sales, that the ballot language legally has to be fairly specific in terms of what we would be pursuing, in terms of the, those menu of options of activities, correct? So if this, if it's well the board simply to go look at doing retail permitting, regulating, taxing retail activity, the ballot necessarily has to be that focused about referencing just that, not cultivation, not manufacture, not distribution. Is that the correct assumption?
You can narrow it to that, and remember, if I can do the next presentation, I'm going to answer, we're going to talk about trends, strategies, and opportunities.
Okay.
And that covers, regardless of what activity you have and why vision, we have some clients that choose not to do anything, but they still have a tax measure for strategic purposes. And so we'll talk about that as we go, and as we talk about the, what a tax measure and what a tax ordinance looks like.
Great, thank you.
Okay?
Okay, David, go ahead.
So moving on to the next part of the presentation, this is specifically on the taxes. Now, the first one was on the fiscal element, and we kind of touched the, the, so revenue strategies, future trends, the over of what a tax ordinance looks like in the technical terms, and then rates and how that cumulative thing works, and then it'll go more detail what we shared already, and then, and the board direction. So this goes back to what we just mentioned. The, the left has the standard fees, right? Prop twenty-six, that is separate from the tax, that you can establish a fee to oversight to the industry for the direct benefit of managing the program. And we covered that, it's the twenty, the Prop twenty-six. The right side of this slide reflects the voters, a general tax, in this case, we're suggesting a recommending of fifty plus one, is ED that would be used, the tax would use for general funds, for whatever lawful purposes you wish to have it. It's not specified for one in a category. If you wish to do a special tax, it takes a two-thirds vote, and as you saw, Sam Joakim tried it twice, and just that insy bin a little bit, just need a little naysayers, could be industry, it could be community or whatever, but that's a high level to try to, to overcome for any kind of tax. And in general, we went back and looked at taxes, and most of the taxes that were special taxes failed on cannabis, majority of them have, and in general, special taxes have a tough obstacle to overcome with that. So from a revenue strategy, you want to be proactive on what you're looking at beyond whatever regulatory, whatever regulatory process you do. And so it should be important that you're separating the regulatory process, policy direction, types of activities, number of business, whatever, from a tax ordinance. So what you're trying to look at here is, how do we make sure that we attack adult use? How do we look at how we're going to tax medicinal use, especially if you want to reduce the rate for medicinal use? How are we going to go after illegal activity, right? So in this case, even the, the deliveries coming from out of town. How can we make sure that we're deriving some benefit from those that are coming in, even though we're banning them currently? What happens if legislative changes? We talked about the legislators now changing, potentially saying, hey, you can't ban medicinal deliveries into, into the county, right? So you got to overcome that. How do we, how do we regulate changes to some of the things as delivery, consumption allowances, or what may come down ten years from now that you haven't thought about? Special events are starting to be a unique that are happening and the request for those, you know, how to make sure you capture anything that's not a standard type category right now. Addressing vertical businesses, so even though you have a business like a micro business that has many touching points, they have cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, distribution, and retail, how do you, how do you deal with vertical businesses that are either one licensed, like a micro business, or someone has a retail but also wants their own distribution license, right? So they may need that, because they don't want to have to rely on having to pay someone else to do that, which is very common. Looking at social equity, we mentioned about the rebate program. You can't, you can't give them a, a tax break, but you can give them a rebate based on those criteria, that's a reasonable test that benefits everyone for that. And then collaborating with industry, looking at equitable solutions and looking at those rates, the rates we've been talking about are those rates that kind of finding that sweet spot, that pain point of still being successful. As we look at future trends, technology is changing, just like we had a deal with twenty-five years ago, when we had the dot com, and all of a sudden, everyone's buying something on Amazon versus walking into a store. What that could look like over time, you never know what that's going to do and change, and as regulations change for that. We're going to go in more detail about hemp, because hemp is starting to be part of the cannabis industry. We're going to talk about eighty forty-five on a separate. Potential for THC, THC restrictions, increasing it, decreasing it, if you tax it differently because of that, and we'll talk about that specifically for the hemp side. And then just regulations of different manufactured products, and just making sure that you can capture that. And then changing how businesses do models. We saw during COVID, all of a sudden, everyone shut down, and they were still trying to be, it's a central business, COVID made them go to delivery and changing models, and then how they're going back to models. So make sure your, any tax ordinance will capture all of those. So this is the AB forty-five, this just passed over the summer here, here in Sacramento. The governor passed, and there was actually two bills prior to this, but because of COVID, they got kind of delayed or suspended. But what this bill is going to do is allow hemp products to be sold in cannabis retail stores. We've done audits on cannabis stores where they're actually selling hemp and they're not supposed to be there, because it's not a regulated function. But what we do know is that the industry is going to move in the next five years or less, that hemp products, because it's CBD kind of products, not high in the THC content, is going to take up almost twenty-five percent of all the retail stores. They're going to have products in their stores. So tax measures that were in the, before twenty twenty that we didn't work on before we knew about this coming on here, it said hemp was not part of the taxing mechanism, it was exempt. So if you have a business selling a million dollars and twenty-five percent of their products is not subject to tax, you're out, right? So strategically, it would be behoove you to put the hemp in there, so it's subject to tax. And now that AB forty-five is now law, it means that they can, when they get the state regulations in place, hemp will be in cannabis stores and making it a taxable activity, but it won't be if it's not on the books. So strategically, making sure this is occurring will be important. We also know, because we help other, other agencies, that there are business, publicly traded companies and MSOs, that are already building out manufacturing facilities for hemp facilities in California, because they know it's going to take three years before they can get them up and running, and by that time, it will be legal, and they will have all their production for hemp in there. I say that because you may have current operators that are going to want to shift their business model to diversify their portfolio, and looking at places to produce hemp. And they need manufacturing facilities for extracting the oils and distributing it. In Ventura County, in Santa Barbara County, there's growers, I mean, San Luis Obispo and Ventura County, there's growers doing hemp, but there's no facilities for them to go out and dry and cure and, and do the production side of it. They can grow it there, but they got no facilities to go and do the, the manufacturing and packaging and label and distribution areas, so they're trying to find places to go at. So there is that opportunity in there, if it's also included in there. So as we look at the core component of this, this is basic functions for the most part, but I'm going to touch on a few. Authority and a purpose, obviously, and then having definitions and going into detail based on our experience of doing audits, we ran into hiccups, we've seen industry reinterpret things, challenge us, get creative and all that stuff, so we've kind of made sure we've kind of right-sized all those things to address those. Item number three is the big picture one, it's when the time comes, we've talked about some rates, but actually defining those rates. What we find in the show, when I was doing these prior to sixteen, is we would put initial rates, but by the time you get industry up and running, you spend so much time, you know, changing the rates, that everyone that's come before you has always had to change their initial rate, because the trend, as the industry has matured, you kind of reestablish and develop those rates. So it's our recommendation that you only have the maximum rate in there, and you come back by a resolution and figure out what you want to adopt the rate, because they're probably going to be something lower, or you're going to have a more, better understanding of where the rates would be. You have that flexibility of both. Item seven is the other key one I mentioned about just relief, you know, we saw Sonoma County, we've seen Trinity County, we've seen those in Lake County where had the fires, and the industry says, wait a minute, you taxed me on this on a square footage, and I basically got a burnt down building, but you're telling me I did it. No, this is where that relief comes in, that you can mitigate those and make sure that they're not paying something on a square footage as a result of some catastrophe or something occurs with their business model. And the most important for you is number eight, modification amendment. This is where you can increase the rate, decrease the rate, you know, for each category, we talked about medicinal, you may want, you may want to have a lower rate for medicinal. Hemp doesn't have the same value, if you permit by policy to have it in the ordinance, you may have it a lot significantly lower, because the value of hemp is going to be lower, so you can reduce that rate or shift how that whole model is in there, that could be presented to you, should you choose to do that. So flexibility and the modifications, as long as it does not go higher than what the voters are permitting you to do. And so to kind of answer part of the, the question that you had brought up was, do we want to only do retail in the ordinance? Our recommendation is you throw everything in the kitchen sink in there, what you regulate is one thing, but strategically, what you have in there so that you can address deliveries coming out from outside of the area into the city, you can impose a tax on them. If you have some illegal growers and you can't, and shut them down from administratively, you can do like you did Al Compon, impose the tax on them and shut them down on a daily basis, because then they're subject to that, and then you can take action on them, especially when you can lean the property for them for not paying their taxes for something that's unlawful.
Is this, again, sort of what Dixon chose to do?
Dixon just did a, so what Dixon did is they put a tax on, on, but they weren't, they, they were trying to be more to discourage from people, and they were at the high rate. But then, when they changed their business policy decision to permit it, they reduced the rate to a, a lower rate. But they, they made sure there was a guaranteed minimum that they received as a result of what the businesses said they would perform. So we talked about the square footage in more detail on there. One of the questions that had come up was that you can, there's some benefits to, to, I'm sorry, let me go back to the cultivation. One of the benefits of the square footage for industry, which some of them don't, don't understand, is because they have a two eighty rule, which is a tax law, that they can't deduct most stuff, seventy-five percent of what they do can't be taxed once it's actually taxed or sold to a product, but it's called the COGS, the cost of doing business. So when it's a. So when it's a fee or a tax is posed on the actual, you know, on the square footage, they can deduct that. So it's a huge value to them strategically. And if you set the rates that are equivalent to the percentage of gross receipts, then you have the same flexibility with them associated with that. So that's a double, as I mentioned, the predictability of the revenue on the square footage for the, the cultivation, if there was even consideration for it.
David, I have a question, kind of back to conversation a moment ago about, you know, what you would recommend is to build it all in there. You can choose to, assuming it was approved by the voters, choose to pick or not amongst the various categories. What's been experienced, I mean, you mentioned San Joaquin County, but with other jurisdictions that you've widely researched this? Because I could see with, with some of those activities where as a part of any measure, and if people took the time to think about it, where they could, you know, they might, they might be supportive of a piece of it. But if, and you talk fairly extensively in some, some of the paragraphs here about rural areas where, you know, rural portions of this county that are close enough, certainly to major pathways for movement of goods and people, rural communities that have, in some cases, because of changing farming practices, may have warehouses where, I'm just bored, obviously in recent years had discussion about, had nothing to do with cannabis. But, you know, the use of, of intensity of uses on, you know, with some, some large structures that were once, where they stored hay in and they were making some other byproducts for animal feed, which got to be of an issue with some of the, some of the folks in that community. I guess I'm curious that if you put all, you put the kitchen sink in there, that, and you take this to the voters and you don't narrowly define it. I get, I get about the discretion going forward, that successful puts a responsibility and certainly the accountability with the board and its administration of certainly the, the money to be received, but also obviously enforcement and any other, I guess licensing or permitting at the local level. What's been the experience when you put all those things in there or have you seen this? And somebody said, well, I might agree with that, but I don't want to manufacture it around the corner from me. And if you give that license to the board supervisors as a body, you know, you can tell me one thing that's, it's slowly near discretion, but I'll bet that that place over there is going to be a candidate for it. And I know that when some of the early iterations in the district I represent in particular, where there were some candidate facilities that folks were, you know, we had visits here from folks from Chicago and in the East Coast about, well, we, you know, we bring the one package fits all, you as a county ought to permit and license these activities. Cause we bring the lab, we bring the security, we bring the manufacturer, distribution, package, blah, blah, blah. Right, you know, from, from grow to blow. And I guess I'm just curious, what's been the temperament out there when you have this all inclusive measure? If that, if that's how people have gone forward with it in other jurisdictions?
We find that it's in the message, you know, the outreach that you're doing of what you're looking at. You're saying that we're having it in here to basically make sure that we can address illegal activity, that we can be strategically down the road should hemp become a commodity, it might be of interest, it might be a value added. You, you say the intent and the resolution of what the purpose is, that the city, the county does not have the intent at this time to do it. But did you, you have it in there for, to address those, those issues? Now, if you don't have serious problems regarding illegal activity, then you may wish to reduce what you include in there, just so you're not throwing everything in the kitchen sink in there. And should you, some of those other things that may have value added be there, you can always just go back to the voters, right? But with a 50 plus one, we're finding now with the more confidence or just the industry, I mean, the, the more educated people are, ballot measures probably in, in 2014, 2016 were probably barely in the low 50s, which is consistent with Prop 64. And in 2016, they were in the 60s, but in 2020, and even in between years where there are off year elections, they're in the 70s now supporting these. Basically, most of these tax measures, when they're a general, a general tax, have been in the 70s. When you demonstrate, you know, why you're doing it, but you're also clarifying the message of what you're not going to do, but you're just including it in there. Just a matter of how you want to approach it.
So what instills confidence with voters and that kind of poses that somehow government and all this, you know, that the county of Sacramento is going to be any better enforcing just because we have an ordinance that gives us some revenue and may give you a structure and may give more incentive for those that we permitted to rat out, those that aren't. Again, you know, each of us represents different parts of the county. You know, we have civil measures in place. You're not going to arrest people for criminal activity unless there's other associated activities that are of a criminal nature. You know, we give notice under civil procedures. You know, we show up to remove and, you know, they moved it out the day before. We get complaints from neighbors. And I guess I'm just curious in other, in other, what gives confidence that we're going to, we would be, just because we have retailers and you have a revenue stream that could be dedicated to that, why is it that we'd be any more effective? Again, I mean, that's a question for, for me, but I pose this with you because you have experience in other counties, that we're going to be any more effective somewhere out in Harold or Walnut Grove, or pick your, our rural part of the county, any more so than we are now? I mean, we have code enforcement officers, we have civil penalties up to a thousand dollars per plant. You got to prove it, got to go to the courts, you got to have courts that are responsive, that are willing to, you know, and a district attorney is willing to prosecute, all of those things. Again, they're not within your control, not within this board's control, to some degree anyway. I guess I'm curious, so how does that build confidence that somehow this activity is better regulated? And there's some revenue stream that goes to the local jurisdiction that could be captured, be used for other mainstream uses in, you know, in your county. But somehow we're going to be any, any more effective just because you got bitter inflow of dollars? Cause I, again, I don't see the law that backs that up, that really gives you the teeth. And it may be that the industry backs up the activities of government, but you know, from what I read, little I know, but I know enough to be dangerous when it comes to this, is that I just, you know, again, I have a hard time believing that just because you go forward and you have a retail ordinance and/or you regulate all of those things, that somehow you're going to be more effective, particularly those that want to be maverick or, or, you know, be on the outside of whatever the law is, whether it's what it is currently or something different. When you have an outright prohibition, that's pretty clear. Now you're going to mix that potentially with some permission, some prohibition, because it'll be regulated. So I guess I'm curious what your experience has been. And you've been all over California, that's why I posed a question to you. I mean, you're, you know, it's not for purposes of saying, yeah, this is bad or this is good. I'm just trying to get some sense.
Those are regulatory policy. I think today what we're trying to accomplish to address part of your, your question is that because this is a tax that we're considering strategically, you mentioned civil, civil code and taking regulatory on that. When it's a tax, it's kind of like called the Al Capone rule, right? Couldn't get them for doing all those illegal things and you took them to court for everything and you couldn't take care of them. Tax evasion, you get to lean the property regardless of what they do. You get to impose a tax on them that's, the rate could be so ridiculous that the amount of money they would, they'd owe you, they would never be able to stay there. And you would, you would seize a property through a lien for tax evasion. What you're talking about is a regulatory or prohibited activity that you may or may not ever permit them to do. By having this on the books, if they're doing illicit activity, even though you're taking administrative action, which is not being as successful, you just go and say, hey, you got a 10,000 square foot grow out there, our tax rate is X, you owe us $300,000. And if you're not paying it, even if you pay it, doesn't mean that you're lawful out there. We still want you out of here, we're going to lean your property and take it over. You don't have the authority to do that now, but under this tax ordinance, you would be able to authority to do that.
Well, I think we have, and again, Lisa making, helping with, with our civil penalties, you got to go be able to go to the court, but you could put a lien right now. If we, if we get judgment, we have, you know, administrative penalties and it's in the county ordinance and it's been adopted by some jurisdictions. Again, does it immediately wind up where you lean or take somebody's property, which is a pretty severe taking. Sometimes they're renters and so forth, but I think there, there's some of those authorities that are already embedded in our current ordinances, are they not, Lisa?
Right, but the way to enforce or to collect on them is different because if it's a tax lien, you could do a tax sale, which is much easier than having to wait till the person sells the property or judicial foreclosure or something like that.
Okay, so just one question, David, along those lines. So where do you have the ordinances? Again, maybe we're early in the iterations of these, but are you seeing that? And I guess I would maybe focus more on rural areas, but in metropolitan areas where the agencies are going after them for tax evasion and basically ending up with those properties being lien sale to, to satisfy their debts?
In the municipalities where they've had illegal operators, they've been able to do that and successfully shut them down because the, the property owners now don't want to have to be in a position of now there's action against them. In the rural areas like Lake County, Humboldt County, Mendocino County, where they've got high volumes of illegal activity, they've got this tax measure on the books where they can take and seize the property by liens because it's tax evasion and still assess the tax on them. So it's a double whammy, right? It's, you owe us $300,000 with, even if they paid it, it doesn't mean you're going there because we continue charging you and we're going to take your property because they won't stay up with you. The math, as long as they don't have to pay anything right now as illegal market, it's gravy to them. But when they have to actually have an asset taken or their money, then they can't keep operating because they don't have any funds. And if they even keep the funds, then you take the property and you shut them down because as the council mentioned, now you got action to them because of the, the tax evasion part of it. That's how they got Al Capone, not for all the illegal activities he did, they got him for tax evasion and shut him down. Legit, yes.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, thanks, David.
So, may I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the rate of the taxes, we kind of talked in concept is high enough to generate proceeds offset costs. And when I say offset costs, it's not the Prop 2016. This is general revenues to go into total county funding programs is what the goal is, right? Why, why would you have an industry if they weren't generating revenue for you? But that's the, the goal of the, the offset the cost. Low enough to avoid overtaxing them so they can stay sustainable should you choose to allow them. Ability to match rates with neighborhood jurisdictions to make sure you're competitive, that, you know, they're not going to try to circumvent rates or anything, but also equitable. Recommend freezes so they're just kind of time, kind of let them mature to a certain point, but not too, too far because you would kind of evaluate them as they're slowly getting up and running. Cause year one versus year two, year three is, it's a ramp up as far as them being able to get to a point of profitability. And as we mentioned, you know, the rates having the flexibility to adjust. The tax measure would be designed to give you that flexibility as a board to increase or decrease rates as you see fit, as long as it does not exceed what the taxpayers approved in there. We mentioned index inflation, that index inflation is only for the cultivation because it's a flat rate. You know, $7 or $10 today is not going to be the same thing in 25 years. So you want to CPI that, so you make sure you keep up with the price index. We talked about setting minimum rates, the pros and cons of that, but then the maximum rates are in the ordinance to ensure that and the voters of what you're voting on. And as our last bullet here, taxes all categories, even if not permitted in the county. So if you had a tax on everything and you only decided to do retail, it doesn't mean you're going to do everything, but it means you've got something on the books to address the illicit, legal and any future trends. As we, we talked in detail, a little more detail on the hemp thing, that could be a future for anything, even if it's manufacturing or distributing of hemp, even though it's not cultivation, I mean cannabis itself. We gave you examples of the rates, you know, common rates that we're seeing, which we've already went to in much detail about. These are only common tax rates and the recommended rates that are reflective here on the, on the top for each category. Of course, because each one has a different profit margin as reflected here. You can see here, this is kind of that vertical 30%. You can see the highlighted areas of why the cultivation two and a half, which is equivalent of a $10 square foot for this purpose, we reflected it here. The manufacturing of what their price points are, why distribution has less, they have, they're not plant touching, so their profit margins are less. But the retailer is the one that makes all the money. Even though we didn't put the top rate in there, because we put the top rate, you'll see that it would have went over the 30%. For illustrative purposes, we showed you the 5%, which keeps you under that 30% total cumulative rate there. It has both the, the state tax on the flower, it has the sales tax, it has the excise tax, and it has your local Bradley Burns tax and transaction taxes that get you there to keep under that rate. And so now I can visually see of why those rates are important depending on that.
David, can I just ask you a question as you get the rates up there? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I saw earlier this spring that there's a movement by some of the, particularly the folks that are in the cultivation community to seek some major modifications to the tax structure at the state level.
Yes, the industry has put out a letter to the governor trying to encourage him to get support to reduce that rate. Unfortunately, the difficulty was that is Prop 64 said that it takes two thirds of the legislators to do that, which is almost impossible since the majority of the cities and counties in California are not supportive cannabis. So that they, you know, whatever legislative people support them, probably not going to get you the two thirds vote to override that. We've attempted it before, trying to work with Cooley's office to reflect that, to try to bring the excise tax down. It has not prevailed. So it's kind of a difficult thing for the governor to overcome. What he does have authority, he's been reducing or waiving their annual permit fees at the state level. That he can mitigate without having to go to the legislators, but it's going to be a tough challenge for him to get support for that.
Okay, thanks.
So should the board choose to move forward, you know, this is where I hand it over to, to staff to kind of go over this, this, this question here of what the next steps would be.
Phil, I'll see if I was certain.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for the presentation. I want to make sure I understand sort of the dynamic or relationship, as you know it, between the legitimate market and the illicit market. Is it accurate to assume, it's always dangerous to assume, but is it accurate to assume that if a jurisdiction where you obviously know there is some illicit activity occurring, adopts an ordinance, a means to regulate and permit and tax cannabis, is it, is it fair to assume that a certain part of the illicit market would move to the legitimate market? For instance, some consumers may want product to be tested and perhaps they know it doesn't get tested in the illicit market, but it does get tested in the quote unquote legitimate market. So any thoughts about kind of that relationship?
Yeah, absolutely, especially since we've become out of COVID. You know, the concerns regarding product and safety and the quality of things becomes very critical. Convenience though, is always the first priority to someone regardless that they don't care, you know, where they get it, if the conveniency exceeds the, the burden of having to get it. So, you know, just like going to a grocery store or going to a restaurant or going to a gas station, you like that conveniency and you want, you, there's a value added to that. And so they tend to want to gravitate towards that. And so the more opportunity, and I think where we've seen the illicit market thrive and new industry comes in, reduces that because now they've lost their market share to the point where, you know, they're not going to be as, as equitable or value. I mean, they won't have the benefit because there's no, now they got competition. But when there's no competition, they're just like, you know, fishing in a bathtub. And you, we need to eliminate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Stand by, maybe some other questions in a moment, but Amanda, you're up, I guess, thanks.
Sure, so I'd just like to thank David. I, I hope that this information was helpful and sort of informing, you know, that your, your thoughts around a potential cannabis tax. As I mentioned in the introduction, we are looking for some direction as to whether or not we should return with an ordinance that will put a cannabis tax measure on the November ballot.
Okay, all right, we have Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Desmond, we do have some speakers too, but Supervisor Frost.
I have a question, Amanda, as far as the timeline, because for me, I think it would be valuable to have an understanding from the public safety, like to have a workshop from public safety and also from our public health on, on the public safety side. I, I would want to have an understanding of, you know, our county and outdoor grows and how this impacts code enforcement, the considerations there and possibly some of the ins and outs of our, the hemp we're doing now versus the potential and what the opportunities and the problems would be. And illegal activity associated with all of it, not just the legal, but the illegal grows. And then, you know, how does our public safety feel about it? And then the other thing would be public, the, just from the public health side of things, I would like to see a workshop on those two before. to see a workshop on those two before I could know what type of an ordinance to support. And so what is, with that in mind, is it possible to do that? And what is the timeline to get it on the ballot?
Right. So, I will start, and then Ms. Edwards or Ms. Train may jump in. So, the timeline to get something on the ballot is that we would need to have it approved into the registrar of voters no later than August 1st, which means that I believe July 26th is the last scheduled board meeting before that date. However, I do want to emphasize that that's the timeline regarding a tax measure to be on the ballot, that there is much more time to, you know, discuss what the county's policy would be in terms of what activities would be permitted, how that would work, all of those things. So that would be a completely separate board action to allow and permit cannabis retail activities in the unincorporated county. So, that may be a more relevant discussion for that effort, but in terms of the ballot measure timeline, we would need to have something, as I said, approved no later than August 1st. With that, I don't know if Ms. Edwards has something to add to that.
Ms. Thomas said it as well, or better than I would. We can do the tax measure and address the operational and other issues, or even decide later if we're going to actually allow it or not do it. Because doing the tax measure, if I'm accurate, doesn't mean we're actually going to implement, it just puts that measure on the ballot.
So, I just like, were you going to say something, David?
I was just also going to remind you that should you choose not to do any regulatory show strategically as an opportunity to impose the tax on all the deliveries coming into the unincorporated area. So you would derive that benefit immaterial if you have an industry or regulate it at all.
And I can say that we have had conversations with both law enforcement and public health, knowing that some of you would want this, and they will certainly be prepared at some point in the future to have that conversation with you.
Well, since we have time, can we bring them in for a workshop before we make a decision?
That I don't know. I'd have to check with them. I mean, I don't know about the timing. And again, I just want to reiterate that we can do the tax measure without making a commitment to allow any activity in Sacramento County.
Okay, so you're asking for, what you're proposing is a decision today on the tax measure without looking any further, or are you?
No, I do think we need to look further. What I'm saying is you can.
And I'm, yeah, I understand what you're saying then. I'm just asking if it's possible, I don't know if our board would be willing to look a little further before making a decision on how we're going to structure it, but that would be something I think would be an important consideration.
I can say that I don't believe we have time regarding the ballot measure timing to flesh out a full program, but we could certainly potentially have a conversation with public health and law enforcement about their, what their thoughts are about this kind of a measure. It's a pretty heavy lift to develop an entire program, and that will take some months.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I have all supervisors in the queue, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I want to start by, David, thank you for this presentation. I learned a lot, and that was really terrific information. I'm absolutely supportive of certainly hearing from public health and public safety when we get into a discussion about possibly implementing a policy and legalizing commercial use in the county, but that's not what this is at this point, correct? I mean, so, you know, I'd have to certainly think about that, and I'm looking forward to public comment. I know there's a lot of very passionate feelings around this issue, because even though this is not, this is just the first step of kind of a long road of changing things and potentially changing things in Sacramento County, it is a step towards a different direction for the county, and I think we have to approach it very thoughtfully. I want to make sure I understand. So what you said, David, is, so if this, we would have to pass this, even if we did nothing else, if we pass this, we would at least have the ability to tax companies that are delivering in unincorporated Sacramento County, which we cannot do short, without this ballot measure, correct?
That's correct.
Even if we do nothing else. Because we know that those deliveries are happening, I mean, everywhere in the unincorporated county. I mean, and that's, I mean, that in and of itself is pretty compelling to me, but I'll have some additional comments after public comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I agree with Supervisor Desmond. I'm clearly making a distinction, the way I understand it, between the necessary consideration and, you know, authority from this board for the tax ballot measure versus the development of policy that is going to be very specific, if it's the will of the board to do so, to regulate cannabis. I actually think if we wait, we actually do a disservice to the voters, because the longer that we wait to make a decision to put something on the ballot, the less time we have to engage a robust, you know, education campaign, information campaign around what the ballot measure is and is not. And so I would be much more inclined to act today, knowing that there will be that opportunity to have, because I want it just as much as any other supervisor, the necessary public conversation with public safety and public health, because I do think those are legitimate concerns here, but they're distinctly different than what we're being asked to consider today.
Okay. Patrick?
Well, just, I don't have anything more to add than what Supervisor Serna just said and Supervisor Desmond, other than to weigh in to provide that direction. These are two very different questions, and the narrow question that we're being asked today, if we don't act, you know, if we bury our head in the sand, we lose control of a situation and we also lose revenue. So, you know, for that purpose, I'm very interested in going forward today on this specific question with the understanding that we will have much more lengthy and detailed conversations when the bigger question comes before us.
Okay. All right, let's go to public comment, and we'll come back in a moment, maybe some questions and final comments here. So, we have two people in chambers, and then I think we have some on the phone. So Kenneth Slusinger, Kenneth? Maybe been here and stepped out.
So the gentleman with the dog?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll hold that, maybe he'll return in a moment. So then Joe Devlin, Joe? Good afternoon, Joe.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for taking up this topic. Joe Devlin, on behalf of the Northern California Cannabis Alliance. Appreciate the very in-depth presentation from David, wherever he went. He and I have known each other for a good amount of years now. To your question, Supervisor Natoli, of kind of why regulations work or can work, I believe that answer is really around access, right? Respectfully to Mr. McPherson, I would disagree of our own tax liens and like the punitive nature of, that's why we need, that's why you have to have a tax regulation so you can enforce stronger. We already had an entire war on drugs, and this isn't a substance that you can ban your way out of. You can't put the consumer in a headlock and drag him on and be punitive towards him. It doesn't work. We already tried it. We tried it for 100 years. We spent billions of dollars across this country. It simply doesn't work. And what we're doing right now, what regulation is, is merely the application of economics and market principles for controlling substance where prohibitions and enforcement have previously failed. That's all this is. And so if we step back and think about this from a managing the consumer, and think about regulations and taxes from a consumer-centric point of view, and if the goal is to kind of move them by economics, recognizing that they have a substitution in the illicit market, we can manage this substance and we can control it, but economics does play a huge factor. Yeah, it's also why prohibition failed also. So when that was kind of brought up, I was kind of like, well, yes, Al Capone did go to jail for tax evasion, but it didn't end prohibition, and it certainly didn't stop bootlegging. What I think the opportunity, as I see it before you, is to really expand that access, and you can control the illicit market, and we can control or improve those health outcomes by limiting youth access because a regulated market doesn't provide access to young people. But taxes are going to be central to that. Sacramento City was one of the first in the state, first in the country for that matter. And a lot of what has been proposed is really just kind of refinement of what has kind of gone done and gone and done before. You have two groups of, in your county, one is the consumer who is localized, they're not going anywhere, you can tax them, right? There is a degree to which you can tax them before they will substitute the illicit market. And so that is a group to tax. The other kind of bucket of folks are like on the production side, and those are your cultivators, manufacturers, and your distributors. If you were to take approach of taxing at the retail level, but treating this as something similar to every other industry where we do not tax the wholesale market, you could create an industry that far exceeds what currently exists in the city of Sacramento. The city of Sacramento is currently third in the state for all counties of revenue. It has, it will hit probably about $606 million in revenue as a whole for the industry, just for businesses inside the city of Sacramento. Those businesses have created nearly 12,000 jobs and have an economic impact of $2.4 billion. Those aren't numbers that I made up. Northern California cannabis industry retained Dr. Sanjay Varshini, former dean of Sac State School Business, to do an economic impact study. So the growth potential and jobs potential for this industry is incredibly meaningful. And put in the context of not just a statewide industry or a national-wide industry, but a truly global industry. If you were to take approach that had zero taxes on the production side of this, you would see investment and capital flow into this, and Sacramento County could become a global center of this industry. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, no questions, Ms. Devlin. We have, Mr. Slusinger, he may have left. So we'll go back to our, go to our phones and flow.
Please transfer the caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name's Kimberly Cargile from A Therapeutic Alternative, a storefront cannabis dispensary in East Sacramento on H Street. I also own dispensaries in Davis, Dixon, Napa, Modesto, Placerville, and Tracy, and I'm happy to provide insight as an operator in those areas. I've been our advocate for our industry here at the Sacramento Board of Supervisors for over a decade, and I'm thankful to have this conversation. I'd also like to thank HDL for their in-depth analysis. I'd like to offer my insight as we embark on these regulations and let you know that both the NorCal Cannabis Alliance, as well as the city of Sacramento, have both commissioned economic studies recently to study the cannabis industry in Sacramento, which we've had for over a decade. So there's a lot of excellent information at your fingertips if you decide to move forward. Today, city of Sacramento Law and Ledge actually voted in favor to give themselves more flexibility in their tax structure with a new ballot measure. So I encourage you to, you know, as Mr. McPherson stated, to move into a ballot measure that gives yourself flexibility for the ups and downs that may come as our industry transitions into federal regulation and legalization in the future. We have had a financial downturn in the last few years due to the cost of regulations and overtaxation. I've been at the Capitol all day today lobbying for a number of bills that will lower state tax burdens on our industry in order to reduce the unregulated market and encourage businesses as well as consumers to purchase lab-tested products properly packaged and labeled through the regulated and taxed market. I highly recommend and ask you to not put a square footage tax on cultivation, but to do a percentage of the dollars sold. Really, a tax should happen once there's a sale and there's money to pay the taxes. And we've seen the cultivation tax at the state level fail drastically, putting many farmers out of business and much more negative consequences. We're currently working to try to remove that cultivation tax because it is a flat tax. Thank you so much for all you do. I'd like to invite any of you on a tour of our storefront cannabis dispensary in Sacramento. I also have a manufacturing and distribution company in Sacramento and two farms in Yolo County. I would be happy to answer any questions about our industry at any time in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Deanna Garcia. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, can you please mute the meeting in the background while you're talking?
Can we please mute all the information? Yes, thank you for your time today. My name's Deanna Garcia, and I'm with Americans for Safe Access and Cal Normal, and I am a resident, a longtime resident of Sacramento County. I'm in Don Natoli's district. Sorry I couldn't make it today in public, in person. It would have been great to, to see everyone. And I just want to thank us again for coming this far, but it's, you know, very late in the game, and to think that, you know, the Sacramento County is so far behind all the other cities and counties, and like our cannabis industry of cultivation is so depleted with cost right now, with taxes, with overburdened some regulations. I know there's still people out there who hope and dream to someday have an outdoor or indoor cultivation, even though they don't realize that all the cultivations are going bankrupt right now. You know, as we speak, there's just, our price is like, what, $300 a pound? We have $150 with the taxes, and that's even just as it gets off our farm. So I wish Sacramento County abundance of luck. I have been fighting for this day and for this moment for, oh God, at least the last 20 years as a resident in the county, and I'd like to help and support this in any way possible. I have five retail outlets. I'm getting ready to open a sixth and seventh retail outlet. I have two outdoor farms and an equity incubator F license in the city of Sacramento. Would love to give any tours, would love to give any education or advice, would love to start working with Mr. Serna and Mr. Natoli, with Sue, with everyone here on the board today to move this further along, and, you know, let's try to get something done finally in the county. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Caller?
Hey, next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Dean Dolby, and I live in South Sacramento. I'd like to point out, there is no documented urgency to get this item on the ballot. There are much more pressing matters to work on in the county, so do not let this be a distraction and diversion from those much more important actions. I know county staff has a variety of important things they need to work on. That's why I think we need to not give this the urgency, it seems that some are giving it. And I want to point out, is this the type of business that we want to prioritize over other businesses in the county? I think not. I want to spotlight two slides from the presentation that discuss revenues received from cannabis. From one slide, cannabis taxes provide significant revenue for the city of Sacramento and other jurisdictions, and the city of Sacramento has three times the number of cannabis businesses as Yolo County, but 11 times the number of retailers. I want to point out that it seems the focus really is on money, money, money to get to the county, and a lot of the other issues that are brought up are less important. issues that are brought up are less important or not important. I want to point out, what about micro cannabis businesses that are bound to pop up? Type of cannabis food trucks that are offering edibles? A neighborhood grower who wants to sell items similar to someone who sells homegrown harvests from fruit or vegetables, or even eggs from their chickens on their property? Will they, will these micro cannabis businesses be allowed as currently done for those other farm-to-fork activities? And again, the issue related to social equity. Before you make any decision, please provide specific and clear definitions as to what is needed to qualify. Should some get more and others less? And on what basis? Whether a tax break, a rebate, or whatever name is given, money is money. And this effort is extremely judgmental on many different levels, favoring some and hurting others. And again, how aggressive will the county act to confirm compliance? To what degrees are these businesses cash-based? And how will that impact accurate reports of revenues, expenses, and taxes? It is widely acknowledged that cash-based business transactions, from tips left out restaurants to under the table payments for a variety of services and activities, are not well documented and are done to avoid a variety of income, sales taxes, and other government scrutiny. What will be done to fine this and penalize these off-the-books actions, including fines and jail, prison time for fraud? The other slide that brought my attention is the one that projects leakage to black market at 30%, otherwise known as illegal activities that will need the attention of law enforcement, the judicial system, and the penal system. This leakage loss is estimated at over $40 million to almost $90 million. What is the true financial and social costs for these illegal activities? They're unknown, but history shows these costs are high. Cannabis taxes are an important influence on government decisions related to these businesses. There are also concerns that those taxes are too high or fail to provide for equity. The taxes on cigarettes, cigars, beer, wine, and alcoholic beverages do not receive the same type of government attention as being too high or failing to address equity issues. There is far more to unpack on how government helped, once was an illegal activity, to become established businesses, and how government helps to expand it. How much is enough? How much is too much? Please, until we get clear and specific answers to these questions, I oppose actions that expand production and sales of cannabis in the county. There are many other places where people can get this product. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Dean.
And please transfer the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Adiola Aditye with Adiola's Advocacy. I'm also an advocate at A Therapeutic Alternative. I wanted to let you know that I am opposed to the being taxed at the square footage and wanting it to be a percentage for a number of reasons. A little bit about my story. My son in 2016 was diagnosed with T-cell leukemia, given three days to live. And in that time, you know, as a mother seeing your child going through all of those things, losing my job, and having to choose between sometimes giving my son his medicine versus somebody who had to let their mortgage go, it started to become unaffordable. But I am here to say that my son is a leukemia survivor, and it's due to the cannabis plant and A Therapeutic Alternative, which is working so closely to me. He was two years old at the time, and now he's seven. But I am just advocating for it to be more affordable and being able to be more inclusive, to be able to reach the cultures and our Black and Brown communities especially, or underprivileged areas who cannot afford plant medicine at the dispensary level. And lowering taxes will allow this. It will also decrease the black market with individuals who cannot afford the taxes right now to be able to afford their medicine. So thank you so much for hearing my story. This is very passionate, this is very passionate of mine because I know it saved my son's life, and I know how powerful this plant is. And I just want to be equal, just like the beer, wine companies, cigarettes. We want to be in the category and just being fair all the way around. Thank you, you guys. Have a blessed night. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, caller.
Okay, so that's it. There's no more callers.
Okay. All right, we'll bring you back to the board for comments and discussion. Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Desmond.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, thanks to Amanda and to David. I too learned so much this afternoon. And I think it's certainly good to have something more than just your anecdotal understanding of something as important as this, excuse me, before making a decision to put anything on the ballot. But something like this, I think, really deserves the kind of education that I know I and my colleagues appreciate on the subject today. I am prepared and am convinced that it is time for Sacramento County to permit, regulate, and tax cannabis. I think we need to be very thoughtful about it. I think this is the first step in doing that. One of the callers mentioned the sense of urgency, and I would say we've actually not acted for years now with any sense of urgency on the matter. In fact, as David pointed out several times, we are somewhat of a latecomer, that is Sacramento County is, in the whole scheme of things, here in this part of California when it comes to consideration of regulating permitting and taxing cannabis. I think that has given us the benefit of, quite frankly, learning from others' challenges and perhaps even mistakes. But it also has contributed to the kind of dynamic that we have, especially with the city of Sacramento. And certainly, this is not intended to show any disrespect to the city of Sacramento. But I, you know, I have viewed the prospect of doing what has been put in front of us today as a means to keep from, you know, losing valuable revenue that has otherwise gone to other parts of our region. And I don't think you would get any argument from any of us that we're all always interested in finding ways to augment our general fund budget. I'm pleased to see that the way the presentation occurred, it was done so much more in the context of a general tax and not a special tax. I think I agree that the voter threshold is something to consider here. And quite frankly, I would like to see the revenue, if we choose to move forward, I'd like to see the revenue generated from permitting and regulating cannabis to permit us to, as one of the callers mentioned, look at other priorities that we obviously have, whether that's our regional park system, whether that's, you know, all the other various responsibilities we have, general government responsibilities that we have that are linked to our budget. And so I am certainly prepared today to do what I think staff has asked us to do, which is give them direction. And so I am going to move that we do give staff direction to pursue the development of a cannabis business tax and ordinance. And I would like specifically to mention in the motion that in the development of the ordinance, that we do ensure that we have all questions answered and concerns addressed as it relates to public safety and as it relates to public health. Those are valid concerns, and so that's definitely part of the motion. I would ask for a second.
We have a motion in a second. We still have members in the queue to speak. And so we'll go to that. We have a motion in a second. All right, Supervisor Desmond, followed by Supervisor Frost.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate all the comments and the discussion today and certainly join Supervisor Frost and other colleagues here about the importance of if we proceed with this and if this ballot measure were to pass, the importance of involving public safety and public health. I mean, I think that's absolutely critical when we engage in a larger policy discussion. This is an issue that I've been torn about for a long time. I think, you know, someone who came from the public safety world, this kind of tension between my libertarian free-market sensibilities and public safety sensibilities, you know, years ago, a lot of concerns about the legalization of cannabis. And I like, I think a lot of people is very concerned about what was going to happen as a result of Prop 64. But I think also, like a lot of other people, certainly a lot of my constituents and others, is that our thinking has definitely changed over the years, as we've seen that, you know, legalizing cannabis has resulted in our ability to provide consumer protections, provide environmental protection, to edge out the illicit market, which is, has historically, you know, caused a lot of problems in our communities. And I think that, I think as the industry started evolving and started growing, I really, you know, had an epiphany. Even when I was in law enforcement, I attended a few California Cannabis Industry Association events and was just so impressed by the amount of small business owners who really wanted to, you know, kind of come out of the shadows and provide that tax revenue to municipalities and do it in a responsible way, become responsible actors in the community. And there are so many small business owners now that I know who are in the commercial cannabis space who were just like other small business owners in our community. They want to contribute. They want to be valuable members of the community. And so I think, I applaud this board because I think the decisions this board made several years ago in prohibiting commercial cannabis at the time, I think that was a prudent decision because this was something so new. And now we've had the advantage of learning from mistakes made in other municipalities, including, you know, in the city of Sacramento. And we can learn from so many of those. And David, thank you for highlighting, you know, so many areas that we can learn from in terms of imposing a tax, a tax structure. I think something that I'm, as someone who represents such a large part of the unincorporated population and unincorporated Sacramento County that would be affected by this, I understand that the retail is, you know, kind of the, I can't remember, the golden ticket, I think, is the term used, David. But I also think that's also the component of this industry that we really need to be most thoughtful about when we, when and if we end up coming back for a discussion about this. So want to just kind of, you know, tee that up a little bit now because I kind of ascribe to the philosophy also of, hey, let's start slow and ramp up. But that's certainly a conversation for another day. I am in support of the motion of moving this or providing direction to staff to come back to us. One question I had, David, we had a couple comments about, on the cultivation, the square footage versus a percentage. Can you comment on that? Provide us a little bit of feedback because obviously we'd have to make a decision on that in whatever ordinance we decide to put on the ballot.
Chair, if I may, through the chair, the decision for us, as I mentioned to you earlier, is simplicity. So you don't have to spend the time of auditing the businesses, easy budgeting because you just calculate on it. The industry has brought up two key issues. One is that, you know, what happens if our crop fails? That's the disaster relief element that is built in there. So you're not going to tax them for a production or activity that they're not engaged in because they had a problem with that. The other thing is, is that the square footage, the way our model, if you look in the fiscal report, gives you, and we shared it with the, in some of the scenarios we had, has a formula that tells you $10 a square foot is equivalent to 2.5%. $7 is 2%. So it has an overlay equivalent to that. So whatever rate you put in there, you can reduce that based on that, just like we said, you know, four harvests, five, or five harvests, or two for indoor, three for mixed line and so forth. All that mathematically works out the same way. Where we've seen Yolo County, Santa Barbara County, Santa Cruz County have a problem with is when their revenues drop, they're concerned about diversion or inappropriate calculations of the tax. And they got to invest a lot more resources to go out and figure out, is the price really dropping? Or are they actually playing games with that? So from an administrative standpoint, that's the purpose of that. But if you went to the gross receipts side of it, which is a viable option as too, the beauty of that is there is ebb and flow. The industry is impacted for it. You may see a reduction in revenue as a result of that, which would be difficult to budget to. But then it's equitable to actually what they're, you know, if a price goes from now $1,000 a pound to 300, as one of the callers said, then it's going to be reflective of that. But the square footage is calculated based on also consideration of that as well. So that's the pros and cons of both of that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that's important response to some of the concerns by the callers. So bottom line for me is that, I mean, this cannabis is in our communities. It's widespread. It is being delivered in, all throughout unincorporated Sacramento County. And if we have an opportunity to take advantage of the market, provide some revenue in the county, and further drive out some illicit businesses, and also set up a structure in the county that relies on best practices and becomes a better place to do business for the industry. I think that's a goal I ultimately strive for. And so with that, I just conclude my remarks, but I support the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair Natoli. Well, I first want to ask, so does this mean that we will have, you will be coming back with an ordinance to, you know, to finalize the details of the ordinance? And if that's the case, is it possible to include some of these other considerations like public health and public safety before we vote on the ordinance? And so we're, so tonight, we're voting to put it on the ballot without the ordinance. You're saying the ordinance will come later? Or are you coming back with the ordinance to put it on the ballot, on how it's going to go on the ballot?
So there will actually be two ordinances. The first ordinance is what we're discussing this evening, which is the putting the tax issue on the ballot.
And that will be the worst-case scenario, and it will come back to us for a vote? A second vote?
When we come back to you in, I'm saying, a few weeks with an ordinance, it would be, you would be voting on the ordinance to put the tax on the ballot. We would then come back to you with a more fuller discussion around all of the program and policies, and that would require another, I'm not sure if it would be a resolution or an ordinance, but there would be two separate things, and Ms. Travis can weigh in as well.
Sure. So the motion tonight is to come back, direct staff to come back with an ordinance to place a tax measure on the November ballot. That is all it is. It has no program details. The second ordinance that Ms. Edwards was referring to, which is an ordinance, would be the board's policy decision. And I would assume we would do it after the if and after the tax measure passed, because then you would be able to receive the revenue from the tax measure. That would have the details, like I said, the policy decisions on what type of businesses would be allowed in Sacramento County, what types would be prohibited, and that type of thing. And that would come, like I said, I would assume later in this year if the ballot measure passes. So the next thing you'll see, just to put a finer point on it, is, and it would be, I think, the, someone mentioned July 12th, it would be the ballot measure to place the cannabis tax on the ballot. Nothing further.
Okay.
We could, at that time, as Supervisor Serna suggested, have some input from law enforcement, public safety, and public health at the time that you're voting on the tax ordinance.
Okay. Well, I'm just gonna, I guess I'll reiterate, some of my concern, my concern is that when you put it on the ballot, you're placing an expectation. I'm not saying I'm against or for. I'm saying it feels a little bit rushed. There wasn't really a whole lot of, you know, a public process. I kind of feel like the public safety part of it and code enforcement and the impacts of what happens with those businesses could greatly impact how we tax and the decisions we make around the taxes. I remember when we had the health marijuana retail, you know, medical marijuana retail in our county and all the problems associated with that. So I feel a little bit like it would be, I don't know why we don't have time to look at it a little more closely before we rush to... at it a little more closely before we rush to something. Wish there was more time to explore it. And it seems like those things would, could impact that, what is that high level, and what are the expectations that we're going to move forward with? So I'm not going to support it, but I'm looking forward to exploring more about, you know, where are we at with the hemp and the marijuana and the illicit marijuana? Did not decrease in my, the way I remember it, after they legalized marijuana, we had a ton, we had a couple thousand growhouses in Sacramento County alone. So illicit marijuana didn't, it increased after that. So I'm appreciative of all the information. I think, you know, it's good that we're having the conversation. I'm not going to support it today, although it looks like you have the votes you need. But I'm going to look forward to exploring it more closely.
Okay. All right. Before we call for a vote, then I want to offer some comments. Certainly, first want to thank our presenters today. I think the report was very thorough and certainly accomplished what was requested in bringing to us a good analysis of, you know, what the landscape looks like, both locally and regionally, but certainly statewide. So thank you, David, thank you, Amanda, for that. And I would acknowledge, too, certainly that over time, the discussion before this board, certainly regarding the topic before us today, but over time has evolved, going back to Proposition 215 and discussions about follow-on to that, obviously, subsequent propositions and the aspects of legal cannabis in the state, but certainly the abilities for local jurisdictions to determine from a local perspective as to how they want to pursue or not the access to cannabis and licensing, permitting, and taxation. I also would acknowledge, and certainly do all due respect to my colleagues, that, you know, the measure doesn't predetermine future actions, but I think the discussion today is pretty clear that if a measure is put before the voters and approved, that, you know, the follow-on discussion action will be just what we're talking about here. Obviously, it'll be framed by discussion that we've had, obviously, the discussion that would ensue should the measure be approved. I don't necessarily come at it from the perspective that this is rushed. Obviously, this has been talked about. I know that at least one of my colleagues has been talking about it in one format or the other over the course of a couple of years with community members. But I will say that from my perspective, and again, choices we make as a board, certainly as a community, trying to reflect, obviously, the concerns, as well as, obviously, the desires of the electorate that we represent, the people we represent, and this is representative of government after all. And so I appreciate the comments we heard today. But I also would say that it's not always about the money. Capturing revenue, whether it's lost or projected, it's not important to the county fisc. I get it. I've sat on this board for a number of years and been through the good times and the bad times, and knowing when even a few thousand dollars would have made a difference in programming and so forth. And obviously, dollars in the general fund make a difference. But I think that, for me, it's not just about lost revenue. And I guess I would point to the number. Again, we can decide for ourselves, just because 70% of the counties and cities currently prohibit it, and we're in that category, doesn't mean that we have to continue to do that. But I still think that's a preponderance of counties and cities throughout the state, and this county is unique in that it has a large suburban and certainly urban population, but also rural areas. And I think to some of my comments earlier, granted, if this measure were to go before the voters and pass, that there'd be ample opportunity by this board to look at how we would structure any permitting and licensing. But I'm concerned about the rural areas. I represent a lot of those areas as a member of this board. And I can take, as I shared a little earlier this afternoon, from some of the discussions we had regarding permitting and the provisions around hemp, but also with regards to some of the facilities that would be available for folks to pursue activities that, you know, could be, they may be legally permitted under an ordinance, but could be very concerning to folks. And it's even called out in the report that, well, you might have to have special allowances for, if you were going to have a retail operation in, the town of Clay only exists on the map, it's the town of Harold or Walnut Grove. And so those are examples that were specific to the report, again, not predetermined in any way. And so I'm going to, you know, come down on the side that I don't know that, exploring it, and certainly I would want to hear, just as been noted in the motion from public health and public safety representatives, in acknowledging that the industry is involved and that, you know, some see it as an opportunity. I think it's a path that we should not pursue at this time. And so therefore, I don't intend to support the motion. And again, acknowledging, obviously, the work that's gone into this, and certainly the comments we've received from folks who are currently in the industry. I appreciate that. But again, for me, it's not just about capturing revenue. There's more to this, and I just think at this point in time that, as one of the callers said, that there's a lot of things on our plate, and this is not important to folks in this community. On the other hand, I think there's sufficient access, and there's convenience. You may have to drive a little bit, acknowledging that there are deliveries, whether they're legal or not, into the county. And so for those, and I guess some of the reasons I don't intend to support the motion. Thanks.
Yeah, call, vote. Oh, sorry. Hey, and the motion carries with Supervisor Frost and Natoli voting no.
Okay, so you'll return to the board? What do you think, June?
I'm looking to Ms. Thomas to see how much time we think we need for that, or to David, because I know he's going to be helping us.
So we could be prepared to return with the ordinance on June 14th or July 12th. However, if we want more time to get input from public safety and public health, I would choose the later of those two dates.
Okay.
July 12th, then.
July 12th? Okay, so we'll return on July 12th. All right.
Amanda, do you need some direction on whether we pursue the per-square-foot fee versus the percentage of sales?
That would certainly be helpful in drafting the ordinance. And I think the recommendation was per-square-foot, so.
Yes, it was, but I just wanted to.
Was that in your motion, Mr. Serna?
Would it be possible to do both? I mean, not do both, but prepare both and make that part of the discussion?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Yes.
Okay, so you like both of those when you return?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Okay, that concludes item 47, and I don't know if we have anything else, nothing else on the agenda, I don't believe, except for going to comments. So county executive comments?
No comments, other than, I know this was a very difficult topic, and we'll hopefully come back with some good information for you so that you can make a full decision.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members. No comments by board members, and no adjournments today, so we will stand adjourned at 5:26. We'll return tomorrow at 1 o'clock, is that correct?
1 o'clock for closed session.
Okay, 1 o'clock. Okay, back in session. Thanks. Have a good evening.